Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent Civil District for Thursday, June 6, 2024, at 6:08 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AISD's central office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD-TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, Astound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. So, welcome and thank you all for joining us tonight. So, next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the Board. This time allows speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing directly to the school board. We have time for up to 60 speakers, and as a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings of the Board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. This is an opportunity for the Board to really listen to our community. While we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or follow-up directly to the administration. So, members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to audio-record their remarks or to sign up to speak in person. So, the administration wants to acknowledge that we did have a little glitch. There was a technology outage that happened with our voicemail provider this afternoon, and so individuals wishing to leave messages use a voicemail system which typically provides 60 seconds. However, due to an outage from the vendor, the default time was changed to 30 seconds for many callers and was not able to be edited. So, our staff called all of those affected and allowed them to record a second 30-second voicemail, and will play those back-to-back tonight. So, you might notice it sounds a little off, so just please excuse any editing pauses in between some recordings. We apologize for that and appreciate the staff for trying to make do and fix that. Tonight, we have seven people who signed up to speak in person, and we have 17 who left a recorded message. So, we will now move to our in-person testimony. In order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will have one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called, and as you come up, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. Again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise that you reference a staff member by position or by abbreviated last name. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. So, our speaker, in-person speakers for tonight are going to be Megan Vasquez, Eric Ramos, Tay, did I pronounce that correctly? Great. Tay, Karikar Kavan, Kynan Murtaugh, Lori Solis, Amanda Stocks, and Ken Zerifus. So, Megan Vasquez, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Megan Vasquez, please come on up.
Test, oh, there we go. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Seguda. My name is Megan Vasquez, and I'm a proud member of Education Austin. We stand together to condemn the ongoing manufactured crisis in our public education system. Year after year, we see budget cuts and financial constraints that make it increasingly difficult to provide quality education to our students or healthy working conditions for our AISD staff. It is unacceptable that the state of Texas has a $33 billion surplus while our students and staff suffer. There is no reason that districts should be creating deficit budgets or struggling to provide for basic needs. This surplus could and should be used to adequately fund public education, ensuring that our students and staff have the resources they need to succeed. Investing in our students is an investment in the future. By providing them with the appropriate tools and opportunities, we are laying the groundwork for a prosperous and thriving society. When we invest in public education, we are not just investing in individuals but in the collective future of Texas. We stand in full support of a Vator.
Thank you. Eric Ramos.
My name is Eric Ramos, and I too am a proud member of Education Austin. This crisis is not accidental. It is an intentional effort to undermine and dismantle public education. By consistently underfunding our schools, the state is perpetuating a narrative that public education is failing, a narrative used to justify further budget cuts, school vouchers, and privatization. The state of Texas has deliberately chosen to squeeze our educational resources, putting undue pressure and hardship on our staff, schools, and most importantly, the students we serve. The continuous underfunding forces our staff to work in increasingly difficult conditions. This situation is unsustainable and unfair to those who dedicate their lives to educating our future generations. This calculated underfunding just magnifies the realities of our current funding mechanisms. Recapture, though flawed and desperate, in desperate need of a formula reworked, is unfortunately here to stay. I stand with my colleagues in full support of a Vator.
Thank you. Next, we have Tay, Karikar Kavan.
My name is Tay Karikar Kavan, and I'm also a proud Education Austin member. We fully acknowledge that the recapture of more than 54% of our district's tax revenue is not sustainable. The recapture system needs a comprehensive overhaul to ensure that it truly serves its purpose without stripping our district and others like us of essential resources. Passing a Vator in the November election is our only viable option and a last-resort response to ensure Austin ISD has the necessary resources to function effectively. Without the additional revenue from Vator, our district will face even more severe budget cuts affecting the quality of education, the well-being of our staff, and the future of our community. While we recognize that the Vator is a Band-Aid for a bigger systemic issue, it is a necessary step to address our immediate funding challenges. The staffing and compensation that would be made possible by its passage are essential to the well-being of our educators and the success of our students. I stand with my colleagues to urge our city to support a Vator.
Thank you. Next, Kynan Murtaugh.
My name is Kynan Murtaugh, and like my colleagues, I'm a proud member of Education Austin. Education Austin remains committed to working with the legislature and communities across the state to develop and commit to a strategic vision that benefits our community and the whole state's communities. We believe in a collaborative approach where educators, lawmakers, and community members come together to create sustainable solutions for our students, district, and communities. We are dedicated to finding and implementing solutions that improve the working conditions for all of our Austin ISD staff and therefore the learning conditions for all of our students. For supporting a Vator, Vator, Vatre, we are taking a crucial step towards securing the future of our district. A Vator is not a permanent fix, but it is vital in order to provide immediate relief and give us any space to determine long-term solutions. We in Education Austin employ to support a Vator and join us in advocating at the state level for stable and adequate funding for all Texas public schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Lori Solis here? No, okay. I know, I thought I saw her. Lori, actually Lori Solis is next.
I was like, do you, knowing can just skip in front. I mean, Ken sort of seems like he's part of this group.
That's okay, go ahead Lori.
Okay.
Sorry, I need my full, like, 10 seconds to prepare here.
My name is Lori Solis, and I'm the President of Austin Council PTAs, and I'm here to kind of give our annual review. First of all, our PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children, and as this pertains to 4.3 scorecard restraints, teacher retention, family caregiver engagement, as well as 8.2 legislative priorities. Our council goals this year included increasing awareness of inclusion in special education, broaden and deepen relationships with superintendent, leadership, and community partners, advocate and mobilize PTAs for legislative priorities of Texas PTA, National PTA. We support 110 campus PTAs with over 16,342 members. You've got a packet which includes our meetings, trainings, and other events that we did that started off really last summer. There's pictures, we've got advocacy goals, we've got highlights, as well as our plans next year, and finally want to finish with a reflections program where we had 115 winning entries that went to Texas PTA. And finally, we just received notice that Alexa Moi from Merkison received a Texas PTA Outstanding Interpretation Award. Thank you for Board, PTA volunteer leaders, and leadership and community overall for AISD.
Thank you. Next, Amanda Stocks.
There you go. It's not working. Oh, there we go. Hi, my name is Amanda Stocks. I am the, with Austin Council of PTA, I am with the MiniGrants Program. And basically, MiniGrants Program supports and powers campus PTAs that have small budgets and big ideas. So, over the course of the 2324 school year, we have funded a variety of projects, including field trips, a phonics program, a Dancing Into Science program, parent breakfast series, we've offered teacher support, even a campus garage sale, and much, much more. So, over the course of the 2324 school year, we received five donations from Austin ISD PTAs and one private donor that translated into seven MiniGrants programs. One of them is actually still in progress, but that was the work that we did this year. And we also have since received three donations that will start funding and kickstart our 2425 school year. And just wanted to give you that report. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. And now we have Ken Zerifus.
My name is Ken Zerifus. I'm President of Education Austin. And is the choice we have in terms of the TRE actually an ideal choice? No, it's far from it. But you can see that we are supportive of processes legislatively that can change that. But isn't that the power, within the power of this district and this Board? No. What is in the power of this district and this Board? It's a TRE. It's very important that we pass this TRE because without it, teachers like this, TAs, school, food service workers, custodians, bus drivers are at risk of losing their jobs. What is in the power of this Board is to see that our community has the ability to make a decision on taxes, their dollars, to support our schools, to support our teachers, to support our TAs. I want to encourage this Board to do what you need to do because every stone needs to be unturned, needs to be turned before you start cutting at schools. I ask that you make sure that you commit to supporting a TRE, a Tax Ratification Election. It is not a vote for the TRE, rather, it is a vote to let our community decide where our tax dollars goes, and that's your responsibility to ensure that the voters have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now play the recorded messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Knight, devoted Texas art educator at Sedron Elementary where I serve. Greg Abbott has caused the state of Texas to intentionally manufacture the crisis in public education by consistently underfunding our schools. In response, we need to do all we can to save public education, which is the cradle of our democracy that has never been in more jeopardy. Our only option now is to pass the Vator in the November election. We understand that some of this money will go to recapture, as flawed as it is. Again, it's our only option. The state of Texas had enough money and chose not to use it to make ourselves sustainable. In spite of Abbott's dereliction of duty, the Texas educators are committed to a strategic plan to fight this attack on public education. We're committed to working with surrounding communities, state legislators, and fellow unions to do all we can to address this problem at the root. Supporting Vator is our crucial first step towards securing the future of our public education system and giving our Texas students the schools they so desperately deserve. Hey Greg, how much of you do the charter schools own? An arm and a leg?
Hello, my name is Bree Rolfe, and I'm a project supervisor with Project Help in Student Support Services, and I'm a proud member of Education Austin. The state of Texas has intentionally manufactured a crisis by consistently underfunding our schools. In response, we need to do everything we can to save public education. Sadly, the only way to do this now is to pass the Vator in the November election. We understand that some of this money will go to recapture. However, this is our only option. Recapture, while deeply flawed and in dire need of a new formula, is not going anywhere. The state of Texas had enough money and chose not to use it to make public education sustainable. However, Texas educators are committed to a strategic effort to fight back against this attack on public education. We are committed to working with surrounding communities, our state legislators, and fellow unions to do everything we can to address this problem at the root. By supporting Vator, we are taking a crucial first step towards securing the future of our public education system and giving our students across Texas the schools they deserve.
Hi, my name's Lynette DeCarly. I am, have lived in the district for about 30 years. I am a parent of a graduate at Bowie High School. I have worked for the district as a speech-language pathologist for, this will be going on my 17th year. I'm calling to request that the speech-language pathologists, the SLPs, be put on the same pay scale as the LSSPs who received a $20,000 raise last year. Frankly, it's insulting that we were not also included in this raise. We conduct evaluations as they do, but also case manage, do our paperwork, do progress reports. We bill Medicaid for our direct services, which brings lots of money into the district. We consistently meet our timelines. Many of us were upset that the department that got us into the legal trouble was seemingly rewarded for missing timelines, while we consistently met our timelines and were not rewarded. The SLPs, the speech-language pathologists, are asking to be put on the same pay scale as the LSSPs, and if not, if we are, will receive some sort of retention stipend. Again, this is, I am a speech-language pathologist, and we're asking for...
Hello, my name is Jennifer Blam, and I'm a school counselor in an Austin high school. The state of Texas has created a crisis by consistently underfunding our schools. We need to do everything we can to save public education. The only option now is to support the voter-approved tax rate election in November, and while I understand part of the tax will be subject to recapture, time has already run out, and the Vator is the only option to stop the downward spiral of public education that's been happening for years now. In AISD, I believe our student information systems are failing due to lack of funding, and this is only getting worse. This means our high school counselors only spend a limited amount of time proactively on the increasing mental health needs of our students. It also means the prospect for human error is greater than ever, and that the students' guardians cannot work through the user interface failings are not being served equitably. Clearly, this is only one specific example of the many failings happening due to a lack of sufficient funding that's been going on for years. The state of Texas has had enough money and chose to not use it to make public education sustainable, and by supporting the Vator, we're taking a crucial step towards securing the future of our public education system and giving our students and families all across Texas the schools they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. I am one of the speech therapists who, in past years, have asked for your help. As you are aware, it's unaffordable living in Austin. It's more frustrating where every day I go to a job I love, but I'm consistently reminded that others who only test to move on are making substantially more than me, and other related services on my pay scale have drastically less service time and never case manage. While we test complete IEP paperwork, attend meetings, provide weekly services, and case manage. In addition, we're programming communication devices, supervising our interns assistants, providing mentorship to our therapists and contractors. This is a huge amount of work. I'm sure you've seen speech therapists working during board meetings. This huge discrepancy in pay and workload impacts the morale of our department. We lost a substantial number of therapists again this year. We're asking to please be put on the same pay scale as at Dyags and School Psychs so we can attract and retain our speech therapist team. At the very least, a retention stipend would be great for those of us who stick it out here. Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Norma Perezah, and I'm a bilingual kindergarten teacher. I'm a proud member of Education Austin. The state of Texas has intentionally manufactured a crisis by consistently underfunding our schools. In response, we need to do everything we can to save public education. Sadly, the only way to do that now is to pass the VATRE in the November election. We understand that some of this money will go to recapture. However, this is our only option. Recapture, while deeply flawed and in dire need of a new formula, is not going anywhere. The state of Texas had enough money and chose to not use it to make public education sustainable. However, Education Austin is committed to a strategic effort to fight back against this attack to public education. We are committed to working with surrounding communities, our state legislature, and fellow unions to do everything we can to address this problem at the root. By supporting VATRE, we are taking a crucial first step towards securing the future of our public education system and giving our students in Austin the schools they deserve.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Beatriz Pasqual Benlibre, y soy miembro de Education Austin. Soy tutora de cuarto grado y enseño lenguas junto con otras asignaturas consideradas primoriales en el currículo. Sin embargo, desde el punto de vista de la salud mental y física y de una educación integral, no hay nada más importante que la educación física y la salud mental. Es por ello que pido encarecidamente a los miembros de Austin ISD que reconsideran los fondos, la inversión, y el personal que se dedica a las escuelas en este área. La educación física necesita más recursos para sostenerse. Eliminar recursos solo implicará un deterioro cognitivo y físico de nuestro alumnado, que empeorará también la forma en la que les enseñamos. Consideren pues el impacto tan tremendo que puede tener en el bienestar de futuras generaciones. Gracias.
This is an English interpretation of Beatriz Pasqual Benlibre. Good evening. My name is Beatriz Pasqual Benlibre, and I am a member of Education Austin. I'm a fourth-grade tutor, and I teach language arts along with other subjects considered to be essential to the curriculum. However, from the standpoint of mental and physical health and a well-rounded education, there is nothing more important than physical education and mental health. That is why I strongly urge Austin ISD members to reconsider the funding, investment, and staffing that is dedicated to schools in this area. Physical education needs more resources to maintain itself. Eliminating resources will only mean a cognitive and physical deterioration of our students, which will also exacerbate the way we teach them. Consider then what a tremendous impact this can have on the well-being of future generations. Thank you.
Please consider staff speech therapists during your budget talks. You are aware of the administrative part of our jobs, where we have to complete paperwork to bill Medicaid in order to bring federal funds to the district. We also do evaluations to determine if a student has a communication disorder and then provide federally mandated speech and language therapy services. However, you may not be aware that we are expected to be experts in every area of our profession. This includes articulation, receptive, expressive, and social language skills, stuttering, and voice disorders. We also target augmentative and alternative communication systems for students who are non-speaking, pairing up the right technology to support student needs, including eye gaze, switch scanning, and touch access. Our job is so vast, and we feel so underpaid and undervalued, it is hard to continue to stay in this district. Please consider moving us to the LSSP pay grade in order to retain therapists. Thank you for your consideration.
I live in Austin and have worked for AISD for 12 years. I urge you to consider a significant pay raise for speech therapists. Our district has had a high speech therapist turnover rate this year, due in part to compensation, forcing the district to hire contractors that come at a staggering cost, nearly double the salary of an AISD speech therapist. Contractors make up 40% of the speech therapy staff. The financial strain drains our bottom line, aka the taxpayers. Also, they are not required to do the special education training that was agreed upon through the TEA Special Education Partnership. Increasing pay rates to be competitive will enable the district to hire, and more importantly, retain highly qualified staff. This will support your initiative to reduce spending over the next three years. Please strongly consider a pay raise for speech therapists as it will actually save the district money in the long run. Thank you for your time.
Señora Contreras, maestra de AISD. Mi nombre es señora Contreras, y soy una maestra en AISD. Estoy llamando para hablar sobre los cambios recientes en la publicación del puesto de director de educación física y salud. Como maestra, veo diariamente los efectos positivos de la educación física de calidad de nuestros estudiantes. Es esencial para su salud física, bienestar emocional, y éxito académico. Degradar el puesto de director a subdirector, menos preci... Degradar el puesto de director a subdirector, menos precia la importancia de la educación física. Necesitamos un director que pueda ofrecer el liderazgo y apoyo necesarios para mantener y mejorar nuestros programas. Esta inversión es importante para el desarrollo e integrar de nuestros estudiantes y el futuro de nuestra comunidad. Además, debemos aprobar VATRE. Considero esto una emergencia, ya que lucho por pagar las necesidades básicas como los servicios públicos, la renta, y la comida. Es desalentador como profesional no poder permitirme una vivienda decente cerca de mi escuela. Como maestra de nivel superior, he considerado seriamente mudarme a un distrito vicino donde puedo ganar más y pagar menos renta. Los maestros necesitan aumentos salariales. Gracias por su tiempo.
This is an interpretation into English from Mrs. Contreras. My name is Mrs. Contreras, and I am an AISD teacher, and I am calling to discuss the recent changes to an advertisement for the position of Director of Health and Physical Education. As a teacher, I see on a daily basis the positive effects of quality physical education on our students. It is essential to their physical health, emotional well-being, and academic success. Demoting the position from Director to Assistant Director undermines the... This is an interpretation into English from Mrs. Contreras. Demoting the position of Director to Assistant Director undermines the importance of physical education. We need a director who can provide the leadership and support necessary to maintain and improve our programs. That investment is important to the comprehensive development of our students and the future of our community. In addition, we must approve VATRE. I consider that to be urgent, as I struggle to pay for necessities such as utilities, rent, and food. It is discouraging as a professional not being able to afford decent housing near my school. As a high school teacher, I have seriously considered moving to a neighboring district where I can earn more money and pay less rent. Teachers need a pay raise. Thank you for your time.
Mi nombre es Marcela Sans Blanco, maestra bilingüe de primer grado en la escuela Becker y madre de familia de estudiantes en Austin ISD. Orgullosamente miembro de Education Austin. Estoy llamando por dos razones. La primera es para reiterar la importancia de tener un director del Departamento de Educación Física y Salud en lugar del cambio que se está proponiendo de bajar la posición a asistente del director. Nuestro distrito tiene una gran cantidad de escuelas y programas que necesitan el apoyo y la organización de un director de educación física y de salud. Durante este momento en donde están entrando muchos maestros nuevos a todas las posiciones, tener... Importante para dar la continuidad a todas las iniciativas que Austin ISD ha llevado a cabo hasta ahora. La segunda es reiterar mi apoyo a autorizar el VATRE en las elecciones de noviembre. Desgraciadamente, la legislatura de Texas ha dejado la deriva de la educación pública en nuestro estado imponiendo cada vez más y más requisitos sin el financiamiento adecuado. Sabiendo de antemano que es una parte de dinero acabada en manos del estado, no vemos otra opción para poder reducir las deudas y poder seguir apoyando a nuestros compañeros para que sigan trabajando en el distrito escolar y tener una mejor calidad de servicio para nuestros estudiantes y familias.
This is an interpretation into English of Marcela Sans Blanco's message. My name is Marcela Sans Blanco, first-grade bilingual teacher at Becker Elementary and mother of Austin ISD students, proud member of Education Austin. I am calling for two reasons. The first one is to reiterate the importance of having a physical education and health department director instead of the change that is being proposed of lowering the position to assistant director. Our district has a great number of schools and programs that need the support and organization of a physical education and health director. At this moment, in which many new teachers are entering into all their positions, important to give continuity to all the initiatives that Austin ISD has conducted until now. The second is to reiterate my support for authorizing the VATRE in the November elections. Unfortunately, the Texas Legislature has left public education adrift within our state, imposing more and more requirements without adequate funding. Knowing that part of the money will end up in the hands of the state, we don't see any other option to reduce debt and be able to keep supporting our colleagues so that they will keep working in the school district and to have a better quality of service for our students and families.
I am a bilingual speech therapist and have worked for the district for 10 years. This is part one of my message. I'm calling in today to ask that the Board consider a pay raise for speech therapists. I understand the Board is facing some difficult decisions with regards to the budget for next year. However, I think it is important for the Board to understand that every year we lose speech therapists because our pay is below that of surrounding districts and below that of similar positions within the district like LSSPs. Many times, these speech positions can only be filled by contractors who end up costing the district more money.
This is part two of my message. As speech therapists, we can bill Medicaid for our services, something other LSSPs cannot do. Last year, we helped bring in over $750,000. As speech therapists, not only do we evaluate like LSSPs, but we also case manage and provide direct instructional services to students. I respectfully ask that you consider pay raises or possible retention stipends for speech therapists. Thank you for your time.
Hi. For years, AISD has not offered a
Last year, we helped bring in over $750,000. As speech therapists, not only do we evaluate like Ellis's P's, but we also case manage and provide direct instructional services to students. I respectfully ask that you consider pay raises or possible retention stipends for speech therapists. Thank you for your time.
Hi, for years, AISD has not offered a competitive salary for speech therapists and our department is constantly losing staff. This is not good for kids with staff entering through a revolving door. To retain staff speech therapists, please consider a competitive salary much like you did for the evaluation team, a retention stipend and a $300 stipend to cover required licensure and certification. Financial incentives will keep positions filled with staff speech therapists who remain in the district. It's cheaper for AISD and better for kids. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Trustees and Superintendent Segura. My name is Mary. I'm a physical education teacher. I'm calling to speak about the recent change in the job posting of our PE and health director position. I have personally witnessed profound influence of robust physical education program on the overall well-being of our students encompassing their physical, mental and social development. The current and former PE and health director and PE teachers have diligently worked to establish and maintain a high-quality program. Leadership role at the director level is indispensable in upholding exemplary standards and comprehensive assistance that our students rightly deserve. Investing this aspect of our department will yield invaluable returns fostering holistic advancement. A leadership role at the director levels and disciplines will uphold the exemplary standards and comprehensive assistance our students rightly deserve. Investing this aspect of our department will yield invaluable returns fostering holistic advancement of every student across the district. Please reconsider and restore the director position to ensure the continual flourishing of our students. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I am urging the board and superintendent to continue to consider raises for staff speech pathologists. Retention of our speech therapy staff continues to dwindle at alarming rates, causing our district to pay copious amounts of money to contractors to provide federally mandated speech therapy evaluations and services. Reduction in contracts is an initiative for our district which can mean a huge savings that could be used for salary increases or retention bonuses. Effects of not incentivizing speech pathologists to stay in our district can be detrimental long-term to the budget if the district cannot recruit and retain lower-costing staff speech pathologists instead of contracted speech pathologists. We advocate for ourselves because we want to stay and like our jobs and working with students, but cost of living is getting more difficult to sustain.
I am a devoted Texas educator. The state of Texas has intentionally manufactured a crisis by consistently underfunding our schools. In response, we need to do everything we can to save public education. Sadly, the only way to do that now is to pass the VATRE in the November election. We understand that some of this money will go to recapture, however, this is our only option. Recapture while deeply flawed and in dire need of a new formula is not going anywhere. The state of Texas had enough money and chose to not use it to make public education sustainable. However, Texas educators are committed to a strategic effort to fight back against this attack on public education. We are committed to working with surrounding communities, our state legislators and fellow unions to do everything we can to address this problem at the root. By supporting VATRE, we are taking a crucial first step towards securing the future of our public education system and giving our students all across Texas the school they deserve.
Hi, I'm Julie Keel, speech-language pathologist for the district. I urge your attention to the significant pay disparities between our employees and contracted workers, particularly in the compensation packages for speech-language pathologists. While contract employees and vendors earn around $73 an hour, our dedicated employees receive around $42 an hour, difference of about $98,000 versus $57,000. Employees need additional compensation to retain and recruit quality educators. Let's address this inequity by ensuring a retention bonus, certification fees paid for and our increase in salary. Let's foster excellence in Austin ISD.
Thank you to all of our callers. So this concludes our public comment. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? All right, thank you, trustee. So as a reminder, please feel free to share any general comments or questions with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. For tonight's president's report, I would like to ask our superintendent to please share a statement.
Thank you, President Singh. Thank you, President Singh and board. Just wanted to share with our community and our staff. The last week, we lost a beautiful, loving Austin ISD family member in Dr. Twyla Williams. I've never met someone so genuine and caring. She supported and led our district through very challenging times. Her and I spent a lot of time together over the last several years, working through many of these times, and so we got to know each other very, very well. And every time a student or staff person was in need, she coordinated and led the support with compassion and love. She was a rock and voice of calm and reason at times of immense grief and pain. She was not only who I looked for, looked to for guidance, friendship and understanding, but also the person who always put others first without ever wanting acknowledgement or recognition. Dr. Twyla Williams served our district for eight years and there are few among us who couldn't call her a friend, mentor or steady confidant. Throughout her time at Austin ISD, Dr. Twyla Williams meaningfully impacted the lives of countless students, families and colleagues. She began with us as the secondary counseling coordinator where she began the work of rebuilding and expanding the comprehensive counseling program to proactively support the needs of all students before serving as Director of Counseling, Crisis and Mental Health. Most recently, she served as our Executive Director of Counseling and Mental Health. We have been incredibly moved by the outpouring of condolences and offers of support as we process this profound loss. It speaks to the tremendous impact Dr. Twyla Williams had in our community and Dr. Twyla Williams will be missed. It was very sudden and, you know, one of the things that I will share is, you know, we talk about the love of graduation and supporting our graduates as they cross the stage and how it's something that we own as an organization, everybody coming together. And no one loved that responsibility more than Dr. Twyla Williams. She was what we effectively call an OG blue shirt. And my last memory with Dr. Twyla Williams is dancing right before the Ann Richards graduation just a week ago, a couple days ago. So she will be missed, a huge loss for the organization and just wanted to make sure our staff, family and community know kind of, you know, the impact that we've been going through, the loss we have. So thank you, President Singh.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura, and thank you for just leading the district through a difficult time. I'd like to say a few words as well, if I may. On behalf of the board, I want to share our condolences on the deeply felt loss of Dr. Twyla Williams. Dr. Williams demonstrated through her example that every child and family who needed mental health support in our district deserved to be treated with dignity and respect. Dr. Williams was brilliant and she had a deep understanding not just of mental health issues but also knowing how to organize people and resources for maximum impact. I last saw Dr. Williams backstage also at graduation last week, joyfully teaching our superintendent some dance moves, which as I learned later, you were wearing the shoes that she helped you pick out as well, the tennis shoes. You know, that image truly captures the light that Dr. Williams brought with her and we will deeply miss her. We'll honor her memory and our continued commitment to mental health in our community. So thank you. All right, so switching gears a little bit. As part of the agreed order with the Texas Education Agency, the agreement requires that the board shall, at the first board-authorized public meeting each month, the board will publicly report by reading into the record, A, the percentage of time invested in student outcomes during the prior three-month time period, and B, the total time spent in closed session during the prior month. The March, April and May three-month average board meeting time spent on Lone Star Governance-defined student outcomes and special education monitoring was 63.76%. We have exceeded our target of 50%. For the last month, May 2024, we were at 39.46%. The board spent 162 minutes in executive session in April. Thank you. So our next item is part of our commitment to discuss student achievement and have a presentation of scorecard constraint 3.1 and 3.2 special education evaluation status. And before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So does anyone have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay, excellent. So since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will turn the floor to Superintendent Segura for the presentation.
Thank you, President Singh and Board of Trustees. Today, I have joining me Dr. Drew Robinett, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, and Dr. Jennifer Baker, Executive Director of Compliance, Operations, Reporting and Evaluation for Special Education. And so, as we bring up the presentation, want to continue to slide to where we list out the constraint. And just for awareness purposes, we are operating under the retooled scorecard that's, you know, in use right now through the remainder of this semester. And constraint number three, special education compliance equity. The superintendent will not allow the number of past due special education evaluations to increase or remain the same. Constraint progress measure 3.1, the total number of initial and reevaluations conducted will meet set goals for summer, fall and spring through December 2025. And then constraint progress measure 3.2, the number of pending evaluations will be less than the set goal for summer, fall and spring at zero evaluations exceeding the required evaluation timelines by December of 2025. And so with that, I'll hand it off to the team to take us through the remainder of the presentation.
Good evening, trustees, Superintendent Segura, President Singh, Drew Robinett, Assistant Superintendent for Special Education. So when we take a look at the constraint progress measures for 2324, you see those numbers there. Our goal for this year was to complete or exceed initial reevaluations above 5,699 for this year. And, I'm sorry, the constraint progress measure was that for 3.1. And then for 3.2 was we knew we would have pending evaluations and that we would decrease the number of pending evaluations tracking towards where we would have any zero outside of the timelines that are required by state and federal law. We are here to present on the spring category and have continued to show some substantial progress we're happy to share with you this evening as we're plugging and working together in collaboration with team members to address these critical needs in our system. So on progress to date, if you would orient yourself to the final section of, on the right-hand side, there is a spring target that's there. And so when we look at the year overall, we expected to have just over 2,000 evaluations completed, both initial and reevaluations conducted in the spring, that was part of our target. And you can see that we exceeded that to 3,355. Importantly, you can also see that we surpassed our completed evaluations for spring of 2024 by 63%. Excited about that trend. And then at the constraint progress measure 3.2, you want to see that number going down. So you want to see it lower than the target. And so we are 45% below our target for pending evaluations is a key takeaway, with 1,879 of those. And then we're going to unpack that a bit further when we take a look at which of those are in and out of timeline. It's been a busy year for sure in terms of the work around evaluation completion and setting up the structures and supports for our students requiring special education services and eligible for those in our school district. And this orient you through sort of the year at a glance, the year of 2223 in comparison to the school year 2324. And happily, you can see that the lighter purple line on your screen shows substantial progress, an average of 673 evaluations for the school year, sort of month to month, whereas the prior year with Herculean efforts and collaboration, we were at 371 on average. That overall, we've completed as of May 21st of this year and I can assure you that there have been more since that time, but that's when we put together our packet and had our data. We had 7,404 completed evaluation. That's an increase of 81% from the prior year. Importantly, in the school year for 2324, from July to May, we have completed 3,313 more evaluations within that same time period. And then our per-month average, you can see, is substantially higher as well. I think that's critically in part a part of the investments that have been made and the tremendous effort of all of our team members. This is a collaboration. I know you heard from some speakers this evening, not only of our school psychologists, our diagnosticians, our speech-language pathologists, our occupational therapists, those who are part of not only the critical part as a collaborative team in the evaluation process. And so that's been exciting to see. So we're taking a look at spring because that's the year we're reporting on on this slide here. And so you can see the completed evaluations from January to May has been up about 60% comparatively to the prior year. And we have had substantially more evaluations completed during this time. On the next slide, the second part that we look at with the constraint progress measure is looking at not only what are we completing, but how are we completing and providing supports relative to what has been pending over time. So it's a very dynamic system. You'll notice that our system has both an inflow every day, literally every hour of additional requests that may be coming through. And so we don't want to only complete evaluations, we want to make sure that we are completing and fulfilling the expectations of IDEA in federal law in a way that we are meeting the needs of students in a timely way as well. And so you'll recall the start of this slide when we met with you in January, reporting on our fall progress. And you'll notice that important inflection point, the dark line is the past due evaluations over time. And you'll see that where there's that cross that happened at the end of the summer, we were concerned about if we could continue to sustain that momentum. We continued to work diligently to do so and to continue to bring that number. Where not only are we addressing total pending, but we're addressing total pending in timeline in a dynamic system that's critical here. One thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, in January of 2023, 42% of pending evaluations were within timeline. And by May of 2024, 92% of pending evaluations were in timeline. Want to break that down a bit further on the next slide, which is what we did in the prior meeting as well, as a key takeaway. So this is looking at our initial evaluation request. These are students who are not yet identified for any services and there's a real concern about a particular need that has been emerged that has emerged and there is a referral for the process. And that's where we're making sure to prioritize and meet those needs for our families. And so when we met with you all in the fall, we were obviously reporting in January some substantial progress in terms of our completion of those evaluations, not decreasing the total pending per se, but making sure that you can see more of a stable system in line with what's coming in and the things that we're able to address in timeline for our students. And that's absolutely a goal and an expectation for our improvement. And so as of the 521 data, you can see, May 2024, 99.9% of our pending initial evaluations are within timeline and we've been maintaining some strong gains each month and working to sustain that as well. The next slide breaks it down a bit more into pending reevaluations. 29% of pending reevaluations in January of 2023 were within timeline compared to May 2024 where 82% of those have been within timelines. And what we mentioned around that, just to put it into context, is that two things are happening. Yes, we have been prioritizing the issues around initial evaluations for kids who do not have any services at that point, and I'll explain why in a moment. But we also have been very invested in also closing the gap, if you will, in sustaining and increasing our timeliness of our reevaluations as well. When a student requests or there is a request for a reevaluation for a student, which is part of, within a three-year process, the triennial evaluation for a child or the request if more evaluation is needed to determine any other particular needs or relative to the disabilities of a student or their particular strengths, there's absolutely an opportunity to do that. However, knowing that this was a challenge, we wanted to make sure that we have communicated to our teams and to our schools. we wanted to make sure that we have communicated to our teams and to our schools that we know that disability does not drive the services and support for students. In other words, there's not a particular code based on what your particular service needs are. We build an IEP or an Individualized Education Program around whatever the needs of our students are. That's part of the expectations and especially and essentially as we're working to address any of those past due reevaluations as well. So the district has made some great strides in reducing that. The last piece I wanted to bring forward before we sort of unpack some of the root pieces behind these numbers, both the positive aspects of that and the challenges that we continue to work through and persist with our Valiant team, is thinking about the system in a dynamic way. And so this is not the same set of evaluation requests that we reported to you on January, nor was it the same of those evaluation requests for 2023. Some of them did overlay because of the substantial backlog. But some of them also are being addressed over time with an increased inflow. So the next slide orient you to the initial and reevaluation requests by month for our school district. And as you can see, the dark line that Ori is oriented there on the right side of each of the respective months for this school year, relative to the prior year, which is the lighter line of 2223, shows a substantial increase in the number of referral requests that have happened. In fact, in 6.5 months, we received as many referrals as we had done in the prior year. And so that's pretty substantial as a marker to understand. And that's about a 56% increase in the inflow to date. And that was just through May. We continue to get referral requests. And obviously, at the end of the school year, if there are packets and resources and materials that people are putting together for us to be able to examine the needs of students, that continues on through May and into June. So we're tracking that. That often, May is generally a peak month for the time of the referral packets and information coming in from students. Just as a point of context, today is the, well, at the end of May, the current inflow, this data you see captured on the screen was as of the 21st. By the time we closed out the month, we had 740 referral requests for that month. So that's just a relative point as a key takeaway. So importantly, when we look at the evaluation requests, we're looking at where are the areas in which this is being requested. We know there's been an influence related to additional components with dyslexia being considered under special education evaluation requests. But also, we've had an increase in the number of reevaluation requests for students because we're continuing to identify more and more students. And likewise, we have students who've been in the system who, there's a need for additional data and reference points. And we now tend to be closer to a more robust system that can meet those needs in a more timely fashion. So Dr. Jennifer Baker's going to take you through a bit more that sort of behind and under the hood, how these things happen. Before she begins, we always want to bring a point of reference and a reminder to ourselves and to our community. Every one of these numbers, every bar, every dot on the screen represents a child. It represents a family that is coming to our community and coming to our district with a need or a concern genuinely that we address them as a school district. And that is absolutely part of the expectation and a requirement by law, but also a part of our values as a system. And although we have a lot of work to do and great opportunities in front of us, we're proud to be a part of changing a narrative and meeting those needs and working to change a collective narrative that we'll talk about a bit more on a different agenda item this evening. So Dr. Baker, if you'll continue.
Good evening, board. I'm trying to think of other root cause analysis that Dr. Robinett hasn't already discussed. So as you know, the first one was a substantial increase in the number of referrals from both the 2023 to 24 compared to the 2223 school year. So those are both, again, initial evaluations and reevaluations. If you notice from Slide 8, that Dr. Robinett went over for initial evaluations, that dark and light blue lines for total pending and in time, they start to converge. So in October, they hit a point where they're together and then they've remained stable through time, from now to, from October to the current date. That's what we want to see. We want to see sustainability that we can see over time. So the inflow is being addressed in real time for students suspected of a disability and potentially in need of those individualized services to make educational progress. And then she went over Slide 9, that had the same type of trend for reevaluations, just at a slower rate. And the reason for that is that the department had a massive amount of evaluations that we had to be strategic in their pursuit. So the department has and will continue to provide training and guidance to campuses to always hold those ARG meetings. If a student is in need of additional services or revisions to their current supports to make that academic behavior and/or functional progress in their IEP, then we go to a committee meeting and add those services and provide them. So a delayed read or reevaluation will not be a barrier to students' needs. So for that reason, that's why we prioritize the initial evaluations. Because pending initial evaluations do not have that opportunity. A services provided and funded through special education must be provided to students with a disability and found to be eligible for services. So that's why you will see in the graphs that the gap of out-of-time lines and within timelines for initial evaluations have been closed exponentially faster than the reevaluations. But please note that the evaluation team's ability to conduct reads and assess students' pending reevaluations has not stopped. In March, the evaluation, speech, and related service teams came together and they developed a plan to roll out with, using all employees and contractors available to us to conduct as many reads as possible from March until May. So these are the exact students that are largely in our summer evaluation clinics right now. That data is evident on Slide 9, with the blue line of total pending and the black line for past due reevaluations. They both increased from April and May. This is due in large portion to the district's reevaluations already being past due by the time that the evaluators had a chance to get to them. So these students are past their triennial dates already, prior to a read meeting happening, prior to consent being obtained. So we're moving as expeditiously as possible to get to those assessments as fast as possible. And so a majority of our summer clinics are to really reduce those reevaluations that are out of timeline. Next one. So you'll be familiar with these four icons that were presented to you in January. These continue to represent what we, as a district, have invested to ensure that the department meets ScoreCard Constraint Goal 3. It fulfills the tasks listed in the TA order. And then we overall restore a healthy system for the identification, evaluation, and potential provision of services for any student in need of specially-designed instruction. So on the next slide, I'm going to review what we have done this year for these four icons and bring highlights to where we're headed. Okay, so the first one is increased tracking and data visualization. So the data visualization dashboards were created this year that we monitor pending and completed referrals, reads, reevaluations, as well as pending and completed initial and annual ARG meetings. This has allowed campus and district shafts to make database decisions that are targeted and best align our resources to support the areas of need. From evaluations to eligibility determination meetings, checking the dashboard every morning becomes a routine part of everyone's day. It's a shared responsibility to make that systematic change that we need to with complying with state and federal timelines. My team knows, I go right up to them, hey, have you checked the dashboard this morning? Hey, if I'm on a phone with the principal, have you checked the dashboard this morning? This afternoon? So yes, they are all doing it, at least the ones that I poll. So I'll extend my poll opportunities. The next one that I wanted to highlight was, what we did this year was partner with the Technology Department within Austin I C. The district leadership team, technology, and special education, as well as our amazing TA monitors, have been meeting every Monday this year, forming a steering committee who works specifically on Priority 3 of the data reporting portion of the TA order. This group continues to work diligently, enhance data quality, accuracy, and the visualization for all users, from campus administrators to evaluators to the monthly reporting that we will need to do with the agency to comply with the order. The next icon is productivity and feedback. As you know, a productivity dashboard was also created for leadership to measure the number of reports that have been completed per evaluator. This is for employees as well as contractors. Evaluation supervisors review that information with their assigned evaluators, check in with them to see if they need more support or to troubleshoot barriers that are assisting or affecting productivity. This is a huge factor in how we've been able to complete 81% more evaluations this school year than in the previous year. In addition to that quantity piece of productivity, we talk about the quality productivity, like in our January meeting, where we, where the supervisors review each month a sampling of their evaluated reports for quality and appliance components. Then they debrief the findings with their evaluators and discuss specific glows and grows, as we like to call them. The team will also be rolling out a peer review process where the evaluation, for evaluations, where the school psychologists and educational diagnosticians can provide feedback and learn from their colleagues, as well as their supervisors. You'll be happy to note that Dr. Cherry Lee and myself also review for quality and do a random sampling as well. Because it's just, it's good to see what's out there and be able to supply feedback also to our supervisors who are also reviewing. All right, the next one is extensive weekend and holiday evaluations. Evaluation is truly an area in the, at least the past two years, that has never stopped. The schedules always alter to ensure we have staff testing every possible day of the week. So this year, for our summer clinics, we have school age evaluations. So that's our six-year-olds to 21-year-olds. They'll be evaluated at three different locations. We have them at Ann Richards, Doby Pre-K, and Brook Elementary School. We would like to give a huge shout out also to Principal of Ann Richards, Nicole Griffith, has been amazing to allow us this space to be able to do that, as well as Doby Pre-K and her assistant Lisa Garcia. I have a post-it note to remind me that these people are amazing staff members that have really helped the evaluation team a lot. As well as the custodial service maintenance staff for all of our sites, as well as warehouse, to be able to supply the test kits, the protocols, the snacks, the waters, everything needed to complete those summer evaluation clinics. So the, for the school age evaluations, as of today, we have 575 students scheduled to be tested in the summer. The point of contact for that is our Director of Evaluation, Amanda Molina Garza. We would, also, we have early childhood evaluations. So that's about birth to five years old, as well as our private and homeschool populations. They're being conducted at two locations, Up House, Early Childhood Center, and Davis Elementary. So a huge shout out also to those principals who have also worked very hard to help us get those ready for evaluations. That team has 148 students scheduled as of today. So that point of contact is Bailey Gates, Director of Instructional Delivery, Inclusion, and Related Service. So we would love, as mentioned previously, to not have to test every single part of the day 24/7, but that's where we're at. And as you can see, we are making substantial gains that we might be in the point of consideration to fade weekend testing, but maybe just continue to test on holiday or where appropriate to support the current needs. And that last icon there is evaluation capacity building with our team. So we want to continue to refine our robust PD and our professional learning opportunities in multidisciplinary evaluations, working together closely with our speech-language pathologists, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, assistive technology specialists, all of them, to be able to provide comprehensive multidisciplinary reports to families. We're working hard to provide training in cultural responsiveness and assessment, look at different selections for dyslexia identification, specific learning disability identification, as well as specific evaluations to students who might be suspected of autism. So that next part is alignment and equity in processes. So to be able to do this for the professional learning, the TA order has allowed us the opportunity to draft an evaluation manual. We've completed this manual. It was sent to the agency last week for review and approval. This manual outlines responsibilities, processes, state and federal timelines, and resources for staff members to do the amazing work that they do every day. But it's all captured and codified within a document that they can easily turn to and we hope that it'll be a go-to document for them. So after its approval, we'll train the evaluators on it and have it as a standing agenda item when we meet throughout the year for our monthly meetings. It was also developed and intended to be a companion guide to the MTSS manual that campuses and districts will be following next school year. So when a student's not making educational progress through tiered interventions and we need to request an evaluation, what happens? What position does what? By what event must something occur? These are all questions that will be answered by the evaluation manual for the team. It will be a living document and it will be updated on an ongoing basis as policies change and evaluation processes are refined. So this concludes our presentation on constraint 3. We turn it back to Superintendent Segura and happy to answer all questions.
Thank you. I was just lost in all of these excellent graphs. And like, even had my calculator out to figure out percentages and whatnot. But this is really so heartening to see the great progress y'all are making. So thank you, Superintendent and team. So we will now open the floor for our monitoring conversation. As a reminder, we have asked questions that are of a technical or tactical nature before tonight's meeting. But we are free to basically engage deeply in this conversation. This is part of our board, you know, defined responsibility and does count towards our student outcome minutes. But more importantly, this really helps us get a deep understanding of how we are serving our students who are getting evaluated for special education. So trustees, any questions, comments?
I think I'll start. One of the things that I'm curious to hear a little bit more about is, I really appreciated your comments about checking for quality and that type of thing. And when you're doing that, like, could you just explain a little bit more about what that process looks like?
Absolutely. So Dr. Cherry Lee and I, a year ago, I'm not quite sure, we put together a quality rubric that had essential components within state and federal timelines for what needs to be done. Did it happen? Are the components there in general? So it's kind of like a yes/no. Is it there or is it not? You know, there's no gray area within that. But then when you go down to, okay, well, you have the basic components. Now how much did you expand on it? And so really getting evaluators to think beyond a test score. An evaluation is a snapshot in time. It is exactly what you got on that specific day. So you have to have a variety of materials in there. You have to interpret the data, you have to synthesize it. And then you have to put it in presentable terms and words that the parent understands, the teachers understand, and give thorough recommendations that they wouldn't have had otherwise. Why did we even ask for that evaluation if it's not helpful? And so really looking at how much that evaluation guides services and programs that special ed can offer and support. And so, yeah, I wish I had it right in front of you to go over it, but it's actually a pretty lengthy form that could take upwards to, I mean, an hour to look over the report. And that's after you read it. You read the report, you're going back through it, you're making sure everything's there. And then you also give, like, quality feedback, like, what would you do instead of this? Or, and I like putting in mind questions, getting them to think a little bit further. Like, how would you take this further? Or what could we have done differently next time if you had a similar pattern of strength and weaknesses?
Great. And is there any kind of feedback that you all have gotten from parents, whether it's anecdotal or if it's something kind of more rigorous than that, about how they feel about the evaluation process? Are they typically satisfied with the process? And, you know, do they feel like their child has been taken care of? Do we, tell me something about that?
I can respond to that if that's okay. Yeah, so we've gotten a variety in terms of the feedback in that some of the variability we're working to address. One of the reasons we're addressing those checkpoints in terms of quality and expectations. And although we developed, the team developed that rubric and structure, we have been working through our evaluation supervisors. So we have a team to make sure that they're doing some auditing and reviewing of those resources, of those reports, and providing good feedback as well. One of the things we're working to do, and this will be a part of the additional review we'll do in sort of State of Special Education and Strategic Plan, is seeing where we can, the part that we have heard in the audit and as well as from, anecdotally from parents, is really demystifying so as much as we can, considering, and we're not there entirely yet, for the future state considering, and we're not there entirely yet, for the future state where we can have more of an end-to-end experience with evaluators. We do rely and, and benefit from greatly the use of our virtual and contracted team. We use multidisciplinary teams, and that can be a very, it's actually a strength, a strong piece in terms of some best practices. But there's some things to polish as well in terms of really understanding and having someone who can provide that kind of side-by-side clarification for our parents. So that's something that we're examining overall. That has been highly successful for many, and then there are still some pockets that we need to address. And I think that's probably what you alluded to, and that's also what was even reflected in the, the survey that was included in the audit and some of the focus group feedback, as well as feedback that we have as well from our, our evaluation supervisor team. They also serve as, as a sounding board and a beacon for parents with questions. Not only the evaluation team and someone that's there to review the report with them, as well as be a part of that IP team and sort of finding strong foundational pieces. But if there are questions, et cetera, that's one of the reasons we have the evaluation supervisor structure by sort of sets of schools so that we can be resources to parents. And if there needs to be a next step in navigation, then we'll support them with that.
Thank you. I did want to just focus a little bit on, I think it was slide seven. Or, yeah, and just really just say thank you for the work. I, you know, just looking at the school year starting in August, we had 488 past due. And those were, that included the initial and reevals, right? Okay, and that's dropped down to 144. And so Superintendent, do you have a sense of when, I mean, you've done a lot, but I have to ask, when is that going to get down to zero? Do we have a sense of, of when that might be?
Well, I, I think, you know, when we set the, the goals and the constraints, or I'd say the constrained progress measures, you know, it was really based on the known assumptions at, at that time. You know, we did develop initial targets, I think, spring of 2023, right? That was before we entered summer of 2023. And then I think the last time we presented on this, I think it was asked a question about, you know, would we consider perhaps providing an alternate target? And I think at this time, you know, I'd certainly be speculating, want the team to weigh in on this, but I don't think we're quite at a point yet where we can read baseline and say, we will be here definitively at this point. I think we are committed to and, and well on our way to meeting our goal that was previously established. So I'm confident in saying that. I, I don't want to say anything other than we will hit that goal.
And it looks like we're, like with the initial evaluations, we're pretty much there, right? We only have, if I'm reading this correctly, right, which is awesome. Because, I mean, we started off much higher than that. At least, like this, this graph only goes to January of last year, but it was
That's correct. We didn't bring that fall in this time because it was substantially higher.
Correct, correct. So it's really the reevaluations. But I am curious, can you talk a little bit about the do not qualify rate? Because I do recall that being something that was, you know, a concern. And have we seen that change at all? Or are we still waiting for some of our other systems to kick in?
Yeah, we're still, we always are looking at that, and we're looking at qualification. And we're also looking at eligibility determination, which is done at the IEP team. So both the evaluation component and the determination made at the meeting. I think my mic is still working, but, and so based on the audit findings that we had in 2021, it was closer and above, about 20, 20% of our students do not qualify. And we've been running in 22, 23, about 16%, so that's trending. And we're staying pretty close to that, to be quite honest with you. Just as a, and I think it's, it's understood by everyone, but as a point of clarification, maintaining 144, I'll be most proud when we're at zero out of timeline, right? Absolutely. But that's also with that inflow in a dynamic system that was at a substantial increase. And so that's the, the team not only looking back, but looking current and looking forward and making sure that our goals are really aligned to getting some quality services to students and certainly providing to parents and, and families and the students themselves answers in, in a path forward. So that's when that's been trending, but we'll take some additional looks and we can provide that as we have that at the end of this cycle.
Thank you. No, I, I really, I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. I mean, you all have, I mean, this was our, this is 1A, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. We know that there's a lot more that, you know, in the system, and this is just one small piece of it. But this is a really important piece of it. So thank you for all your work. Trustees, trustee Hunter.
Thank you, trustee Singh. You were kind of going in the direction of the question that I had also. And I think I heard it, but I'm not quite sure. On slide 11, under the root cause analysis of the number increase, the first bullet point says substantial increase in numbers of referrals in 23, 24 as compared to 22, 22, 23. And how are we going to address the unresolved issue of the increase that could possibly happen again in 24, 25?
One of the things we're doing is galvanizing all of our resources that we have. And we do want to examine to the point that President Singh asked, where we can provide more of an end-to-end experience at some point in the future for the evaluation process for a family through, kind of through one evaluator, through the MTSS process all the way through, if that happens to be the entry point. But admittedly, we're still needing to narrow, and that's one of the ways that we, we have people who are here physically and present. They are evaluating, assessing, and writing up quality reports for children. That is the, a critical primary responsibility. They may have other responsibilities, but a primary one. So for example, they don't obtain the consent from a parent. There is a person who is a qualified, same, same certification, same qualifications, but that we have a team targeted to be able to do that. So those are some of the adjustments that we can make. And we can step back on that if we can start to become more and more level. But if not, we need to sustain momentum. Data visualization and galvanizing resources are absolutely key. They go hand in hand for us. Because otherwise, I've, I've now worked with the department for, I think, two years and five days. But everything was mysterious and it was summative. And that's, that's not the fault of anyone. You've got to have the right stand-up structures. So we look at and determine where do we need to over-resource something or under-resource something else? Where can we prioritize? Where can we protect time? And where can we step off of every weekend? Where can we step off of the summer? Or where can we not to sustain that momentum? So the other component that will come up in the, the following presentation, or several steps on, is when we have a strong and robust MTSS system, we may see some addressing of the referral needs being earlier. Interventions, obviously, MTSS is not the entry point in to any referral evaluation process. That, that doesn't stop the process if that's in fact something a student or a family needs. But, but that's something that we'll be examining as well. So it's really looking at each student, but then looking systemically at all of the levers to make sure that we're progressing. So we may see if we have a substantial increase, we'll be conversing with our superintendent and our team about what are the current resources we have in place? Where can we continue to peel back? Or where do we need to continue to sustain? And then look at some other ways to adjust some of the, the responsibilities or whatever it might be to be more efficient, but continuing to have effective quality supports and, and, and reporting for our students. Was that a clear enough response?
Yeah, no, thank you. I just was, that's exactly kind of what I was like, and you went with MTSS, which is what I was wondering, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Right. Anyone else? Yeah, trustee Zapata.
So I have a question. I'm curious if, to avoid discontinuing, you know, the increase for anything, the increase in the evaluations. Do you, do we have, and I can't see none near charge, but do you, do we have broken down by campus, how many students are in sped? And how many students are needing what, at what levels? Because this sounds, sounds great, and we're moving to the right direction. But I'm still hearing there's breakdowns in campuses.
So in terms of students identified for special education services, if I'm understanding your question, we absolutely have the ability to look at what our, our total students are district-wide. We have the ability to look at that campus by campus. We have our principals, when she talks about the dashboard, we have a master dashboard of sort of where folk kids are within a process or students are within that process. But each campus has the ability to see where they are in queue and also where they are in terms of the identification process. It's coordinated effort, for sure. Now, I'm not sure about the specific areas of breakdown that you're finding, but we're constantly refining our systems and making sure if we have something drop, that we're addressing it and working to improve upon that to, to mitigate that from happening in the first place. We also have the ability, and this is going to be even sort of a 2.0 version, of having quality ways as part of our TA order. It's an expectation for districts. But our district is working to really refine a way to examine our, our data of our students that we have within our system, campus by campus, disability category, types of services. And that also tells us, is there, how do we address the ability to meet those needs? Not only from, you know, heart work, but in system design work and, and finding the staff, et cetera, to make sure that we can fulfill those needs. So we absolutely do have the ability to, and, and do access that data. And it will be in even a more refined way for not only our leadership, but for our principals to be able to look into that. And our executive directors, who will be part of that shared responsibility for better improvement. I think you may be referencing also some of the variable experiences of families that we're working to address across our system. Because equity, equitable and quality experiences is, is really priority one for any family. And that's something that we will continue to stress and work towards as, as a key priority and goal.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Boswell. Thank you for all of this information. It's really exciting to see the progress. And slide eight is my favorite slide. It's fantastic. So thank you for that. Where the, where the lines converge and, and you see, except for the, the one student who was out of timeline, that's really just immense and really sustained. It looks like progress. So that's very exciting. And I would love to, I don't know if the one, when we see the one, kind of several or those low numbers, is that the same student? Is that a shifting group of students? And, and what do you know about what's keeping that from really getting all the way to zero and how we get there as the order requires?
It, it is typically a shifting group of students, to be fully transparent. There are some times when there are just factors with coordination that come into play. And we look at attendance, we look at all of the components that come into play for a particular student. And, you know, there, there, each, each of those cases are, are unique ones, to be very honest with you. And I don't know if there's an additional trend I'm missing, but that's what we have been finding. And it goes back to, we, we do sometimes have students that, in, in, I'll give you one, one or some, some of the scenarios that have had a request. They've left our district, they return to our district, and we're picking up within those frames, not the same timeline per se, but timeline of enrollment. And we're working to meet the needs of the family rather than restarting everything in the process and, and examining how we can best do that.
And for each one of these, we have our supervisors, our evaluation supervisors, our related service supervisors, speech supervisors, look into each one of these cases at the, close to the end of every month. And so when we look at our, our database for our referrals, initial and reevaluations, we have a color coding system. It works. I don't know how else to explain it, where it has like risk factors of like, okay, it's turning yellow, like it's coming due in the next couple of weeks. So our supervisors are constantly calling the evaluators, hey, where are you at? Where are you at with this? So they're, they're constantly having coaching conversations with their evaluators for every single one of these students. And then we at leadership look at them also and say, what happened here? What, how are you going to ensure that this is not going to happen again? Just to hold people accountable to, we, we got to get to zero. We got to. And just to help, again, remove the barriers if there is any. So, I mean, they're all different situations. I can tell you because of reviewing each one of these, I mean, we have students who have to be evaluated before they're, they turn three years old.
Yep.
And so if we have any ECI agencies that notify us late, it's
Comes to us.
Go as fast as you can, like, I mean, and so there's a lot of just factors, individual factors. But we just ensure that every single one of those are having compensatory service discussions at those ARD meetings and giving that student the services that they deserve from the second that they needed that evaluation completed on time.
Those initials are a combination of school-aged and early childhood evaluations. And that is, because I can see and know the case of a one where a, a child was actually referred after the third, the third birthday. And so we knew coming in, we, we, you know, so, so an investment that we have made this year is in an early childhood specialist who is working to do more outreach with the agencies. And we've already seen substantial improvements in the communication to not, not saying we won't miss at all any, but we're working and, and seeing really strong down trends in terms, or I guess positive trends, but a decrease in any delays in that. And, and the more that becomes a routine, then we get to improve systems overall, not just for our district, but for kids in the Austin community that need the services coming to us.
That's exciting to hear that your plan is working better, that we've, we've connected with our community in better ways. And, and it'll be interesting to see if that trickles up on our report card and other ways, and our enrollment. And, and these kids are coming to us ready. So thank you for that. I'd like to dig a little, I'd like to just know a little bit more about your understanding of the root cause. You had said that some of those triennial, triennial reevaluations are coming, kind of reaching our system, and they're already out of timeline. I'd love to know a little bit more about what you understand about why that's happening and whether you see patterns and where that's happening or who that's happening with.
Generally, reevaluation timelines every three years. So they're happening because they happen every three years. We actually were looking at some data schematics to see in three years, where all the kids that we're testing now, I mean, look at all the initial evaluations that we've done. Does this 77,404? Well, that's completed. So what was our initial total? So we can look at that, but they're going to all become due at the same time. So three years from now, we are going to be hustling and bustling, just as we have done this year, to make those numbers go up. And that's something we have to plan for. That's something we have to project out when we look at different resources and so forth. So that, that's just a factor that we have to look at those. So right now, we can see when everyone's three-year reevaluations are hitting and be able to strategically plan for those. That's another reason why I don't think that potentially summer testing is going to go away because this is our opportunity to really get a good majority of those students taken care of. We see it in secondary the most. Generally, best practice, a lot of evaluators, every three, when you have your first initial evaluation at your next three-year reeval, we do a comprehensive and other assessment to gain more knowledge, to see kind of what's going on with that student. But then after three more years after that, maybe you don't need to go into, you know, all formal evaluations in each one of those areas. So they might not need as much extensive testing. Or you might say, hey, we still think the student qualifies for services, still has a disability, so we're not going to do any new testing. So sometimes you don't need it. So maybe all those students that are up for their three-year evaluation won't need an educational diagnostician, a speech-language pathologist, or a school psychologist to do that assessment. So it just depends.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm getting a picture of kind of a wave moving through our system, right, every three years and, and getting there. So thank you. Thank you for that. So I would love to know if there's an understanding of, by campus, you said secondary. A lot of these are secondary reevaluations. Are we seeing patterns by language, by race, by neighborhood? In, in who is out of timeline still in that 143 for the reevaluations?
We, we tend to have, I, I'd need to do some, we have some of that, but I don't have it all here this evening, some deeper analysis related to that. Our early, our initial evaluations primarily, not always, are elementary. It's really across the system. We have a combination of referral We have a combination of referral requests who are coming through the, what we call the EC, you know, the child study team process or the MTSS process at the campus, but they're also coming directly from a parent request that wasn't a part of that particular process, et cetera, or an outside agency, et cetera. We're also seeing an increase in, you know, private school students. We evaluate students that way as well and coming to our district, that's part of our obligation, if they live within our boundaries and in our zones. So, that's, that's an area where we're continuing to work to fulfill those, but they're in what we call, you know, a referral center. We have like a housed location, per se, in terms of tracking the data. We have had, continuing to work, and this is where we've had a contracted partnership in addition to our own team members, for bilingual school psychologists to be able to provide more comprehensive pieces for students for whom Spanish is the primary language, or testing them at least in both languages, if that's appropriate, is really needed. And so, those are, we do have our director of evaluations is also a bilingual licensed school psychologist, and different folks can do different aspects of that particular more comprehensive assessment, particularly if they're looking at broader socio-emotional behavioral needs, et cetera, for a student. So, those are some of the implications, but we can provide some pieces for you in terms of the school by school or whatever it is, at the direction of our superintendent, that's sort of a deeper look. But we have those as we're tracking and then we're meeting with, and will be meeting with even more so, as part of a continual plan next year with our executive director teams and the Office of Teaching, Learning, and Leading, and building out to make sure that we're progressing accordingly. There are factors that our team sits side by side with when we have limitations in terms of teaching staff and our own evaluation staff and getting together the resources and the packets for kids in a timely way. Those are just factors, but they're absolutely not excuses of needs that we need to address. So, the system is living and breathing, and there are myriad of things connected to those root causes. And looking deeply campus by campus, how we can support them is absolutely, not only what we've done to some extent through this past year with data visualization and responsibility, but more coaching and support with our coordinators and team members in the upcoming year.
Thank you for that, appreciate that. And yeah, it makes me interested to see, I know so much good work has been done with parent outreach, that other, you know, another piece of the work, and whether that's reaching everyone it needs to reach, so I'll be really curious to learn more about all of that. Thank you. And whether that's addressing those, many of those root causes, which is my understanding of, that's part of what it's designed to do, to pull those parents into partnership and help smooth this whole process and strengthen services. So, thank you for that. I have a question related to, partly to the three-year wave that's coming through, partly to summer needs, partly we're going to be talking about our budget tonight, and partly knowing that as more children are identified, we need to staff our schools more, is really what you, what more you need from us, given the budget reality and the reality that we need to serve all these students? Would love to hear a little bit more about that, and I know we'll have a chance to talk about it more later, but in the context of this conversation.
Yeah, I think certainly we'll have an opportunity to talk about it, but given what we've worked through over the last eighteen months, certainly acknowledging that, you know, during this current school year that just completed, we added over a hundred special education educators, positions. I will say that not every one of them is filled. And that's just one of those things that we continue to try to manage and work through, and there's a variety of reasons why they're not being filled, though we've had success, it's not a hundred percent success. You know, as we move forward, acknowledging that you want a responsive system at a reactive system, you know, how do you find the positions that, you know, can serve different roles over different periods of time? And then, as we move forward and talk about budget implications, you know, when we talk about MTS, which is fundamentally like the foundation for much of this as we move forward, you know, what role do interventionists have? And, you know, currently, right now, we do have some resources within AIST, but not to the extent maybe necessary to support a true MTSS build-out and rollout long-term. And so, there are needs, we'll continue to have those conversations. Unfortunately, we're at a point right now where we're just so limited on what we can do, but we're doing our best. And like I said, we did make adjustments over the course of this last year. The other thing I do want to point out is the reduction of reliance on contracts is absolutely something that we're focused on. You know, we're at a point now where, you know, you have to kind of de-commit or de-obligate, but at the same time, you have to ensure that you have the resource when you need the resource. And so, it's, I think it's a little disingenuous to say, okay, we're stopping all of it. It's really got to be kind of a ratcheting down over time to where you get to a sustainable level. So, it's an ongoing conversation, the team, I think is well positioned to have it, and we'll continue that in, I think, two presentations.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you both.
Any other trustees? Yes, Vice President Foster.
Sorry, I just lost my slide deck on my screen here. Seven and eight. The, and both President Singh and Trustee Boswell got into this a little bit, but it strikes me as one of the most intriguing and maybe challenging aspects is when you have that ninety percent decrease in pending evaluations over the course of a year, which is staggeringly impressive, especially if we're doing it, you know, sort of with fidelity. And then, we understand and we've talked about, or y'all have talked about, how there's sort of competence, stability, and excellence, right? And we get to a point where, okay, now we've got a workable system that's involved a whole lot of catch-up, and you all are doing that. But when you have a one forty-four or one forty-three in terms of being out of timeline with this small number, my imagination, and I think part of what I'm hearing, is that this is where we get into the land of mitigating factors and weird challenges and things that are hard to account for, so that on one hand, the entire system has to be stronger for this area to continue to improve because of something over here or over there is not firing on all cylinders, now you face, now it trickles down to this area. So, I imagine that some of this is part of the continual improvement of our systems. That having been said, and an understanding that you've talked about it a little, a little, I am intrigued with the possibilities for, you said you want to get to zero. As a thought question, but I think is important, do we ever get to a point where getting to zero is such an investment of resources in such a way that we're actually not doing the greatest good? Because there are reasons why, maybe not a hundred and forty-four, but maybe there's ten. And in each of these ten, there's such outrageous circumstances that for us to have gotten to the zero would have actually meant that we got something wrong somewhere else. Is this making sense at all? And so, I'd love to hear about that, because we got to get to zero, and I get all that. And I would never want to be a part of pushing our system in a way that we're actually creating a new problem in that effort.
We are very intentional with the support of our superintendent and honestly, the entire leadership team that is behind my shoulders here, that addressing the needs of, I like, this is systemic work, the addressing the needs of students with disabilities or students qualifying for services, or is a legal responsibility first and foremost. It's an equity responsibility for sure, but it is a legal one. And what we have found is that nothing that we do, I want to stay on point, can be done by a single department. And so, what we have found under this leadership is a true expectation of everyone in the system to think about, where do I start to work to put that first? Because there are some ways, when we work together that way, for greater efficiencies, greater learning, greater thinking, including pushback from, in a good way, from Chief Ramos and team about, how can we think about that differently? What's another way? Here's what we found here, in a collaborative synergistic way, that ultimately will lead to better outcomes and supports for students. The federal law is very clear around the expectations for timely initial evaluations in particular, but the expectation for triennial evaluations for students every three years. And so, I do believe that what we're dealing with is something I know, I don't believe, I know factually, that compiled over years and years and years. And so, I am both optimistic and understanding systemically where we are, that when we make the investments, then we will start to retrain, restructure, and rebuild in a way that this is done in a way that is resourceful, it is right by kids, and it also is in a way that the system can sustain it successfully. I genuinely have that belief and have seen the amazing efforts and the collective responsibility that is sometimes in meeting rooms and in planning sessions, it's not all public, but it comes to be operationalized on behalf of kids. But there is an expectation, both in the order and had been by federal law, that on our required elements, that we will meet the state performance plan indicators and we will meet the federal requirements in terms of those timelines. I absolutely know that all of us, and you all as a team, we're wholeheartedly committed to that end. And your question is very well received, because it's, it is this, it's a challenge to make sure that, we must also first do no harm to each individual family or child and focus on making sure that we do things in a way that is right. There is some cases where we know, I can tell you a case on a meeting or something else, where there are circumstances, right, that the family, we couldn't meet, we couldn't have met the timeline in a way that was humane in the process. And that was a call during this point in time. I do feel like we would, we would work, obviously, on any reporting on the front end to explain those types of things. But in general, I think you can tell where this train is sincerely heading, and I really appreciate that, I feel from this board, the trust and the commitment to head in that direction. But those are, those are the kinds of things we have to look at in terms of meeting and exceeding both the goals or constraint measures, but really the spirit of the federal law and the bedrock of idea.
I really appreciate that, and I realize it's a difficult question, because here is the federal law, and we have to be, you know, this, that, that, and so, we have to be operating towards that end. And as you all have said, and as I think that your leadership, the direction is, we do it because that's what we do. The law is, it's nice that the law is there and that the law is in line with our values, but you're doing it for a different reason. You're doing it because this is, that's, we serve kids, and we serve, you know, we strive to serve them excellently. And, you know, so that's the spirit of the question, is this reality in which we live, where things get really, really complicated. But what I heard, Dr. Robin, in your response, is going back to the idea of systems, and this is how we go from competence to stability to excellence, is you start having to turn over new stones, like talking to agencies that you hadn't talked to before in a different sequence, you know, to help them understand, I need these data at this moment, if this is going to happen. So, that might have been a call that didn't happen before, but now, it's something that we discover we have to do, and now it actually becomes part of practice. And so, it's an example of how our systems begin to improve, because we build for these realities that are one in fifties, but one in fifty out of seventy thousand becomes a lot, right? So, I'm really, I continue to be deeply heartened by the data, but then also how you all flesh out the data, you know, from a narrative standpoint, in terms of when you start to explain what you're doing, why you're doing, how you're doing. I'm just incredibly, I'm incredibly grateful. And for us, as trustees, I think we just need to keep listening and learning and figuring out how to be most supportive in the most complex circumstances, because I'm getting this vibe that what we're getting down to is our most challenging and vexing, just complicated circumstances. And then, you know, part of that is also to communicate that to our communities as well, that we get to a point where some of our cases are heart-wrenching, are difficult, are challenging. We lead with humanity, and when you lead with humanity, it might have artifacts to it. And so, it's kind of up to us to, if you're transparent with us about what's going on, we're better positioned within, you know, FERB and all that, to communicate to our community what you're doing. And I even think that's being borne out in the way community is responding. We still hear the challenges, absolutely, and the things that aren't there yet, but we also hear a whole lot more of what's going well and a whole lot more gratitude, and also just silence sometimes, because sometimes when things are going well, you just don't say anything. You get to go make your kids' PB and J sandwich and send them off, and there's one less thing to worry about, so we don't always hear. But the silence even speaks positively sometimes. So, I guess just gratitude, and I'm appreciating the attention to the one forty-four, to the one, when you see this one out, and the recognition that it's probably a different one this month than it was that month, and, but that those keep happening, and we'll get to zero with y'all's leadership. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Trustees, any more questions? Yes, trustee, it leads you.
Hi. Thank you. I was wondering, kind of in, coming off of the evaluations that are out of timeline or reevaluations, is there systematic documentation of why those things are happening to help see where resources need to be allocated or other issues? Is that being systematically done for every, everything that's out of timeline?
Yeah, and it absolutely is, and a lot of it is sort of where we've started and kind of where we're going with substantial inflow continuing to come into our system. And, you know, we are looking at each of the respective cases, but we also are, we're, I mean, we're running a pretty good clip in terms of capacity and seeing where we are, and that's why we got to this point in capacity by the end of this May and are building in those summer structures and other pieces, is not a, not a catch-up, but in some ways, like, so the way that the timelines work, for lack of a better description, is that when you're not in instructional days, you have a pause. And so, we are, I was not this type of student in school, but we are working to project ahead on completing things in preparation for a wave inflow coming again in August, you know what I mean? Like, nor were my, I can think of my twenty-one-year-old, who, I mean, it was, where's, here's when this is due, you need to get started much, much earlier. We're working to get ahead on those pieces. And again, prioritizing any, I mean, all evaluations, but any of those initials coming through. And then, I just want to point out that when we're looking at those reevaluations, I mean, we've come through to having, where we were well over nine hundred and a thousand each month to being in that one, one forty-three range. And so, I can tell you the story of each of those ones, but I also know the levers in terms of the system infusion and capacity that we've put into place to sustain that number and even go down further. And we, so we have, I, we're looking at the documentation of the why, and then where their efficiencies, where are there other places that we can improve upon that. We're prioritizing the color coding system, other things that Dr. Baker mentioned. It helps people visualize where there's sort of some intention around, not some intention, great intention around how we can address students more as early as possible. And we also were looking at any cases where there wasn't a review of existing evaluation data that we got that completed in a way where if there was a reevaluation need, we need to take ownership and put them on our roster to get those pieces done. So it's very systematic through our team, through our dashboarding, and through, they're going in and pulling each case, the referral packet, the IEP piece. What's the need? Is it the complexity of the case? How are we going to be able to address that? Yeah, it's that level of detail.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, so one caveat to Dr. Robinett's point is instructional days do not matter with reevals. The three-year timeline is a three-year timeline, so it's calendar days. And so that's another reason why it's really important that we do testing over the summer and holidays because when that triennial date's happening, it's happening. So that's why we advance them and push them up. So the graph here depicts like pending reevaluations that have consent where additional evaluation data is needed. It's not factoring in all the three-year reevals that need to go to a read. And then you meet at that read meeting and then you say, okay, do you need formal assessment or do you not need formal assessment? So to kind of also answer trustee Foster's question, is it, yes, it has impacts on the system because you have to go to ARD, so you have to involve all your special education teacher to have that meeting and then for them to meet again to review that assessment. And for initial evaluations, you get all these evaluations done, they have to take them to ARD also. So in looking at the reads that are due, we looked at the campuses. We strategically saw where the most amount was. And then we deployed a team to go help that campus do as many as possible between April and May. So, yes, we strategically were able to like help support the ones that had the most amount at that time that are coming up due on their three-year reeval.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And so it's, I'm, we were actually one of the families that was a little bit late with a reeval. And the reason was not anything within Austin ISD's control. So that's why I thought it was interesting you asked that question because I'm sure y'all knows all these cases piece by piece. And you're not just going to tell a story about some family, but I, because we are the only organization that has this required timeline. And my daughter had been on a waitlist for two years at another organization, but it was taking longer. And our, I mean, our evaluation team, like our evaluators in this district have a very high level of ethics where, you know, they determined they wanted to see both evaluations to have the best school evaluation. And it was, you know, communicate, it was communicated together, you know, with PHS and, you know, our family. And, you know, I think it's, it's good to hear, you know, for these things to be documented, both in, okay, there's something we need to do to increase resources and just to show, hey, we're doing everything we can. And there's things out of our control or, or like you said, because of a complex matter or something else where the, you know, the high standard is let's get a good, I mean, because I'm sure they could have been finalized without that data. But, you know, our evaluator wasn't going to do that. They wanted to do, have more data. It's good to have.
What's best for the kid.
Right. So I appreciate that very much. And, you know, last year when we were having these conversations, we talked about kind of like our, I guess, our bottleneck where there was the most like backlog. Because we have lots of different evaluators in our system. So as things shift, that, you know, has any of that shifted where there's evaluators who are now like shouldering the biggest burden, a class of evaluators that's, you know, struggling the most with?
We have general shortages that still haven't changed since the last time, you know, since January. So bilingual school psychologists are still highly in need. We will largely have to contract for them to get what we need done for students. With 74 evaluators, I mean, we're sustain, I mean, we're, we're going as quick as we can through these evaluations. But as Dr. Robinett said, they have a very limited scope in what they're providing. And so to be able to sustain the system and, again, be able to look three years ahead, to be able to control the evaluations that are going to come through, we need to start thinking about that. And so thankfully, the next presentation will talk about the Stetson audit. And they talked about us doing a staffing through human resources to see like what additional resources do we need to be able to handle these evaluations as well as like the comprehensive model for school psychologists and educational diagnosticians beyond just the testing role.
And then I'm also referring, so yes, schools, we had school psychologists, see if I know everyone, and educational diagnosticians, occupational therapists, speech language pathologists, and occupational therapists. So as we're having more evaluations done, which is great, then everyone has more evaluations too. So are there any, any changes in like loads getting heavy on any?
A service providers?
Any of these evaluate, I mean, these type of evaluators in like the five categories?
So, so a couple of things, and Dr. Baker will, if you don't mind, will clarify if I missed something or say something in a way that I don't intend. A couple of things to think about. Number one, we have a very strong committed team of Austin ISD full-time employees working on this. But to your point, and we do have people who have been incentive, part of other additional incentives have been aggressively meeting and exceeding targets and offsetting as well in terms of that progress. When you think about where we have had that increased inflow and still, we didn't go 55% below what our goal was, like we kept sustaining and progressing with the increase of the team members as well as addressing the needs of the incoming students. We have supplemented with contracted staff and we have continued to do that at a pretty substantial, you know, a pretty substantial investment. And that has really assisted us to offset, to not say that there aren't really, you know, robust, rich, invested caseload of our own team members. But there does come a point, and that has been part of the backfill, if you will. That's probably the wrong terminology, but the complement to our system to be able to offset some of that and to maintain strong services and the needs for evaluations. You heard from our speech language pathologists, this is actually part of, I'll say it earlier. They've been a part of completing over 2,800 of the evaluations, at least one component of it that we've talked about this evening. Because that is, it's a team approach, right? And so it's a school psych or it's a diagnostician and, and, and a speech language pathologist or as Dr. Baker mentioned, all the different folks in a comprehensive team. And so that has been challenging because then when we're looking to fill for vacant positions or contracted positions, making sure that we're addressing also those expectations and those needs for meeting timelines, but also providing quality services, et cetera. So we are continuing to document and look at that and looking at the caseloads of our, our team members in terms of evaluation targets. And we're finding more and more efficiencies and quality complemented with that in an effective way. And that's just part of our continual examination and we'll continue to look more deeply at that. But the, I, in terms of, I don't know, like burdened, I would maybe, but responsibility and like all-in, it's every, it's every one of them. It's whether you're a school psych, whether you're a DIAG, where you're an SLP. They're, they're all in on this work. And it is, it has been really profoundly moving as a leader of a team that sees the commitment that folks have. And they're working hard. They're working really hard. And yes, we are supplementing and ideally we would just build it through the team overall. But we are, you know, we're addressing, we don't want to, we want to kind of, we have to adjust the system based on what the needs are coming in at. And we also, to the baseline question earlier, we kind of need to see over time how are we, how are we progressing? And what is truly like the correct stabilized amount, et cetera, for folks to be able to address the longer-term needs? Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. All right, well, thank you trustees for this productive conversation. Thank you to our staff and superintendent as well for the presentation. So now we get to vote on whether or not we accept this monitoring report. So as a point of clarity, we are not, we are voting, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and have a deeper understanding about how the current reality for students lined up with our vision for them. So at this point, I would entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report. Secretary Boswell?
Yes, I move to accept the monitoring report.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, any discussion trustees? All right. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell, a second by trustee Sepazza to accept the monitoring report. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so we will now move on to the next item, which is scorecard constraints 2.1 and 2.2 on our discipline disparity. Tonight's discussion on our constraint has been recorded and can be found on agenda 4.2 on Board Docs for all those watching at home or on the Austin ISD YouTube video site. So our time during this meeting is typically a time where we would ask our superintendent and staff questions about this item. But I think today we are making an exception and we are going to have, ask trustees, if you have questions on this item, to please submit them to the tracker instead, only because of the time limit that we have and also just out of respect for Dr. Williams' team. So do we have, is there, however, if you have any questions for the superintendent at this time that you, that you might be able to answer, it would just be helpful to kind of give you a moment to ask it. Even, but no pressure to answer.
It's actually not a question, it's a concern. And I would just ask that, I will put all my questions that I actually have into the tracker. But just to be on the record, I'm very concerned that there are schools with 100%.
That's right.
That means every single African-American kid on that campus has had some sort of discipline action. We have got to look at that. We've got to take that seriously. And we've got to, I have to see the strategies and the support here, and I appreciate that. These are strategies and supports we've had for quite some time. And I believe that we, we need to look deeper and do much, much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really appreciate trustee Hunter for lifting that up. And the data that she's referring to is in a table. And what was the?
It is attachment three.
So when we, when you get, when you dive into attachment three under item?
4.2.
4.2, thank you. And you begin to look at the school by school and you begin to look at the disaggregated data. Thank God that we still have disaggregated data. You see schools, some of, or, and some of them because of the nature of the school, where it's coming online and all this other stuff, we're talking about a grade. And when you see 100% numbers, that is a problem or a challenge that we can dial into and there is a solution for. And so without going all into it now, we can put it in the tracker. But I've just, I'm glad trustee Hunter raised that because there are compelling, obvious challenges that probably have solutions.
Thank you so much. And as I'm listening to my colleagues, I'm wondering if, and we can talk about this offline, but if we do feel like a need to have an open discussion on the dice about this topic, I think we can definitely schedule that. It definitely, it's something important and the issues you raised are extremely important. So, yes.
And I just have one kind of question and would love thoughts from you, Superintendent Segura, as we look ahead at approving our discipline manual. I know our community did a lot of good work on that, community administration and then board approval on that a couple of years ago. But when I look at the list of the top seven reasons for discipline among our students who are African-American and our students who receive special education services, in both cases, the top two, one is fighting and one is physical aggression. The next five, more than half are very subjective. More than half of the next, the incidents in the next five are disruption, insubordination, and rude to adults. And I know that data show that that's where a lot of disparities come from. And I would welcome, if we don't feel like we've addressed that well in our discipline manual that we plan to approve, if you have recommendations to bring to us to further reduce that subjectivity. I would welcome that and maybe we could approve a revision in August. So I'm wondering if there's something more you have to bring to us, given that data that we hadn't had the chance to discuss before the manual came into Board Docs. Thank you.
I guess at this point, you know, we can talk about maybe, you know, having this conversation later in the month to maybe explore this a little further. The subjectivity I certainly recognize is a kind of area of improvement. You know, what that would look like, you know, I'd want to get feedback from the team and figure out what structures we might want to consider. But I think that dialogue we can definitely have with you all. This may, I guess the 20th or even the 11th, technically we'd probably have that. Does 11th may be difficult.
Sounds good.
And again, I think we can, we don't have students back in our classes and in our buildings until August. So there could be some room for that. But I think the question is, do you, should, would you recommend that we rethink removing children from schools for being rude to an adult? Or is there a better solution?
I think there's an opportunity to reduce the subjectivity associated.
Thank you. So, yeah, I don't think it has to be before August, but I think we have that opportunity. And thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so I do want to ask my colleagues, did you want to say something?
I want to follow up.
Please do.
Just a quick follow-up on Lynn's question. And it was a question I did put in the tracker, but it wasn't answered. And that is around the chart that shows that the top seven, you know, misbehaviors that resulted in the disciplinary actions were those things. But that leaves over, almost 200, 198 other disciplinary actions for additional offenses that weren't listed on that chart. Right, so that's the top seven, but when you add them up, it's almost 200 less than what the total disciplinary actions were. So it really makes me wonder, what are the other 200, what are the other reasons that we're suspending kids? And does it rise to the level of student safety or are there other reasons that we're suspending kids? So I really would appreciate, you know, to revisit the tracker question and to answer the question I put in there. I also, I noted in the tracker, and there was a very positive response to seeking another term for it, but it will apply to our discussion later on the student handbook as well. But just the language around offenses is very offensive to me in the sense of it's a, it's a criminal justice term. And although that is the way the state labels this and it's probably what's in the trainings, there's no reason that we as a district have to use that word. And we can use more positive terms, I think, to describe behaviors rather than crimes.
Appreciate that. Trustees, do you all, so this is a little bit of an unusual situation of how we're kind of doing this with not having the staff here. And I, and I, I'm glad that, you know, we've done it, we've chosen to do that. But I do want to ask if y'all feel comfortable voting on accepting this report tonight without?
Let's just table it.
Table it?
I mean, with, I would say, I would, you know, correct me if this is a bad way to go, but sort of table it without prejudice. This is not a matter of up or down. This is, or it is in a space right now. And so we want to attend to this, recognize where we have some more follow-up and we'll follow up in a time when it's right for our organization to follow up.
Do we, I guess I'll ask my, Dr. Reacher, what's the official way to do this? Should we just decide or do we have to vote on table?
This happened a couple of weeks ago and I think I was just, I mean, I don't even think of, is the motion required? No, yeah, I think we just.
Okay. Okay, we'll table it then. All right, I think, I appreciate that because I think that'll give this topic the, the space it deserves when we are ready to do that. So forthcoming. All right, thank you all. Okay, so I will move on. To, oh, the scorecard discussion, good times. So here, and this is another real, this is a heavy agenda we have tonight.
Very heavy.
Because we've got the scorecard and then the budget, so.
And the special education.
And the special with Dr. Stetson, so yes. So next is a continuation of our discussion of the district scorecard. We are joined tonight on Zoom by our Lone Star Governance coach, Ashley Paz. The board's responsibility for the scorecard is to adopt student outcome goals that reveal the community's vision for improving students' outcomes and superintendent constraints that will protect the community's values along the way. Superintendent is responsible for creating progress measures for each goal and constraint. These interim metrics are what the board will review every month to know whether or not their priorities are being achieved. So over the last few months, the board has been working with our LSG coach to develop goals and constraints that are reflective of our values. In April and May, the board started drafting goals and constraints and developed a list of five goals and five constraints at our last meeting in May. So tonight is an opportunity to discuss these goals and constraints. I believe this is the first time we're really seeing your proposed constraints, the, the proposed progress measures for the goals and constraints and see how they are aligned to the indicators. We'll also have an opportunity to hear from Ashley Paz about, about this work. And I did wanted to let the trustees and the public know that we did, Ashley Paz did send us a document with some of her written feedback on this list of goals and constraints and it's now up on board docs. So you've got that available as well. So superintendent Segura, would you please lead us through our discussion?
Sure. Thank you President Singh, Board of Trustees. Tonight with us, we have Patty Rodriguez, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching, Learning and Leading. We have Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer, Governmental Relations and Board Services. We have Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Academics. We have Dr. Susan Diaz, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Academics and Dr. Jay Brown, Director of Research Analytics and Insight. And so as we move to the first slide, want to kind of set some overall objectives and really just have a conversation around the purpose of tonight. As President Singh, you just mentioned, this is the first time that the administration is bringing forward draft constraint progress measures and goal progress measures. And so the, the idea here is to get feedback from the trustees, have a conversation. We will have the opportunity next Tuesday in a work session to have a deeper dialogue and also bring back to you, you know, adjustments to the goal progress measures and constraint progress measures and then ultimately move forward with a approval on June 20th. And so for awareness purposes, you know, this is part of the ongoing effort and, and work that we've been doing with Ashley Paz, our coach, in support of Lone Star Governance process. And for awareness purposes, there have been five goals and five constraints developed by the board. And one of the things that I think is, is helpful to understand is, you know, for the last many weeks, really months, we've been working kind of in parallel, you know, identifying opportunities and then as the board settled on draft goals, then we would then come up right behind and develop draft goal progress measures. You know, I'll hand it off to Dr. Jay Brown to talk about some of the things that we learned along the way in regards to our focus groups, but I do want to point out that each and everything that we consider is, is a, a, something that will be measured, right? It's by definition, it's a goal progress measure or a constraint progress measure. This is not everything this, the administration will be doing, just to be clear, because there are many, many other things within the system that are aligned with our values, things that we believe in, things that we continue to do. And just because they're not on this document doesn't mean that they're not something that are going to be supported by this administration or by this board. So I also make sure for, for those following along at home, you know, that kind of evolution of the scorecard within AISD has, has changed over the last many years. You know, I think four or five years ago, we had dozens and dozens of goals and then about a year and a half ago, we had 19 goals. And so it's evolved over time. The other thing I want to point out is every time we evaluate a goal progress measure or a constraint progress measure, we're always thinking about how is this going to impact AISD? Is it something that is going to require additional resources? Is it going to require additional professional development? Is it going to require a period of time to establish the ability to implement whatever it might be with fidelity? You know, who is going to be doing the work? Is it something that is going to be led by central office or is it going to be something that we're asking staff to do and educators to do in the classroom? And so, you know, there are a variety of things that we are kind of navigating as we develop draft goal progress measures and draft constraint progress measures. So I just want our trustees, our families, our community, our staff to know that we're really trying to thread multiple needles here in an effort to align the goals of the organization with the values of the organization, with the constraints that we're operating within. And, and that's the reality that, that we find ourselves in today. And so what I'd like to do is to have Dr. Jay Brown briefly talk about the work that has occurred recently with our focus groups that were convened, which included principals and included some kind of subject matter experts, some educators as well. We'll talk about that. And then what I'm going to do is ask Dr. Jacob Reach to take us through the goal progress measures alone and then ask the board for, you know, feedback, input, create a dialogue and then we'll close that part of the conversation, move over to constraint progress measures. And the reason I'd like to tackle it that way is because if we get through all of them, then I think, you know, we'd be kind of, might be diving into different things and I'd, I'd like to kind of, you know, corral the goal progress measures and then corral the constraint progress measures. And again, these are draft, so there's always an opportunity for refinement and improvement. So Dr. Jay Brown, I'll hand it to you briefly to talk about the focus groups and then hand it off to Dr. Jacob Reach to take us through the goal progress measures.
Hi. So at the same time, y'all were really conceptualizing what scorecard goals you were looking for and looking to really dig into and what language that looks like. We went out and really developed what kind of progress measures we were looking at under that. And in order to do so, we wanted to expand the kind of input that was going into that. So what we did is we created a set of work groups from the goals that we knew were going to be on the scorecard, so the three house bill, three goals. And we also had some inclination that there was going to be information around middle school. So we created four work groups. We ended up with around 100 people that were involved in these work groups. The, each work group had around four meetings and the people involved included teachers, principals, district staff, as well as our area higher education professors and some of our community thought partners. They came together and really focused on, their task was identifying goal progress measures that were valid and reliable and really vertically aligned to measure what we wanted those goals to be and would tell us meaningful information to help us reach goals. They also needed to provide the reasoning behind picking those informations that included research, experience and artifacts. And lastly, providing suggestions for what success would look like in those goal progress measures and towards reaching those goals. So within those kind of meetings, there was one meeting that really just focused on what's the purpose? They had a little bit of kind of Lone Star Governance. What is going behind here? What's the purpose of scorecards? What's the purpose of goal progress measures? And really digging into what's the work of the district and what does it look like at each level? From there, there was a big moment really based on generating ideas. What are all the things that we might measure? What is kind of going in? What are all the various tools, measurements, ideas, various samples that we could look at? And then there was a big data dig in which all of our members, whether they were school district or not, got access to the things that we typically look at from day to day and were able to ask questions and ask questions of each other, which I think was some of the more interesting parts of the experience. From there, they identified possible measurement tools and ideas and really went into kind of not just their groups, but subgroups to really define and refine those ideas. And then they spent their last meeting on really finalizing recommendations. After we wrapped up those work groups, the leaders worked together to synthesize across groups what those recommendations would be, including creating parallel structures where needed and creating kind of what the final recommendations look like. Now, we didn't have all the goals at the time and we didn't have any constraints when we started our work groups. So what we did is we took some of the lessons learned from the work groups as well as some of those research ideas and some of the overall structures from the work groups and we pulled in our central office experts and we pulled in some of the additional people that gave us a lot of expertise in order to create the additional goal progress measures as well as the constraint progress measures. So in the end, the understandings from our focus groups really created what you're going to see here today in the goal progress measures as well as the constraint progress measures.
So I want to take everyone through our goals and our GPMs now. So of course we'll start with our HP3 goals and our first one is third grade literacy. And looking at our draft GPMs, we really have two different GPMs here for a total of three GPMs. The first one is looking at NWEA map reading achievement score proficiency indicators, which is the 30th percentile or below in English or 40th percentile or below in Spanish in decreasing that in first or second grade. So GPM1 is for first grade or GPM2 is for second grade. And we're using that 30th and 40th percentile because that is aligned with the guidelines that we have in our MTSS supports. And so that tells us where we're at for those tier supports. So the more that we can, I want, I want to make sure I say it correct, the more that we decrease, right, yeah, the more that we decrease, then the more students we have in the tier one supports and the less that we have in those tier two and tier three. Our other GPM is currently written as the percentage of kindergarten students scoring on grade level or higher on a retail performance task is measured by a locally developed kindergarten reading rubric will, will increase. This was a first draft that we've been working through. Most likely that performance task will change as we continue to work with our early learning teams and getting feedback from campuses, but it'll be very similar to what you see here. We want to make sure that we're taking a task that we know is predictable for success in those next grades and developing that rubric that then aligns to show that that student has mastered that task. And we know that since they've mastered it, they'll be more successful for first grade, they'll be on level for first grade. And then of course, that will lead towards also being on level for third grade where we believe that this will adequately predict strong performance for third grade. And so this is, this one is still a work in development on that final task, but the idea that there'll be a task and there'll be a rubric that goes along with it is really what we're trying to get to with this GPM.
And Jacob, before you, I want to point out that this is the first time that we have a baseline show up in our goal progress measures, meaning that.
Thank you.
The 24, 25 school year will be used as the opportunity to provide the professional development, you know, refine, develop the tool, ensure that the tool is, is used and then collect information on that tool and then begin to track in the following year. So you'll see that where we'll saw baseline 25, 20 through 2029, where the first two, you'll see 24 through 2029. So just make that crystal clear.
So our second HP3 goal and goal number two is around numeracy. So this is really a mirror to the one we just looked at, but now focused on math. The GPMs as well closely mirror that. We have the ones looking at the first and second grade and then developing a performance task and a rubric for kindergarten that again would look at a numeracy or math task that we know helps the scaffolding to those higher levels and creating that rubric to measure performance for those students. Again, that one would also be a baseline. So with all of these, you know, these are works in progress. We want to continue to work through these, figure out what is going to be best for this system and make sure that next Tuesday, when we continue our conversation with the board on our scorecard through our retreat, that we are bringing back those new GPMs or same GPMs, but there may be some slight edits to them, or whatever that may be, to really continue that discussion on what are each of these going to look like. But we'll keep moving forward with our last HP3 goal, which is college career and military readiness. And so you see our goal on the left, the percentage of annual graduates who demonstrate CCMR by meeting the TSI criteria in at least one of the following, which we have associate's degree with graduation, the enrollment in post-secondary or earning the industry-based certification at level one or level two. And just as a reminder, this is also aligned with what we know is the CCMR outcome bonus. So for our draft GPMs, we have three for this as well. Our first one is looking at the percentage of 11th and 12th grade students who meet the college readiness standard assessed by a TSI test. The way it's written that way is because we're actually going to look at three different tests, but one standard. So we'll be reporting out on who met that TSI standard, readiness standard, but that could come through the TSIA, which is the actual assessment for TSI, or the SAT or the ACT. So we'll look at all three of those and we'll be looking at both mathematics and ELA for that, I'm sorry, ELAR. And that we will want to increase that from previous years to a new target by June 2029. Our next one is again, looking at the percentage of 11th through 12th grade students who are eligible for college credit. And I do want to just briefly mention that word eligible because I'll even admit that one of my first questions for Dr. Brown is, well, why would we want to know if they're eligible? I want to know if they earn it. But as you pointed out to me, Austin ISD does not provide dual credit. Universities provide that credit. So our students are eligible for it on our end and then the university provides it. So when we look at this, it is saying that that student actually has that college credit, but Austin ISD did not give it to them. The university partner provided them that. And so we would be looking at passing a dual credit course on ramps, AP and IB assessments. And we would want to increase that. Then the third one is focused on IBC and that's the percentage of 11th and 12th graders who are both enrolled in courses aligned with IBC and persist to successful course completion. So it's not just that they're taking the course, although this does help us progress monitor throughout the year, but that they're continuing through the course and being successful in the course at the end of the year. So those are our project, our draft GPMs for CCMR. Now going into our non-HP3 goals and our first one focused around middle school is middle school algebra. And I do want to point out also that this is the percentage of students identified as economically disadvantaged enroll in, in middle school algebra one. So this one's not all students, we are focused on economically disadvantaged. And so our GPMs are as well. Our first one, the percentage of fifth grade students identified as economically disadvantaged scoring meets grade level or above on math, mathematics, using the star growth projected proficiency will increase. And one reason I want to point out that we're looking at fifth grade is because fifth grade is where we're going to know based off of those students' star results. What is that next step for accelerated math? Based off of new state law, we will be required for 40%, or the top 40% of all students based off of fifth grade star results will need to be enrolled in accelerated math for the last year. As a district, we want to continue that discussion and see, is it 40% as a district? Is it 40% of all the students entering into that middle school? What is that rate we want to use? We will of course meet the state requirements, but we may want to go above and beyond that. Our next one is looking at the percent of sixth grade students identified as economically disadvantaged who enroll in accelerated mathematics and persist to course credit completion. So again, we want to make sure that we can progress monitor that. They're enrolled, they're also being successful in that course, in graduating that course. We know that that's step one in being successful and taking algebra before ninth grade is going through that accelerated course. So we do believe that this will help us predict where we may be for our overall goal. So the last of our goals is by literacy. This is one of the new ones that the board discussed and approved at our most recent board meeting. And that is that the percentage of graduates who earn a state or district recognition of bilingualism and by literacy, and we're looking both at the AISD seal. of bilingualism and biliteracy, and we're looking both at the AISD seal, the Texas Performance Acknowledgement, and the Global Seal of Biliteracy, that we will increase those. So our first GPM is looking at the percentage of fifth-grade students who earn a proficiency level equivalent to level one high school credit in the TEES on the AVENTSTAMP 4S Dual Language Proficiency Assessment for one of the partner languages. So those are the languages that we're offering at those elementary levels. Going back to our coaching from Ms. Paz, I was able to meet with her today, and one of the pieces of feedback that she provided is nothing, that the GPM is good, but that we also need to make sure that we can visit it multiple times. And this is, as written right now, just a, you know, no other way to say, you know, kind of a one time a year. So the suggestion was changing this to say on track to earn. And so that's something that we'll come back and visit for our discussion again on Tuesday. And then our last one is the percentage of ninth and 12th grade students on track in program coursework to earn an Austin ISD Seal of Biliteracy. And that one, of course, would be a baseline, and increasing that from June 2025 to June 2029. And that would be looking at the number of dual-language courses that those students are on track to complete in those high school grades. So that is a summary of, well, it's not just a summary. It is a report of the GPMs that we have brought forward for our scorecard goals. So Trustee Singh, Superintendent Segura, if it works well for you, we can pause here on this, enter into discussion, and then move on to constraints.
Thank you. So much, so much work has gone into this. We appreciate that. Trustees, any comments or questions on the goals and goal progress measures at this point? I did want to clarify one thing. Superintendent Segura, could you talk a little bit about the, and we've talked about this here before, but I want to make it really clear that the goal is an aggregate goal. And so that's a departure from what we had in our previous scorecard, like two scorecards ago, actually, I think. And this is because we have to align it with the HP3 goals, correct?
So that was the guidance that was given to us by our government, I'm sorry, Lone Star Governance Coach, correct?
Okay. And so, and I know we'll get to this in the constraints conversation, but I want to let folks know that because we wanted to make sure that, you know, it is possible to, let me start over. We know that it's possible to meet an aggregate goal and still not address some of the gaps that we see. And so we wanted to kind of address that in the constraints. So there is a constraint coming up that does talk about disaggregated data. So I want to just make sure if the presenters don't mind kind of making that connection when you talk about that, and why we did that. Because that is really the path towards making this equitable and ensuring that no students are falling through the cracks. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. But any other comments, questions?
Can I respond to that?
Oh, yes.
So President Singh, I very much appreciate that comment, and certainly we're very sensitive to that. So, you know, as committed to, and we'll continue to do this, every monitoring report that we have will disaggregate all the data, right? That is something we've done to do that. And so though it's not in the goal itself, in everything that we present, you will see all the different student groups, the way that we present now. And the goal, you know, is to ensure that we have alignment so that the initiatives themselves, you know, identify the inputs, outputs, that ultimately move to outcomes. And that's where the work comes in, like the 18-month, 24, 36 months. And so the goal is that as we present these monitoring reports, we'll be able to really thread it all together and ensure alignment. But I want to be very, very clear. We will continue to report out on all of the groups that we have in the past. That is not going to change.
Thank you. And that's just for goals one, two, and three, by the way. Goals, goal four is a focus on economically disadvantaged students. And goal five is not, that is an aggregate. So would that also, we also be looking at that disaggregated?
We will be able to disaggregate it to the extent that group size allows us to.
Okay.
It's a pretty small, yes, correct.
Okay, cool. All right, Trustee Kaufman.
I just wanted, I've been confused by that, and I wanted to say clarity either from our coach or from our staff. But the House Bill 3, as I have read it, says that the district goals for third-grade math and reading in CCMR would need to contain yearly targets and targets for each student group identified under the closing gap domain with 25 or more students. So not only does it require that you disaggregate the data, but it also requires we set targets. Though to me, implicit in that is if we set the targets but don't meet them, then that goal has not been met. So am I misunderstanding that? Or is there, does the disaggregation and the setting of targets lead to accountability for each student group in, within these, these outcome goals?
Ashley on?
Yeah, Ms. Paz, I'm not sure if you're able to help respond for that question.
Hey, Ashley.
So that's actually a great question, I recommend, and you're excellent. Correct. So the goals, the way that the House Bill is written, it requires the board to adopt a goal for the aggregate of all student groups. And then also adopt individual, so annual targets for all of those individual disaggregated groups. And they actually identify how many or what, which student groups you have to do that disaggregation for. That's actually laid out in the state accountability framework. I'm going to get the domain number wrong. I think it's domain three. But it actually clarifies that, or specifies that you have to adopt the targets for all student groups that are represented by 10 or more students across the district. So in Austin, that's going to be pretty much all of them.
Does that answer?
Well, I think it does. Because I do think, I think that the aggregate goals, I've been comfortable with the aggregate goals because of the disaggregation and the targets that would be within there. So I feel like there would be accountability for that, and that we couldn't just declare, Rick, you're going to go home if we achieve the aggregate goal, but we have student groups that are not achieving. But I just want to, I agree with you that it's important to be able to do. I'm just looking for clarity about whether the system as designed already does that, or do we have to ensure that it doesn't?
I mean, my understanding, and Ashley, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that if we meet the aggregate goal as written for goals one, two, and three, even if we are not meeting it for the targets for specific subgroups, student groups, we can still, according to the state, say that we have met that goal?
No, actually, I provided some coaching a couple of weeks ago that was specifically responsive to that. So the board, so the board and the administration should come to terms on what that looks like. But if the board feels that there are, so if you have 13 student groups that you have to report, or probably 11 student groups that you have to report, and there is, so say you were on target for half of those student groups, but you have four of those student groups, you are kind of off-target, and then a couple more you are really off-target. You have to decide what that threshold is as a group to identify whether or not the goal is, the overall goal has been met. Mathematically, it is possible to do, but the board gets to decide what you are willing to accept. And, but my coaching that I provided at that time, and I will reshare it with the full board so that everyone can see it, is that you all need to come to, you need to have clarity on that at this point now, before you get to the point of surprise. We have a progress, we have a progress report where it shows a kind of a mixed bag in terms of results, and we don't know how to identify if this one is on track or off.
So Ashley, does that mean that we would need to decide? I think I heard you say we need to determine that now before we adopt the scorecard? Like what that threshold would be for the student groups?
We need to have that, so we need to have that conversation before you have the, before you start progress monitoring on the scorecard. So it doesn't have to be at this meeting particularly, but it does need to happen probably before the end of the summer.
So Ashley, one point of clarification. I guess, based on my understanding, the on-track would be the identified groups of students, but that they were predictors of the whole. Is that not accurate moving forward? I guess, I guess one of the things we're really trying to determine is, you know, if there's 13 student groups, all of them have to meet to be on track. If, or is it, as previously discussed, is it those that are large enough student groups to actually be predictors of the whole goal, which is the purpose of a goal progress measure? So I just, I want to, I mean, I guess that's where we're kind of trying to get clarity, because I've heard a couple of different things.
Yes, and so I will, again, I'll reshare that more like comprehensive coaching memo that I shared a few weeks ago that addresses this specifically. But yes, you, so on track, so the board has to, the board and the superintendent has to agree on what on track is. So if the board is happy with, so if you think that all student groups have to be on track, having like hit the exact target, then that's the, that's what the board needs to go with. If there is some other threshold, then the board needs to decide what that is. That, that is my official coaching after getting clarification from the folks over at Lone Star Governance at TDA.
Well, I think that's going to be an important conversation for us to have, because I think what, there's the board monitoring that we do throughout the school year, which is like the, you know, looking at the interim metrics. But then there's like the summative at the end of the year. And so I think there's a distinction. I understand for, throughout the year, when we vote on our little monitoring reports, whether or not we accept it, and where the administration states whether or not we're on track. I understand that we do have to sort of define operationally what that means and what student groups that covers. And I think certainly we will rely on our staff to have that conversation with us and make recommendations. But at the end of the year, like when we're doing sort of our summative, okay, out of our five goals, how many did we actually meet? Are we literally, like at that time, are we looking at just the aggregate? Because that was, that's what I recall.
At that time, you're looking at what you, so you're looking at the overall results. And so if all of the goals were hit, then you can, then the board probably will want, the board has to decide essentially. But so you look at everything. If all of the targets have been hit on all of the goals, then it's no question. The coaching is that if you get to a point where it is, the results are mixed on who is on track, who is off track, then the coaching is that the threshold should be at least two-thirds. So we're at least two-thirds of the goal progress measures inclusive of whatever that threshold is that you all have set for the individual student groups. Has, have two-thirds of those been achieved throughout the course of the year?
Okay. I think we'll still have to work it through, but I appreciate, I know we've had this conversation a few times. And so I think probably as we go through this, we'll learn more. But I, I'll just end by saying, that's why we added that new constraint, was to protect ourselves. But if we don't need it, then I don't know. But I think, anyway, we'll, I'll zip up and let's just continue.
I think part of Tuesday is that two-thirds of the groups, or is it two-thirds of total students? Is it two, I mean, I think there's a lot of clarity.
And is it two-thirds of the groups that are typically historically underserved, too? Because we could hit two-thirds and still not get African-American students. Right? And that's not what we want. We want to, and so I think it's going to behoove us to identify exactly which groups we are, and hopefully they will be the ones that are largely historically underserved.
On a related but different note, on the goal number five, since I will not be at the workshop on Tuesday, I just want to put this out for discussion. I know we chose not, at this point, to put in a specific disaggregation or identify a student group for that goal, but I think it's complicated because primarily, number one, I think what I've heard in our community is the importance of making sure that our students who are identified as emergent bilingual have full opportunity to develop bilingualism and biliteracy, since they're already coming in with an opportunity, you know, they already are coming in with a head start for that. And so by providing them opportunity through dual-language programming or whatever, then we, you know, we are giving them an opportunity to get that progress, to get that achievement. So, and we have not historically done well with ensuring that our emergent bilingual students are graduating bilingual, right? We have, like the rest of the country, have tended to take our, take away bilingualism from our students instead of providing them bilingualism. So that's one thing, is ensure that this goal highlights the opportunities for our emergent bilingual students. Secondly, we've had lots and lots of advocacy in our community for ensuring that our African-American students have an opportunity to participate, because our participation of African-American students and our provision of the program at schools primarily serving with, I mean, the schools with the largest number of African-American students haven't had the program. And so, you know, how do we factor that in to ensure that, that we're also addressing that target? And then when you look at our schools, you know, a large, some of our schools that have been the most consistent with implementation have been schools that serve more middle-class students than students living, experiencing poverty. And so how do we ensure that we're providing opportunity for students who are identified as economically disadvantaged to achieve this? And we know from our community that they want to have an opportunity for all of our students to become bilingual and biliterate. So how do we do that without discounting that we have thousands of students and families in this community, some of whom are already participating in language programs, and others who want that opportunity? So I just think that we really need to think through how we can make sure that this goal is targeted in a way that kind of makes sure nobody slips through the cracks on that. I will say that we've complicated it a little bit, but I think we needed to. But I think adding in the performance acknowledgement and bilingualism and biliteracy is like important, but it also complicates that disaggregation. Because what we know, the criteria for that is, doesn't have any performance measure. It's, did you get an 80 or higher in three, in all your English program courses? And do you get an 80 and higher in at least three language courses? What that, another criteria is that students who were identified as emergent bilingual have to have been reclassified as English proficient. So that, to meet the criteria for that performance acknowledgement, emergent bilingual students have to pass an English test. But students who are already native English speakers do not have to pass a Spanish test or an Arabic test or Vietnamese test. They simply have to successfully get an 80 or higher in three language classes. And as somebody who got straight A's in four years of German, but then found myself in Germany unable to speak German, I can attest to the fact that you can get an 80 or higher in a class without becoming proficient in that language. So I think it's a complicated goal. I would love to, just to encourage our team to have those conversations and to come to, with recommendations for how we can target this goal in a way that we hit the groups that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready to move on to constraints, or was there another comment?
I have.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
On goal three, our CCMR goal, I have one question for Ashley, but before I do that, and just a clarification, just to be sure what we're putting out there is really accurate and that we're specific. I think when we talk about AP and IB, there's not a passing, right? Those are scales, and I know that Texas, a lot of Texas universities will accept, sometimes a three is the floor on AP, three out of five, and on IB, often it's a four out of seven. And so I would like to be really specific with what we're expecting on those.
The, the operationalizing of that will be a three, three to five on an AP test, and a four to six on an IB exam.
Okay, can we put that in the goal? Because I think AP is really specific, that there's no passing. And I think it's misleading in a moment we're trying to And I think it's misleading in a moment. We're trying to educate our families and bring our families along. I'd like to be really specific in our language. So we all have a shared understanding of what we're talking about would be really helpful. So I, I am completely unsurprised that you guys have a plan and I'd love to put that plan in there. That would be great. Since the, since we're kind of putting together courses and tests. So it's kind of a hodgepodge of things. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And, and I think IB goes up to seven, not six. Is that correct? I could be wrong, but whatever it is. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then Ashley, I have a question for you on that GPM.
Okay.
You had said if, on a couple of the GPMs deeper in your coaching document, had said that some things are not able to be updated multiple times a year. Because this is multiple different measures, some of them will be at the first semester, some of them will be at different points in the year. Does this count as able to be updated multiple times a year with a different data set at each point?
Yes.
So we could look at first semester onramps. We could look at the AP when that's available. We could look at the IB when that's available. We could look at second semester onramps. All of those count as?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you. And dual credit as well. So, okay. I appreciate that. And then I think my second is just a question. When we look at our GPMs, and the GPMs that you're recommending to us, almost half of them are standardized tests, almost half of them are MAP. And I just love for the board and the community, kind of an understanding of why that's what you're bringing to us after the work with these groups.
So, yeah, probably in a switch. And so I think this is a, an important conversation to have with the board. And, you know, when we first started the presentation, we were, I was trying to communicate, you know, this, these, the system that we're in, the constraints that we're trying to navigate. And one of the things that we were really sensitive to was, you know, what tools exist? Because I, I will say the team, as Dr. Jay Brown had said, you know, identified, you know, the types of tools. And in this case, we're talking about screeners, right? And the acknowledgement that to be compliant with Lone Star Governance and with the work that we're doing right now by way of the TEA agreed order and MTSS, that we need to have a screener in place to track students that move into tier one, tier two, and tier three as part of MTSS. And, and we have to have a tool for that. And so then when we begin to talk about what tools exist, there are a variety of different tools. And the team went, we went back and forth for a very long time around which one of these things should we consider? Because introducing something is going to create a disruption in our system. You know, I will tell you, you know, one of the things that I have observed in my time here as superintendent even previously was that there were concerns around MAP, implementation of MAP, right? And I think a lot of that was kind of born out of the lack of support as it moved into the system. And so as we talk about a new tool or a new screener, the question becomes, you know, what disruption would that cause moving forward? And how long before you get to implementation with fidelity? Since what we're trying to look for is something that's correlated to the, and be a predictor of the goal itself. And so we struggled with this. I mean, I will tell you that, you know, we went back and forth. And I think, you know, right now, what we're trying to do is, is to balance the commitment from MTSS, TEA agreed order, not wanting to introduce something new to a system that is quite vulnerable, I would say, given what we're adding and trying to take away from teachers' plates. And it became one of these things where we wanted to reduce our reliance where we could. But as of right now, it was a, a draft GPM that we wanted to bring forward. We think that there are opportunities to explore different ways because at the end of the day, it is a, it's not a growth measure. It, we're really trying to understand, you know, how long our students are, which students are in tier one versus tier two versus tier three? And if that's the goal, then are there different ways to, to measure that? But anyway, that, that is kind of how we arrived at this current draft GPM. Dr. Maxwell, is there anything you want to add or, you know, elaborate on?
So in speaking to, I think, the, the third grade goals, both literacy and literacy. Since, I think since being here the past few months, I've noticed the MAP reporting used in a few different ways. I've seen some reporting on MAP growth, seen some reporting on projected, STAR projected proficiency, all of which are, you know, different lenses that I think the assessment can provide. What, what we are attempting to do here, I think with the third grade goals are to use MAP really for its primary intention as a screener to identify students that might be at risk. And so, and that's the, the purpose of any screener. So using that screener really is one of the major data points that you use by students who may need interventions. I think we mentioned this earlier a little bit, maybe Dr. Rich, Rich mentioned it earlier. We talked about MTSS in the last presentation. We, we want to make sure in our system that we don't have huge percentages of students receiving interventions because that indicates that there might be issues with our tier one core classroom, what's happening every day, just direct instruction, working with students, and also really high quality differentiated instruction. So that in tier one, students are really getting what they need before interventions ever even take place. And so looking over time at that number of students, which is what the screener indicates, the number of students at risk, if we can over time reduce that number, that tells us what we're doing for the core classroom and everything in tier one is getting better. It's getting stronger. So that, that's the attempt of the way that the GPM is currently worded. We've certainly had some, some internal conversations about what the best way might be to, toward that. Ultimately, what we want to do is look at the numbers of students and the percentage of students that we do have in interventions and how we might be able to reduce that with some of our strategies. And so I think there's some room for us to, and ultimately, when you identify a student for interventions, it's not just based on the screener. That's your primary indicator. It's really important in our MTSS system that we have a screener that does that. It, it is a requirement of what we have to do for our MTSS system in the, in the agreed order per all of the trainings and the feedback that we have from TEA. So it's definitely a piece that's there, but it is not the only piece that identifies a student for intervention. You look more holistically at a student when they get those initial scores and you say, okay, how long has the student been in school? What instruction has the student already received? Do they have things going on at home? Is there other data? Are there other data points to indicate that this student might need intervention? Those can be both quantitative and qualitative. I think we have some room to, to make sure that this GPM gets at the heart of that, but also not rely solely on the screener assessment. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. I think we're ready for a continuation.
Rebecca Jacob, Dr. Rich, sorry.
All right. So now I want to take us through our constraints. One thing I want to really highlight for our constraints, so again, these are draft, but we did receive more coaching around some of these draft CPMs. I've been able to start some of these conversations already with staff, but I do expect that there will be some revisions. So I want to go through and read what we have and then offer the coaching that was received from Ms. Paus and then share some of the steps that we're looking at for what this, how this could be different when we visit again next Tuesday. So our first constraint is underserved students, and that's that the superintendent shall not allow practices in staffing, resource distribution, or campus practices that exclude disproportionately impact or fail to support historically underserved student groups. Our draft CPMs first is looking at fill rate, and that's the percent of vacancies at our locally developed list of priority campuses will decrease from X to Y within that five-year period. And then our second is our special education evaluation, which you all know very well because you just received a presentation on it just a few moments ago. And as a reminder, this CPM is a little different in, in, I acknowledge, and I know that Ms. Paus has also acknowledged, it doesn't perfectly fit the, the LSG format for a constraint. But this was something that we shared with TEA when we were in initial negotiations around that approved order, before we even had anything from TEA. There was a question over, well, what is our commitment to addressing this special education? And we wanted to signify for TEA that this is a priority for us, and it's such a priority, we want it on our scorecard. And I heard Justice Singh say earlier, priority one A. And so indicating that, we wanted to include this again. And so we have it on here and, and I believe Ms. Paus isn't going to correct me for this, even though it doesn't quite meet the LSG format, we're not going to be penalized for it because this was a commitment that we previously made to TEA as part of that order. And that's the number of pending special education evaluations will be less than our set numbers that we set, along with zero evaluations exceeding the required evaluation timeline by December 2026. What we may want to do, this will be a conversation for the board, once we have that progress monitoring and we're at zero and we say, hey, is this still the best policy for the district that's part of your monitoring process? That may be where the board may say, hey, we've done this. Now we need to adjust it to let it continue on through our monitoring. Or may need to say that there needs to be something different around sped for monitoring. So I just want to highlight that because this one is a little different, doesn't go to 2029, doesn't follow the exact process. So some of the coaching that I did receive on that first one, the fill rate from our coach, was a concern that sometimes looking at vacancy is looking more at an input and may not directly relate to what our constraint is. The coaching that was received was a question around what other things have we considered? And we discussed that. And some of the feedback was around the number or percentage of highly effective teachers. So that's something that we want to discuss with our team is a GPM that may be around the percent of highly effective teachers at our priority schools and ensuring that we're increasing that percentage. So that's something that we will be, excuse me, bring back on Tuesday.
And, and Jacob, or Dr. Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would also consider a baseline year?
That one would, yes.
Okay. Just to be clear.
So next is our caregiver engagement, and this is the superintendent shall not allow families to be without meaningful partnerships with their home, campus, and district. So as you can see here, there are four listed, but the way that we have originally envisioned this was that we would pick one of the first two and one of the last two. So there would be two CPMs out of there. So the first one was focused, two different ways of looking at student enrollment. And based off of feedback that we heard from our team, questions that we heard from the trustees, we had thought that we would start revising this down to two, but I'll go through them first. So the first student enrollment is looking at the percentage of students selecting Austin ISD versus public charter options within the Austin area. So that's really a, a student share metric. The second one is looking at the percentage of K through 11 grade students who re-enroll in Austin ISD and increasing that. So that's obviously looking at a retention. Also, why 12th grade's not there? Because our hope would be that all of our 12th grade students graduate. We love them. We don't want to retain them. And so that would be the two different ways of looking at student enrollment, looking at caregiver engagement. Our first was considering the number of caregivers participating in conferences associated with student release, elementary conference days, and increasing those. So that would be parents or guardians who meet with the teacher during one of those set conference days. Our second option was looking at the number of active caregiver accounts associated with an enrolled student which utilize the Austin ISD portal during the school year. So some of the feedback that, that I had received in my coaching with Ashley is first that those two student enrollment are looking at inputs and there are concerns over the amount of influence a superintendent can have on enrollment. Because why, there are some things that are influencible. There are some things that simply we have no influence on. We have no influence on parents who move for work or for career. There are certain things that we simply cannot help with student enrollment and student retention. So some of the feedback was for us as a district to look back at these student enrollments to see if there were ways that it could better align with that influencible, predictable, and challenge the organization. Some of the other feedback that I received on the caregiver engagement was on the, the last one. And that it seemed like the language itself was good, but really directing it towards a certain activity may better define what we're trying to accomplish and tie it back to our constraint. One example that was discussed, because we heard this a lot when we did our community outreach, which I was able to take part in listening at a lot of those, was perhaps that it's looking at the number of active caregiver accounts associated with an enrolled student who utilize the portal and view a student report card, view their student's report card. So tying it to a certain activity may strengthen that CPM. The other thing that we had already discussed as a team and I shared with our coach is why we're still want to consider this conference one. Perhaps there's a more way to roll that one out and incorporate more of the work that we're already doing with some of our things like family as partners and some of the other work that we're doing to bring families in that is also going to very tightly align with how this constraint is worded. So we want to look back at those and possibly bring back two that may both be more tightly associated with caregiver engagement, but share that with you next Tuesday. Our next one is historically marginalized groups. And as Trustee Singh mentioned, this is one of our constraints that the board had discussed and brought forward because we wanted to make sure that in addition to all the other great things that we're looking at in our goals, that we are also looking at academic disparities for certain specific student populations. And through those discussions, we did indicate three African American students, emergent bilingual students, and students receiving special education services. And I know that the board has seen this, looking at our, when we've shared scorecard goals and we have all seen it when looking at our data. But certainly we do see some academic disparities associated with those student groups overall compared to our district. So when looking at CPMs, our first draft included the percentage of third grade students within those specific student populations scoring in the recommended for intervention level on the MAP reading achievement score proficiency indicator will decrease. So that would have been similar to our goal one and goal two map indicators. The second was looking at the disparity rate for exclusionary discipline. That was the other scorecard metric that we had on today, and this would be written similarly. Yeah, but a little different. And so we also need to ensure with this that we have one metric, although we could report it out in multiple ways. So we have that, that, our, what, the population that we're looking at is the special student populations. So we would need to create a way to measure it for all three and then say, here's that result. And then here it is broken down by those different groups. And then the third one is looking at the percentage of ninth through 12th grade students, which is a big student populations who successfully complete an advanced academic course. And that, and then we're, we're currently saying that that would be any of our weighted courses, although we want to continue to discuss that and that that would also increase. So some of the feedback that we received on the, or that I received on these, first with the discipline one. I believe that our coach felt that this was a good CPM and it deserves to be somewhere in this, and we want to include it. But since our constraint is written as academic disparities, that the discipline one may be better suited for a different constraint. And we had discussed both constraint five and constraint one. So not removing it, just moving it elsewhere. Some of the other things that we had discussed as a team with looking at our first constraint is how we may use other metrics that help us provide a more wide picture of these three groups. is how we may use other metrics that help us provide a more wide picture of these three groups. And there were discussions around that that could be something similar to what we're looking at for our next constraint, where we have a walkthrough and we're looking at those best practices. Or something similar for just looking at those students who are receiving those tier two or tier three services and how we reduce those for those student groups. So that's something we want to continue to discuss around that CPM. The third CPM, the advanced academics, the coaching that we received on that was that that aligned well. And so this is one that we do believe we'll, we'll bring back Tuesday as is. Constraint number four, early learning. So this is one that we have some alternative language on currently. We had our original language, the last time we met as a full board. There was a request for an individual trustee to provide some feedback on some alternative language. And we've included that here, but we had not gotten feedback from the full board. So for this moment, we've included both. But they are, they're similar, so I'll briefly read them. The superintendent shall not allow students from early childhood to second grade to be taught using developmentally inappropriate practices. Or the updated alternative language, the superintendent shall not require or support developmentally inappropriate practices or assessments, or fail to support developmentally appropriate learning in early childhood through second grade. I'll pause on that for a second because one piece of coaching that Ms. Paz did provide on the alternative language is dropping from the or fail to support developmentally appropriate learning. So that the language would read, the superintendent shall not require or support developmentally inappropriate practices or assessments in early childhood through second grade. And Ashley, I don't know if you wanted to add on to the reason of not including the, I believe it was the double negative language.
You're, you're correct, Dr. Reach. So anytime a constraint includes language that such as the superintendent shall not fail to, or to, yeah, shall not fail to do X, Y, and Z. Or the shall, the superintendent shall not allow students to be without. Those are all signals that the constraint is actually not a constraint, but it's a directive that's kind of disguised as a constraint. So if we go back to that initial two day workshop that we had together where we looked at all of those examples. One of the examples was the superintendent shall not fail to hire Mrs. Johnson. That's, it sounds like a constraint, but it's actually a directive. And so we want to avoid directives where possible. And also the framework requires that the constraints be prohibitions on an operational action or class of actions, not a directive.
Thank you. So our CPM for this is looking at walkthroughs, which would be the number of campuses averaging proficient on an early education walkthrough will, will increase. This one is a baseline because currently we do not have such a walkthrough. This would be something that we, we need to create. We would need to train our staff on how to use this walkthrough and we need to work with our pre-K through two teachers to understand what will be reviewed, what that will mean and how that walkthrough will look. And then of course, once we have that data, how we'll review it and make changes. We have started looking at some material that can help us build out a meaningful early education walkthrough using NACY content, which is the, hopefully I get it right, National Association of Education of Young Children. Is that right? Yeah. There's also some districts that already do such walkthroughs. The New York Department of Public Education have done a similar early childhood walkthrough for years that looks at various spectrums when they're going in that are both, that are on multiple factors. I'm not saying that we'll look at all these factors, but for instance, they look at what the classroom looks like, what the teacher's doing, what the students are doing, what the lessons look like. And then how that aligns to those expectations that they want to see in those early childhood classrooms. And so that is something that if moving forward with this CPM, we would need to build that out and test it. But that's why we would ask that that would certainly be a baseline for that year and that that first year's results not count towards the accountability, but start as here's where we're at. Now let's set targets moving forward. Our last constraint is social and emotional learning. This is another one that also had some alternative language based off of feedback from an individual trustee. So I have both of them here. The original language is the superintendent shall not allow students to lack access to a fully integrated evidence-based system for social and emotional learning and campus mental health supports. The alternative being the superintendent shall not implement an instructional program that ignores social, emotional, and mental health supports for students. We have three CPMs currently for that. The first, chronic absenteeism, the percentage of K through 12th grade students experiencing chronic absenteeism will decrease. The next, mental health, the percent of staff trained in tier one interventions for mental health will increase. And then the last one, SCL. And I, I want to point out, the language on this presentation is new from what was post, or what was shared with trustees last week. Because we've been working with our SCL team and our CPNI team. Because they've are, they were already away despite this, working on creating a new SCL implementation measurement tool. And so we wanted to make sure that we could already tie into the great work they were already doing to bring a meaningful SCL metric here. And so we wanted to make sure that we had appropriate language that aligned with what that tool would actually show us. So the language that we have would be that the average campus score on indicators four, eight, and nine on the SCL and CPNI implementation measurement tool will increase. And again, we'd, we'd start that as a baseline. And this is another one to where there will be some training that needs to be done with campuses, with staff. I know that for some of us, we know that we used to measure CPM, or sorry, SCL implementation every year. There was a pause in that, so this would be bringing that back. And we believe that this is a strong measure again, that's aligned with the constraint and would really help us understand how we're doing with that. So before I pause for questions, I do want to mention the last piece of, piece of coaching that I got was around the mental health item. And that was that this mental health one as written really is an input because you're just looking at staff trained. It's not talking about the outputs of the outcomes that come from that training. And so we are, we are actually in the discussion of recommending just removing this one. I do want to guarantee for our board and for our public that we are still doing this. There is still a plan in place to ensure that all of our staff are trained in tier one interventions. It just would not be a constraint on this scorecard. So I will pause there and turn it back over to President Singh and Superintendent Segura.
Thank you. Trustees, y'all have any questions or comments on the constraints?
So thank you all for y'alls efforts. I also just want to quickly mention, because I know we have time for this discussion in a future meeting, but just quickly, Ms. Paz, I do appreciate your coaching and feedback. I see it on, just for, for folks following at home, 4.3, it's attachment. It's the attachment labeled AISD draft scorecard language with coaching. And so Ms. Paz, I just really appreciate like some of the feedback. So for, as a quick example, under caregiver engagement, the CPM that describes student enrollment, some of the coaching there was, you know, essentially that it didn't seem, or this is my interpretation. So Ms. Paz, please add detail if you will. My interpretation of the feedback is, you know, essentially the, the draft CPM does not get at the heart of what the constraint is attempting to put in place. And that also the language doesn't quite meet the threshold of the, I don't know what the acronym is. The VNG fours meet focus level. I should know the acronym.
Visioning goals for, it's part of the rubric for the LSG evaluation.
So yeah, Ms. Paz, I don't know if you had any other comments you wanted to highlight either around your coaching in general or, you know, caregiver engagement, the marginalized groups, or even the early learning.
Yeah. So thank you for that, Trustee Lugo. So one of the things that I would like to highlight is that the coaching that is provided to you all in the document that is shared on your board docs. It is all given in the spirit of really just making like what is going to pass muster of the, what's going to help you meet the order with TEA. The order with TEA requires you get to an average of meets focus across the LSG rubric. The easiest way to do that is by knocking out the vision and goals, one through four, getting meets focus on all of those and then meets focus on your, on the progress, the two sections around progress monitoring. The coaching is really just in the spirit of making sure that the priorities that you adopt are responsive to that criteria and that it's really just not crossways with it. So on those first two, under the community engagement constraint, I'm going to just switch over really quick, quickly. So caregiver, caregiver engagement. Both of the first, the first two options that are provided are specific to student enrollment, which this is an important thing for the board to care about. I do not want to suggest that this isn't important. This is something that I also cared a lot about when I served on the school board in Fort Worth. It, it is a really important metric, but it is not, it doesn't actually tell you anything that, that the, it doesn't give you information about whether or not those meaningful partnerships exist between caregivers and their campuses or caregivers in their district. It just tells you whether or not people are choosing to send their children to school in Austin ISD. That decision is, it could be influenced by the relationships on the campuses, but that's not the only reason. And more importantly, so that's one piece. The more important piece is that the superintendent is not going to have the ability to influence. They definitely have the ability to influence some of that. But TEA and LSG actually have a threshold. So the threshold for the superintendent's ability to influence the results should be 80% or more of the inputs that are, that lead to the results that you're monitoring. And that just isn't the case for the first two. And I can't remember the others that you mentioned, but were there any other specific, specific things that you'd like me to address?
No, that, that was really helpful. And I think kind of that was my initial questioning to, as I was looking at those CPNs under, CPMs under constraint two. And then I'm even kind of wondering, and so this is more so to the superintendent and the administration. I'm wondering about the CPM two point, which one? So, okay, so they're all CPM two point X. So the third bullet under caregiver engagement where it talks about participation in conferences. Help me understand the rationale, because I'll, I'll just share my concern, right? Is imagine a world where parent caregivers are told, hey, you have to attend this conference. And it, it kind of reminds me of when, you know, things changed from you have a family doctor to you go to a clinic. So when you have a family doctor, the doctor sits with you and your parent, right? I remember being a kid when this happened. So you sit with, the doctor sits with you and your parent, takes 20, 30 minutes, right? It's really mindful versus you go to a clinic, right? Because now you have health insurance and the doctor is like, okay, what, what do you got wrong with you? Oh, no worries. I've seen it before. Here's a prescription. Go to your closest Walgreens. Let me know if anything gets bad. So, right, like I have this like gut reaction to imagine a world where parent caregivers are told, hey, I need you to come to this conference. And the conference is just kind of, and this wouldn't happen in 99% of the cases, right? I'm sure it would, it would more often than not be a positive experience. What I worry about are the instances where folks would worry about hitting a number rather than the quality. And also just as a general comment, like I really, I, I do, I don't, like what I'm reading with the CPMs, at least in my mind, and I'm sure you can help me get there. But like in my mind, it doesn't connect with what I remember both hearing from the board and then also what was shared from myself to the administration when we talked about family engagement. And so, you know, definitely looking forward to that conversation on the 11th. But just wanted to share, like, it's not really connecting for me.
Yeah, Trustee Lugo, I appreciate that. And, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things. How do you, how do we find something where we can adequately measure what effective family engagement looks like? And, you know, I, I certainly want to recognize that the goal is not to just, you know, kind of move through, you know, conferences, like that's not the goal. But we needed to kind of create an avenue where a connection is made with families. And we certainly recognize there are ways to improve this constraint progress measure. We're kind of looking at different ideas. You know, if this is the direction we would go, the implementation plan, right? The initiative behind this that would actually move it would include all the things necessary to ensure that it wasn't just, we're going to check the boxes and get through this. Like that's not the expectation. You know, it needs to be meaningful engagement, but we also want to make sure that that connection does occur. And there aren't a lot of things right now that we have in place that we could build off. This is one of those things. And so we are looking at other things, but they may be a little bit more abstract or the core choir development from a different place. But yeah, this is an area of, of exploration for us and we've already kind of worked through a couple of different things. The portal, like, you know, there are ways to explore that and improve it, but generally speaking, a relationship with a laptop or, you know, a platform is an ideal. So this is one of the ones that we're trying to, you know, identify that thing that will ultimately be supported by the larger initiative, really a family engagement initiative. So no, I hear you and we're looking to explore that and provide, you know, updates to it on the 11th.
And then also maybe in prep for the 11th, you know, I, I see the note on slide 11 of 15. Attachment is this called? So I think that's attachment one. So help me understand again. So it says that the PS programming, that information was not included as progress measures because they're already, like I'm, I'm trying to understand like, okay, so, so it sounds like the parent support program, there are goals in place. So there's data already being reported. And so again, kind of in my mind, I'm like, oh, that's, that could be a potentially good thing. It's like data that's already collected. Maybe there's something useful there. So help me understand, you know, the rationale.
Yeah. So one of the things that we are doing as the parent support specialist kind of group within AISD has been supported differently in the last year than maybe it has previously. You know, it's, it's moved into DCCE. We have supported it in a different way. And one of the things that we track really on a monthly basis, but I know that Ali and your team track it really weekly, it's the number of actions or activities or engagements with the family, right? And they, we report on those and we create key performance indicators around it, right? And we know that we've seen a significant increase in engagement with families through the parent support specialists. The challenge we have, I think, on this one is we don't have PSSs everywhere. We don't have them at every school. And so, and they're supported by a combination of funding from the city as well as Title I. And so when we think about a, a constraint progress measure that can meet the needs of the entire system and one that we can really, you know, get into and support in that way. We didn't want to anchor it in something that we, we thought might be kind of defined and hard to expand. But we have that information and we can certainly present on it. And it is an important piece of it. And one of the things that I think about is, you know, at the end of the day, an initiative that we, maybe we call it a, you know, family service initiative. Like, you know, PSSs would have its role, would be defined in that overall initiative. And that would be what we report out as part of the constraint progress measures. So that's, that's the reason why it was kind of incorporated in that way and not used as like the sole CPM, constraint progress measure.
Now that, yeah, thank you for that reminder. Because I remember we've talked about that several times. Like just the fact that the parent support specialists aren't across the entire district. So I think that's the clarity, whereas this made it sound like it just, it, it reads a little differently. a little differently, right? Like I'm, I'm interpreting it as like, oh, well, we're not going to use it as a measure because we already use it as a measure for something else. And it's like, well, that's not really.
I appreciate that. We can, we can add clarity around that.
Trustees, any other questions? I have some. Yes. Trustee Bos.
Hi, thank you for all of this. I have a couple of, just would love to know a little more questions, probably for you, Dr. Reach, on the, just a little more about what we're talking about. The one on the mental health. Hold on, I'm trying, I'm digging, my, my paper's all, it's stapled, but it's out of order or it's, I can't figure out where the beginning is. So the one on the mental health where you say, we're going to be looking at indicator four, eight and nine, I would love to know, since we've never seen this tool, what indicators four, eight and nine are. That would be really helpful to understand.
Definitely. If you'll give us one quick minute.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's new to all of us, so, but more new to us than it is to you. So thank you for sharing that.
The new tool is, is new to me also, but we, we are excited about it. As someone who was able to sit in when we did some of our earlier S E L implementation work, I'm excited to see our rubric back. Okay, so our indicator four is professional learning to strengthen staff expertise. Our indicator eight is transformative S E L integrated instruction. And nine is cultural responsiveness.
Thank you. That is very helpful. I appreciate that.
And for, for all of these, there will be an appendix of some sort that will provide more definition, provide how we pull that data, what the source of data is. So, you know, that'll be like an attachment behind our scorecard.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, and I, I too remember our initial S E L and really that we were leading the nation in a lot of ways and have a really strong foundation. So I'll be excited to learn more about the work that's being done. Thank you for that. I have another clarification question. You mentioned on our goal about disparities and equity or, or constraint about that, that highly effective teachers were one thing that's being discussed. And I'd love to know, I mean, that can be defined a lot of ways. Are we talking about our national board certified teachers? Are we using the teacher incentive allotment definition? What does that mean?
Yeah.
It would be helpful to know.
So I know that we'll be able to provide a more detailed explanation on Tuesday, but let me see, because Ms. Hosak and I literally talked about this maybe, well, it was now it was just like two hours ago. Yeah. And so I, I want to make sure that we really think all of that through, but is there a quick definition I can use or you can share?
As student growth?
Good evening, trustees. The question being, how are we going to define highly effective? Truly, that should come with student growth and that will be defined as we work through our T A process for sure with our S A C V O S that, that calculates our student growth through statistical analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then Ashley, I have a coaching question for you. Under our question about constraint number three, the historically marginalized groups and, and the tie between academics and discipline. And I see the suggestion that there are other places the discipline item can land, but I also really, I would love to just understand, you know, there's a bunch of research out there saying that discipline and academics are correlated. I mean, I just, there are a bunch of organizations that do this work. I just pulled up a, a study that I remember, a Stanford study that was done in 2019. And it said, the researchers found that a ten percentage point increase in the black white discipline gap in a school district predicts an achievement gap that is seventeen percent larger than the average black white achievement gap. And I, I mean, that's one of many. And I know in education, you can find lots of studies to say lots of things. But if this is something the administration believes belongs here, if there's research, if they bring us research to back that up and we all agree that it's, it's predictive, is that something that we need to move to comply? Or is it something that can remain where our administration has recommended it?
So I would, so I'm, I'm just looking at the, at the language again. So superintendent shall not allow practices that lead to academic disparities within specific student populations. So, I mean, it, it could, like it, so you could wedge it in there and they def, they absolutely are correlated. I totally agree with that. There is a correlation, that they are connected, but they, but discipline is not, and so discipline rates are not the actual academic disparity. So the, the better fit, but actually the best place for it to fit would be under constraint one, which is specific to practices in staffing, resource distribution or campus practices that exclude disproportionately impact or fail to support historically underserved students. Discipline is absolutely like those campus based practices. I think that discipline tells you a whole lot about that. And so they're, again, they're definitely connected. I could be convinced that they are, that it is predictive, but it really is kind of an easier, an easier solution to put it where it has, where it fits better.
Okay, thank.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions?
Yeah, quickly for, for Ashley, so we're prepared for a meeting. You mentioned with the constraint number four, at an earlier meeting, that, of that possibly being a constraint with technology use? The early learning constraint?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. So for constraint number four, so you could, so the superintendent shall not allow students identified from early childhood to second grade to be taught using developmentally inappropriate practices. That could, so technology use could, could fall within that one. But it's, so if your expectation was to see that there would be something, to be a constraint progress measure that was tied to technology use and that is not what you received, then my coaching is that the board needs to make the constraint language more specific to be inclusive of technology.
Okay. And so we're, the walkthrough, yeah, so talking about having a walkthrough, I, I think the constraint, like a lot of the concerns of the community was not with, and from our teachers, was not that early child, our early childhood staff is not proficient, it's that they're getting a lot of requirements in their classroom that aren't in line with early education. So increasing the walkthroughs, like I, I would hope that no one is like, no classroom here is, is not proficient. Or knowing what that means. So yeah, I, I think, I don't know if that would measure what we were looking for. So I think maybe just some refinement, maybe from the board's expectations on the, our constraint language. Like presenting, do you think that's something we need to look at?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely something, it would, it would be helpful to hear from the administration a little bit more about, you know, how predictive that is of the constraint. And if that is the lever, that would be predictive of the overall constraint.
So I, I think this is one of those things where, you know, the baseline here and the opportunity to build the walkthrough is critically important because, you know, and how it's built will determine, you know, how correlated it is to the constraint itself. And so I think if there is an opportunity for the board to be more specific, that'll help us frame the walkthrough and the tool better. You know, because we are leveraging the resources that are identified here in the notes, but you're right, you know, they're, based on what we have, there are ways that you could go. And so if there's clarity provided, you know, I would say, please provide it. If it's technology, then, then I would say, please provide that. But because we are allowing the time for the rubric, for the walkthrough to be developed in the baseline year, like some of the things that I think you might be asking for are not defined yet, if that makes any sense. Like we, we are asking for the space to build the, the walkthrough in the tool based on the resources identified here in alignment with the constraint set by the board. So it will help kind of tailor our solution if there's more detail that you'd like to add. And if technology is one of them, then I would suggest, let's add that. I mean.
The scorecard is, you know, not from any like fault of, of anyone here. Like it's such a heavy lift on our little, little kids. And I feel like we just haven't talked about them or really thought about them. And like what their experiences, like when I look at the master's level, it's like, did you talk to students? And it's like, did we talk to kinder and first graders? Like have, has anyone up here like stuck with them when they're taking any of these types of assessments or seeing them on a computer compared to face to face? And even with walkthroughs, like I, I remember going in to bring a big chuck to a pre K class with balloons and the kids were terrified when we walked in. It was pretty early in the beginning of the year. And I'm like, oh my goodness, we didn't, you know, we were excited, we didn't, you know, I, I got down low and kind of stopped other people from coming in the room and talked, you know, to the, to the kids. But like, we didn't come in here developmentally appropriate. Like is this a part of our culture? And, and we're talking about adult behaviors? And that's what we need to change. And we've got to remember, like, these kids are so little and the most inequitable experiences and the way they're treated happens at this really, really young part of their education. So just really thinking about that student with every single thing on here. And I, I'm, you know, I, I know we, we can do it. And, you know, I'm so glad that we're, it's, it's hard to take as much time as we are and I'm, I'm so grateful at how thoughtful the administration is, is being and continuing to, to refine this, to think about our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Sabata.
So I don't know who to address this to, but Jacob, you mentioned the last, I think the last item was about mental health training for teachers, maybe suggesting removing it because it's just tracking staff that are getting trained. But at the same time, I think it also would help us know, there's a lot of, a lot of staff that need that. Everyone needs it, right? So I think if we track it, I mean, if there's, if we keep it in, it's going to be helpful for us to see improvements of S E L and discipline because then people would have the tools to make better judgments on our students. And, and so I'm just curious how, you know, do we write it differently or, but it, I think it would be helpful to be able to measure out of so many thousands, I don't know how many staff, that so many are getting trained and we will begin to see improved results with student outcomes and behaviors and giving them the, the resources that they need because we're not disciplining them in a way that most, most of them are now. Does that make sense?
Trustees, Sabata, it does. Thank you for the feedback on that. So the, the concern that we have, as you alluded to, is just how it's written now. By all means, I do think that it could be rewritten in a way that is focused on outputs or hopefully even outcomes, which would be even better. But just the input itself, the feedback that I received and we acknowledge, doesn't really tell us how are we doing with S E L. And I do want to commit again that we're doing this training. We're all, we're all going to get trained on it. So it's happening whether it's on here or not. But we would want to, if it's something that we want to keep, we would need to think through, okay, so what is that output or that outcome that we expect from this training? And how can we find a way to measure that?
Right. And I agree, you know, and I, and I believe you that, I know that the training is happening, but this is a training that is different than other trainings because, you know, I've gone to a lot of trainings, right? But I'm not using a lot of the things I, I learned, but this specific one is implementation, right? It's how are we changing the culture at our campuses and, and our behaviors around our students? So this is, how are we going to, how are we going to measure that? Thank you.
Yeah, trustee Sabata, I think if we, we can take another crack at that based on the feedback we received from our, our coach as well as the feedback you provided. You know, we've, we've had a mental health initiative. We, there are things in there, I mean, like to, to be honest, there was a constraint progress measure maybe a week and a half ago that we drafted that was around, you know, space within each of our schools. And it was one of these things where I know what can, I know we can do that. We're already doing it. It's third prong and a four-pronged comprehensive mental health initiative. And so it just seemed like too, too easy because we're going to get it done. And so, so I was like, no, let's, let's really think about tier one training, tier two and tier three. Tier two and tier three are really, you know, for those individuals that require additional support, like your, you know, your, perhaps your S R Os, your licensed mental health professionals, your counselors, administrators. So this is the one that really is going to be over the entire system, tier one. So I do think there's an opportunity to rewrite it because of what it is. I don't know what that'll look like yet, but if you give us a little bit of time, we can bring something back before Tuesday.
Anyone else? Okay, great. This is such dense information. And I think as we continue to refine this, or as you all continue to refine this, I just appreciate, I know, I would appreciate seeing the direct connection of like how, how predictive a progress measure is to the goal and like creating a more solid line. So thinking back to what trustee Lee Chu was saying, for example, like what is the thing, like I would like to hear from the administration, not tonight, but next week. What is the thing that is preventing developmentally appropriate or whatever that constraint is? I can't remember. I should know what it is, but the constraint that that, the early childhood stuff is under, you know, what is the thing? Is it overall classroom practices? Like, like is it, is it a teacher expertise problem? Is it a materials problem? Is it a principal expectation problem? Is it an assessment problem? Like, and so bring us along in your thinking so that we can see how the progress measure is going to actually address the constraint. Does that make sense?
It, it does. I think there's a conversation to be had around determining the current baseline of where you are and identifying whether that'll be correlated to the constraint progress measure. And I think there's going to be a variety of things that you could look at that will, will be correlated, but to what degree? And so I think there's just, I think that we can do that and we can have that conversation. But you just described four or five different things, right? In that very, and so each one of those actually does have an effect.
And I'm assuming you guys have, no, the answer is like, what is, what is the lever, right? What's the main one? Because we can't list all of it. And so what is the main one? And so what is the main one that we can actually measure in a way that L S G requires us to measure? Because obviously there's a ton that you're doing that doesn't live in the scorecard, right? It's in the strategic plan or it's in other places, which is as expected. And so our job is to kind of isolate, I would think, like the key things that actually are the most predictive, that kind of fit the requirements, or the most predictive or most correlated, that would fit the requirements of L S G. Right, okay. So, so I, I am interested in, I think we're on the right track for sure. And, you know, and so I, I think we're on the right track and I think we'll get there. We have to, we don't have much more choice, right? So, so I do appreciate this. So I'm going to move us on to the next agenda item, if that's all right? Because I know it's getting late and we've got a lot more to talk about. So thank you all so much. And we are now going to, our information reports and updates related to the S P E D agreed order. So Mr. Segura, would you please introduce the next item?
Such a light day.
We have exact session.
A long way to go.
And so, thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. Tonight, we had a T A special education agreed order update. I'd like to invite up Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer, Governmental Relations and Board Services, Dr. Drew Robinett, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, and then Dr. Stetson, we'll find a seat for you, Dr. Stetson, here in a moment, President of Stetson and Associates, as, as well as Dr. Cherry Lee. And so there are a couple of different things that we're going to be presenting tonight. And so as Jacob just alluded to, there'll be a handoff since we present these, you know, the updates, I think every couple of months, and then we'll hand off to Dr. Stetson. All right, take it, take it away, Jacob.
Yeah.
Dr. Reach.
Thank you, President Singh, Assistant Secretary of Governmental Relations and Board of Trustees. You still got five, I always keep my eye on.
All right. I feel it.
So this is to provide an update on our T E A agreed order. We currently have completed 50 of our 99 tasks for our agreed order, including making a lot more progress on our priority one. So I will jump into that one. That is satisfying our corrective action plans. Since we last met, we have submitted two more corrective action plans, which means that we have two left to be submitted and then closing that out. So two more caps and then closing out the whole thing is our three actions. But we do want to reiterate, like I did last month, that all of our caps are complete. We're just not at that end date yet. But, so we have really satisfied all of priority one, satisfying those open corrective action plans, which we're really excited about. Our next one is priority two, identifying and implementing effective practices. And this one, I, I'm going to brag a little bit because there's some great news to share on this. So first, we did complete the special education strategic plan in state of special education. And just a moment, we'll go through that presentation. But I also want to talk about some of the completed training that we had to get done before the end of the school year. And the lift that it took, our schools team, our special education team, R I T team supporting them, my team supporting them. But most importantly, our 4,991 instructional staff who completed all their tier M T S S courses during this last semester. In addition, all 310 campus leaders and 290 district leaders completed those trainings and trainings on family engagement, art committees, I E Ps. And there was actually, they had an additional M T S S course, right? Yeah, they had one more. This, like I just, these numbers alone, I think are impressive. But I could do no justice in what a big lift this was, but how meaningful this is going to be for our teachers and on the end of the day, our students. That we were able to get through this training, that we were able to offer this to every teacher in the district, every instructional staff member. It's not easy. And like I said, schools office, S P E D team did a lot of work to get this done. But I really think it's worth bragging on. We do still have some upcoming training to come to complete. Of course, we had some staff who were on leave or got hired late. We're not asking them to go complete, you know, 35 hours of training in their first week. And so we have extended deadlines for those staff. And we want to make sure that we're completing those. We also are going to be hiring a lot more staff for next year. And we want them to be able to take part in this training as well. And so we have a lot planned in August on this training and other trainings to really make sure that all of our new staff and our existing staff are ready for the new year. So there's still a lot coming up on that. And then, of course, the big part for next year that we'll talk a lot about coming into the new school year is the implementation of the M T S S manual in process. And we will spend some time in the fall of our new school year, kind of using a little bit of the time on the agreed order to give updates on how that's going and what that looks like for our campuses. But please know there's still a lot of great work, but really big work coming for our campuses. Another big thing coming up and that we'll talk a little bit more about in our meeting in August is priority three, which we haven't really touched on much, but that's improving data systems. So we actually have a report due on August 1st, 2024. And again, our S P E D team, R I T team, and our, our monitors and a lot of other staff have been working really close to take a lot of different data pieces and bring it all together. What they're working on is creating a single dashboard for these reporting purposes so that we can submit these reports to T E A, that they can be at the access for our S P E D staff, for our campus staff, and that we can have that quick, meaningful data. They've been working on tracking and reporting systems. The goal is to have that ready by July 1st and then the monthly reporting capabilities by September 1st. But we will submit our first data report to T E A on August 1st and we'll ask our I T team to join us at our August meeting and help us go through this a little bit and share what it looks like. So upcoming for our Lone Star Governance work is, we do have, we just did our last, sorry, I should say, I think I messed up my upcoming, I apologize. This, that one should have been under the, what we just completed, was our quarterly evaluation. So our next one will be coming in September. But one thing that we want to go over today, as I mentioned, under our priority two, is we have completed our state of special education and strategic plan. And so we want to take you through a presentation for that. And we are very pleased to have Dr. Stetson back with us again to help us through that process. All right, if you want, we want to shift down once and you all.
Just slide over.
Good evening again. We're here this evening to share a report on the state of special education and focus on the strategic plan for special education for Austin I S D. Here with my colleague, Dr. Cherry Lee, Executive Director of Instructional, Duralogy, and Inclusion, as well as Dr. Francis Stetson, the President of Stetson and Associates, and glad to have both of them here for this presentation. Tonight, we're going to primarily focus on the strategic plan and some general background information around where we will point out some of the strengths and, and also just the general data and background about the students that we serve. But I do want to frame one thing, both for you and any of our public who watches either this evening or a later point in time, that we will not be addressing the components around the state of special education around evaluations because we literally just covered that about an hour, maybe it's been a couple of hours, I don't know, ago, as part of constraint three. Nor will we be doing a deeper dive into sort of the budgetary allocations because after we're completed, there'll be discussions around fiscal year '24, '25 and preparing accordingly. So this is going to focus primarily on some high-level components around special education with a deeper dive into our strategic plan as well. So I want to give you just a highlight of who we serve. Am I, was I projecting? Okay. Hold please. Dr. Reach. It's in teams. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So from this spring, and this was a bit earlier this spring, we serve over 12,500 students. That number continues to grow, also in compliance with House Bill 3928 that went into effect this past summer. Any student suspected of dyslexia is also evaluated through and identified. If, if appropriately identified, provided specially designed instruction and support through special education services if that, that instruction is needed. So we're going to highlight some of the accomplishments of our special education staff and really our teachers overall later in the presentation. And so that puts us at growing in the spring at about 17% of our students here in Austin identified. And again, that's continuing to, to increase as we're sort of stabilizing out with evaluations, et cetera. And you see some of the special education staff listed as well. In addition, our department and our schools serve and support well over 7,300 students through Section 504. And again, earlier this spring, just over 7,000 students with dyslexia. And with that increase, that's actually been closer to about 8,500 coming into this, this later spring, end of the year, once we've completed some of those screeners and additional identification for who may be served. Okay? This is a look like growth over time at snapshot because this is what's reported, obviously, in October with our taper. And you see a steady increase in the, the number of identified students. And that is, A, to be expected when we are addressing some of the, the resourcing needs provided by our evaluations. And the state is also seeing substantial increases as well in terms of their identification of students. So when you think about special education supports and meeting the needs of all students, our services and supports for, are kids all across our system. Every, every single part of our system touches a student who receives these services and has both the obligation and the opportunity to address their needs. Each student, here I provide sort of the, the primary disability categories that are identified in our district like the rest of the country. The, the specific learning disability as the primary disability category is the most prevalent here in our district. And you can see the other areas that are reflected there, included by autism, speech impairment, et cetera, continuing on. But importantly, it's, we, we want to highlight that each student is not, is not defined by their disability or their neurodiversity, or even, even their strengths. The services and supports are tailored like the fingerprint that they represent. The unique and individualized needs are a part of our opportunity to meet what, what their strengths are, what their needs are, and to develop plans that really enrich not only their learning experiences, but having them participate and engage in and be educated in and alongside, to the extent possible, maximum extent appropriate, their peers, increasing, increasing, enriching environments that are inclusive in nature. Planning for students and the services and supports that they receive obviously is documented in the Individualized Education Program or I E P. And so even though we think of these time, primary disability categories, we know, as we mentioned in the earlier presentation, that those categories do not drive specifically the services and supports to the students. We need to look at them individually with critical assessment data as well as progress monitoring and tracking of what their needs are. To fulfill this need, I wanted to say there's sort of an overarching component that's not included on this. And it's every single teacher and educator and bus driver and food service team member or custodian in our system is a dynamic and committed team that is, not only has the opportunity to, but is expected to provide high-quality supports and services to our students. It's really foundational to our philosophy and foundational to the transition that we've been working to develop between and among our team members and fulfilling the vision that you've set forth for our students here in Austin I S D. But that deep and committed team is very robust in terms of professionals that are supporting students with disabilities. When you look at the dollars and the investments in our students, we know that that is folks who are engaged day by day with them, providing critical and intentional supports for our learners. You can see the number of staff members by category here. They're providing direct services and in many, if not all of the cases, representing over 900 special educators, well over 950 teaching assistants, dyslexia interventionists, well over 123. Actually, we're, we're moving to 125, thank you, Chief Hosek. And critical support personnel in speech and language, you saw some of them this evening. Our related instructional services and occupational therapists, physical therapists, assistive technology team members. That's who all that team is on the right-hand side as well and as our evaluation team. In addition, we have campus and student supports, which includes specialists, coordinators, and team members who go out and work with, side by side with our principals, our teachers, and building capacity, looking at providing feedback on particular cases and providing supports and structures for students. So it is a very robust team and it's also a team highly committed and serving as better examples and, and beacons within our district to be, and committed service to our students. So as we're taking a look at the special education strategic plan, I just want to highlight and bring back that you will probably remember the, from the really spring, fall and spring of '22, early '23, sort of what we called three priority pillars. And we built on those, and those will be familiar to you in the strategic plan. But we didn't do so in isolation. It's because those things were reflective of some critical components that were already brought to light in the original program evaluation that was put into place. And this was also part of what we proposed to the agency about our progress to date that was reflected in their T E A order as well. And so there's part of sustained momentum. What they're looking for, what we're looking for is system transformation and change, not the completion of the plan, not the checking of a box. And there's a lot of opportunity that has come out in this ongoing journey and examination of our practices that are really centered on building a plan that will yield strong outcomes for children. So let's take a look deeper into our strategic plans. Our special education team and all of our, our organization here worked on the development of a strategic plan for special education that was submitted to the agency on April 30th. I think it's important to say that the plan is Austin I S D's strategic plan for special education services and supports in our district. And it was developed with, in partnership with feedback from, obviously, I'll, I'll go through the, the components that infuse that. The original program evaluation from Dr. Stetson and Associates, components of the T E A order, as well as the, the categories that were identified and the most recent audit that was completed. But I want you to know, in addition to that, our monitors, our T A monitors, who are, were here this evening, members of our leadership team who have been here this evening as well, and also integral team members that are a part of leadership throughout. And team members have worked alongside one another in crafting language, getting feedback from our special education family advisory committee and helping to craft and come to some important goals that are in alignment, not only with responding to the, the data that we've received, but projecting learning and moving forward together as an organization and service of our students with great tenacity, hope, optimism, and real active planning. So the special education, the strategic plan for special education outlines five areas or tenants, five broad tenants with identified strategies and actions to address the needs of our students. Each of those actions are at a high level when you take a look at the plan, also posted online and it has been, not only as an attachment, but on our, but on our page and has been shared with the public. But, but in addition, as a frame of reference, the level of detail and specificity to arrive at not only the achievement, but the exceeding of the specific strategies and tenants or goals that are put into place is being stood up by milestone schedules, our team working collectively and across all of the organization to build out those more detailed plans that are going to be operationalized. So although you don't see So although you don't see that informing the strategic plan at the broadest level right now, I want to assure you, and I know our superintendent could even provide, that we're moving in that direction because we want to ensure successful excellence in achieving that for our students. So those five broad components are listed here. We're going to unpack that in much greater detail. So the strategic plan was based on input and feedback from various sources, including, as I mentioned, the program evaluation from Dr. Stetson and Associates in 2020. You can see those components that were highlighted and lifted and also built into the system of our strategic plan framework. The TEA order, of course, there are some things that are requirements. And so although they're not lost on us, what's expected, they are integral to being intentional and robust and fulfilling some of the expectations that we have in store for the future in our progress for students. And then the final area around the audit that was recently completed in 2024 was reported to you in April by Dr. Stetson and Judith Moaning from her team. And so those categories, you'll find iterations of things that were found in the earlier program evaluation, as well as some other things that were lifted up and put into place in terms of the areas that we've addressed here. In addition, we always want to anchor before we proceed that the audit conducted by Dr. Stetson identified key challenges that contributed to areas of noncompliance and quality services for students. And then the team had a phase two that really specified some additional actions and things that needed to be put into place. Those root causes are embedded and being addressed throughout the strategic plan that we have in place or that we've proposed and sent forth to the agency, all around personnel shortages, data system accuracy, shared ownership for not only compliance, but embracing the responsibility of excellence for all of our students, professional development engagement, and variability and parent engagement relationships were very prominent. We have been working to date and have some good investments in, but still progress to work on in terms of moving from a program and label orientation to really that individualized student orientation. And I'm excited that Dr. Stetson will also be able to speak to some of that collaboration and progress that has continued from the initial pieces that we started. I'm about to turn it over to Dr. Cherry Lee, who's going to kind of take us through the strategic plan tenants and the respective strategies that are associated with that. The framework that we're using for that is where there are sort of three steps that she's going to take us through. The first one is around what we know. And when we say what we know, we're referencing not only what we've heard in the audit findings, but in those areas that we've mentioned and feedback that has come to our district in the audit, it's come to our district in some of the findings that really were brought into place, the work with the order based on investigative findings, other areas for improvement, feedback from the agency, as well as the earlier piece in the program evaluation. A thread throughout the strategic plan is also around family engagement and feedback that was received intentionally in focus groups, the survey, and from our community partners that over time we've worked to address and will absolutely be addressing with even greater intentionality in the strategic plan here. So that's the what we know part. And then you'll hear some frameworks about what are the recommendations that have come out of that. So, you know, planning from what we know into what we're going to be doing, and then the elements that are going to be included in the strategic plan. Obviously, we're not going to read each and every aspect related to the plan. We'll be touching on that at a high level, but we are interested in responding to any deeper questions to kind of see how this framework can go into place on behalf of our kids. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lee.
Thanks, Dr. Robinett. So we'll start with our first tenant, which is a clear and inclusive vision through shared ownership. And this component is truly the heartbeat of the plan. And it builds a framework for celebrating neurodiversity within our organization and creates clear expectations for inclusive practices for district and school leaders and staff that translate to greater access, voice, and opportunities for our families and students with disabilities. So here's what we know. We know that inclusive environments coupled with high expectations lead to improved outcomes for students. We know that system transformation requires shared responsibility. And we know that disability awareness and acceptance must be intentionally centered and highlighted in work for equitable commitments, services, and outcomes. So what does this mean as far as opportunities? We need to be consistent in our communication and messaging around inclusive practices and quality standards. We need common expectations and processes for parent engagement in the ARD and IEP process, including before, during, and after the ARD meeting. And we need district-wide disability acceptance and inclusive mindset opportunities that are structured and welcoming at the same time. So now what? Next slide, thank you. Oh, yep. That's okay. We're going to go on to the next slide, the now what part. Yep, perfect. Okay, thanks. So now what? All right. So what do we need and what are we doing? We are working to increase a cohesive messaging that'll expand inclusive practices through internal and external communication. And this looks like a streamlined and cohesive communication plan that braids the Department of Communications and Community Engagement, our superintendent's office, our Office of Transformation, and our Teaching, Learning, and Leading Offices together to actualize these inclusive practices. We are also working on developing professional learning and campus implementation of strategies to improve families' engagement in the ARD process. And we're also embedding examples of differentiation within our curriculum documents. Inclusive practices are the bedrock of system transformation. All right, next slide. Our next tenant is implementation of high-quality instruction within MTSS, which has also been mentioned during this board presentation. And here's what we know. In the past, we've seen inconsistent campus practices, protocols, and management of the MTSS process, and a lack of shared ownership with monitoring for compliance and implementation. But with that said, we know high-quality, evidence-based, and differentiated instructional practices enhance learning for all learners. Our district has completed extensive professional learning around MTSS as required through that TEA order, and Dr. Reach spoke about that earlier. Every teacher and administrator has completed 20-plus hours of the TEA Learn MTSS modules, and that totals over 110,000 hours of professional learning for our staff members around MTSS. And what that means? We've developed and submitted an MTSS manual to TEA, which describes a clear framework. And this next school year, the focus will be on implementation of the MTSS framework with an emphasis on high-quality core instruction that is consistent and cohesive across our campuses. It also means continued and localized training for district and campus staff in professional learning that includes training on differentiation, UDL, cultural and linguistic supports for students with disabilities for all teachers to maximize inclusion of students with disabilities during core instruction. And this training will build on the concepts and practices that have been introduced through the professional learning in '23, '24. So we're going to start seeing it in action. All right. So now what? Austin ISD district staff, working closely with our TEA monitors, have developed and submitted an MTSS manual that describes these processes and resources for evidence-based academic behavior instruction along with tiered interventions. On the horizon includes specific training on the manual, walkthrough documents, implementation of high-quality core instruction, increased progress monitoring, and provision of those tiered supports and intervention. Training on this new framework will launch at our Principal Institute in July for all school leaders and during Staff Development Days in August for our campus instructional staff. The emphasis on our district is on prevention and early intervention. All right. Next slide? Thank you. Our third tenant is fulfillment of evaluation requirements. And Dr. Baker and Dr. Robinett spoke about that earlier in our last presentation. But here's what we know. Staffing shortages have impacted compliance, and valid and reliable and timely data systems must be maintained to ensure that compliance. So what that means in terms of needs and opportunities is we need a simplified and consolidated referral process for alignment. We also need to consider staffing in a compensation review to reduce the reliance on our contractors. And we need timely data systems that should be streamlined and maintained to help our school administrators manage their own data. So now what? Well, as mentioned before, we have submitted an evaluation manual to TEA, and we'll be providing professional learning around the high-quality processes outlined in that evaluation manual for our evaluation-related service and SLP staff in August. We'll increase partnership with our executive directors, who support school principals, to ensure the referral process is followed and we maintain compliance with Childfind. We're also going to enhance data visualization and reporting, again, to support monitoring and progress. And we're going to streamline that referral process to meet those Childfind requirements. Next slide. Our fourth goal is to establish high-quality standards for the development and implementation of IEPs. And here's what we know. High-quality IEPs lay the foundation for student success by describing students' needs and those appropriate services. Parent engagement is essential to the IEP development process. But surveys and focus groups have shared variability and family experiences across Austin ISD. Teachers, administrators, and all evaluation staff and related service providers need training too, because they're integral parts of the ARD committee. So we need that training. And progress monitoring and reporting has been inconsistent across campuses. So what that means in terms of opportunities for impact is we need differentiated instruction for our staff members. We also need additional training around high-quality IEPs, which will actually be happening in August at our Job Alike Day for all of our special education teachers, those related service providers, and speech pathologists. So what are we doing? Well, we're continuing to build training around that ARD process to build family engagement. That started in April for campuses, that will continue this August and throughout '24, '25. We're going to increase focus on onboarding new staff members. So whenever staff members start, we're going to ensure that they have proper training and rich training to support them through the process. We know we have staff members joining us throughout the year. We're also going to be developing quality checks and a review process of IEPs through fidelity of implementation. And we're going to be closely collaborating with principals and principal supervisors at monthly meetings to determine wins and what positive strategies for engaging parents in the ARD process that are working at their campuses. And we'll dive into our last goal now. Our fifth goal is improving student outcomes and accountability. And here's what we know. Alignment, shared responsibility, and accountability across district and campus teams is needed. We also know that vacancies can impact quality delivery and services. And digital management system challenges have impacted our school district. But what that means in terms of opportunities is that we need more cross-departmental focus groups to emphasize monitoring of special education timelines and requirements. We need tighter systems and structures for that monitoring. And we need updated staffing comparisons and recommendations for compensation as appropriate. So what are we doing? Well, we're reporting progress, updates on goals and activities identified within the strategic plan that you see at least once a semester. So look forward to seeing more of our team. You see us frequently, you'll continue to see us, reporting on that strategic plan. We're developing accessible visualization tools, thanks to our IT department and collaboration with our vendor to ensure our compliance is on track. And we're increasing partnerships with that vendor to monitor compliance, like I just mentioned. I'll pass it on to Dr. Robinett.
Thank you. So to date and upcoming, as we were planning and during the draft process, we did provide a draft to the Special Education Family Advisory Committee, as well as our community partners, for some feedback. We reviewed and discussed that in groups at our CFA meeting, as well as got feedback through a survey process. And we have revised with that feedback and incorporated those components to the extent possible with our team and our TEA monitors for submission. That higher-level plan, as I mentioned, was submitted with tighter milestones and cyclical monitoring built in. There is cyclical monitoring required by our state in terms of us reporting regularly to you and making sure that we're progressing as Austin ISD, as this is Austin ISD's plan. But that is built in in the structures that we have set forth, and that's part of our milestone calendar as well. So we'll be back with updates to you about how we're doing as a system on this plan. We're refining the plan, as I mentioned, and reviewing that and have been reviewing that with all of our chiefs and our deputy superintendent. And then cross-functional teams have been working to draft milestone schedules and roll responsibility. That's going to be pushed into more detailed operational plans that will be developed through the end of this '23, '24 school year and into the summer to be able to launch the things that are already underway in some cases. But that certainly will be commencing at the start of the year. And then that cyclical monitoring is built in at regular intervals because we know that transparency and reporting, we're on the cusp of something critically important that has been in the making for quite a period of time. And so not only to transform outcomes for students, but the narrative associated with those outcomes means we need to be very straightforward and transparent about how we're progressing, where we're making strides, and where we need to continue to grow in terms of those opportunities. So those checkpoints and accountability are put into place. It is a living, breathing document. So as there's revision or improvement that's needed through the feedback process or seeing where we are and if we need to baseline or recalibrate differently, we absolutely plan to be committed to doing that as well. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stetson, who's going to speak about some things in terms of our systems plans, what's been underway this year with her team, and then just general feedback about what's been happening with those processes.
Thank you very much. Good evening. It's a pleasure to see all of you again. Thank you. Well, my part is going to be, it's going to tie something together that I think is really important to certainly to the district and to me personally. You know, when you conduct a program evaluation and then you follow that up with an audit and you have all of that information and all the priorities that you list in the report, you hold your breath because you want to be sure that it doesn't sit on a desk or a bookcase. And in this case, I think you all can see like, when you just listen to all the different information that's just been shared with you just this evening, you can certainly see that. So my piece here is to talk about how important it's been, and it's a pleasure to see that it's rolled out here for Austin ISD, is that you want to, of course, look at the concepts that rolled out. I was sitting here listening to and looking at the data and so on and kept thinking, you know how often we've just heard this evening about the importance of MTSS and differentiate good tier-one instructions and so on? And one of the things that I'm reminded of is it actually has some impact on every single big rock that you're dealing with here. So my piece would be to say, let's talk for a minute about taking the constructs that were identified in those reports and the other, and through the monitors from TEA and their skills, and say, here's what we did. We remember that we talked about how important it was that we had more of a shared ownership and more specific planning so that we saw better improvement in youngsters' performance in school. So it required that major mindset. And what this district has done, in my opinion, that's been very noteworthy, has been the building of that common vocabulary and that common set of processes. So that you really are beginning to see. My staff and I met this morning, and one of their comments was that when they've been out in your schools providing technical assistance, that there is almost a great difference in terms of the feeling and the culture and the climate in many of your schools. And that's a pleasure to see. Now let's make it a little bit more concrete, though, and that's what my point here this evening would be. In order to, this is one of the tools that went in the middle that I've shared with you before. But if you'll recall, one of the things that was very important was the importance of moving from a concept of assigning youngsters to services on the basis of their disability label or the classroom, the place, like the resource room self-contained and so on. That what was needed was to really drill down and get individuals, very specific data about what individual students needed, and build their program from that individual basis. That was a huge undertaking. This is not easy for most any district to grasp this because we've always talked in terms of disabilities and place names going up and down the school hallways. And so to be able to help make this shift, this little tool that you've seen before, it's very small there, but it talks about the advantages in moving to a much more specific student plan of action. So one of the things that you know that we've done is that there's been the step-by-step training, there has been onsite technical assistance. And so what we're doing is we're moving from the constructs, from all of the work that your district has put into and has requested in terms of these evaluations. And now we're spiraling it down to very specific actions that have been described, activities. And now we're going to be able to apply a lot of the accountability that has to be in place. Because are we made it, that has to be in place, because are we making a difference? Are those ideas or those concerns that were identified, are we actually addressing them? And is what we're doing making a difference in the school? So with that in mind, one of the things I'd like to share with you, this little table here, and I say little because it's tiny, you all do have full sizes of these things, don't you? Oh, good. Thank heaven. All right, wish I did. No. But this table, we have been conducting technical assistance visits in your schools, because while I think the, the focus so much in this district has been around the compliance and audit and so on, this really didn't take our eye off of the very first training that we began with, which was teaching principals and teams from your school how to utilize a process where they really look at individual kids. And that we ultimately, as I said just a few minutes ago, because this is really a powerful point for me personally, is that then we see youngsters making more progress, we see them being more successful, because we're not treating them as a label, we're really taking apart the issues for them. So we have conducted 88, meaning a visit per 88 of your schools over the last many months. And, and so we're analyzing, this is a work in progress, we'll have it finished, I think, in another couple of weeks because of some rescheduling of, of visits. And some of your schools said, could we please do this in the fall? And so we'll be able to, to complete those in a fairly short period of time. But this is cool data. When we went out, that, this table that you have, that in front of you, it's asked, well, actually it was kind of nosey, was the principal present? If the principal is present, they have to be present. And so isn't that a marker of, of change, of, of, of actually quality implementation? So to what extent were your principals actually there, sitting with us, sitting with their school teams and, and working through the process of looking at student needs before they developed a schedule? And I'm going to tell you, there's some real obvious positive impacts for the district in terms of numbers of teachers that may be needed for this coming year. So one of the things that we looked at, the principal needed to be present. Well, at, at this point, it looked like at least 70% of your principals were present for these meetings, because this is so critical, because it changes your practice at the school level. Now I want to see that higher, I want to see it 100%, because those are critical, that's a critical leadership skill and, and activity in their schools. One of the things, this is huge, and this really is, you're an outlier, you're, this is very positive. We did the training and then boom, there was a year of interruption where there was, not interruption exactly, but all of the training that had to be done, that you've been listening to this evening, that the thousands of hours and the thousands of people. So we made it that decision that there's only so much that you can do to change within a system in a short period of time. So what we also did is we looked to see when we came to visit your schools, what percentage of your schools, after having the one big round of training almost a year ago, what percentage of your schools are actually currently using a student-centered model? And I, I've got to tell you, I'm, I'm amazed at the, at the percentage. 91% of the schools that we visited were, had shifted their process for determining how staff is needed, what, what they need to be doing when they're working with the students, and 91%, that's amazing, given all the other things. And so the other thing that I'm reluctant to be too specific about right now, but I'm, I'm excited about it, a good part of our, of, of the training that you brought to your district was, don't throw another staff member at a problem unless you know exactly what services need to be provided to that student. Don't just say we need another 10 pair educators or numbers of six teachers. So one of the things that we know is that, I'm surprised that when we looked at staffing implications, not every one of your 88 schools that were visited asked us to come and work with them in terms of building a schedule for this coming year, looking at student needs. But of those that did, there were very few of the schools that were asking for more staff, but they were using their staff differently. Now, that's a very complex statement, and so I just want to say that their decision-making appears to be much more around something, two things. One is better specific student, student decisions, but the other one is perhaps also better use of those resources, because we have to be more efficient and more effective. And so as we move on, I just would point out that, yeah, please, that we, these are some examples of some ways that we're shifting. One of the big requests, and it's written in your, in your strategic plan, is that your educators ask for more differentiated training for themselves. We certainly try to differentiate for students, and not all teachers or principals are in the same place. So one of the things that we've been doing and working in concert with Dr. Lee and her group is developing some online courses, as well as live courses, and all the print materials that, that support that and on their, and online materials. So I wanted to show you, the only thing I wanted to, to just point out is, there's some really bad examples of online training, that you're just really not seeing the outcomes of. And so we've really applied some very high standards. They're totally interactive. When they're trained something online, then they're asked, they're given a case study or they're given a student and asked to apply the skills. And, and so there are opportunities then to test the knowledge of the teachers who are taking, or the educators who are taking those courses. So move to the next one, because this is kind of the, I was really pleased, this goes into your strategic plan. This is the last strategy I'm going to show you. You've heard an awful lot already this evening, but the, but you recall that one of the big findings was that positive and engaged parent-to-school relationships were not always, were not the norm, that you had some schools where it was quite positive and they have really good reputation with the parents and good feelings for all, all the youngsters as well. Well, guess what? This was really that piece, which I love that the, this district embraced that problem and embraced the concern around it. And so we, the district and with our assistance, created a common set of training that every single school, principals first, and then every single school received. And the, the product of it was that the principal would lead their faculty through the assessment or analysis of what are we doing right for, with parents? And where are our areas of, of concern? So the result of that is every single Austin ISD school, with the involvement of the faculty and the principal, developed an action plan for improving the parent engagement and parent satisfaction. Now, the, the thing that makes me really happy about this piece is it enables us to show that there's accountability for everything you're having to do. Because now next year, you will be able to have parents indicate through a satisfaction survey, you'll find out, one, did the, were the plans implemented and how did, how did it result in improved parent-school relationships? So this is just sort of, I guess, a little example of the kinds of things that, that are in your, your strategic plan, that came from the evaluations, the two that were done. And they, they drilled right down into activities and, and efforts that result in systems change.
Thank you. And so as we finish with a few additional highlights that were included in your packet, almost like appendices, obviously the evaluation progress was reported in constraint three, that was a part of our, our discussion this evening. Also, the professional learning milestones for 23-24, starting with the spring step-by-step that went into place, you can sort of see the, the range of things that were completed for our leaders, our teachers, our teaching assistants, our counselors, our librarians, and that will be a part of the tip of where we're heading forward in the future. As Dr. Lee mentioned and combined, when we, when we look at our teachers, teacher assistants, coaches, evaluation staff, central office personnel also included in those learning opportunities, it actually tips closer to about 150,000 hours of learning this year. And that seems like a daunting number, and in fact it is, but what it allows us to do is to do foundational work and common understandings to then build, we know, to those next steps of implementation and practice that are essential for us working on behalf of our students. And so we're excited about some of the things that are forthcoming in the plan related to that as well. I also wanted to remind the team that in the spring, the Special Education Family Advisory Committee, or the CFAC, was convened, and they met twice, once in February and again in April, once we were able to establish that committee. The committee is intentionally made up of a diverse group of representatives, some really bright, invested partners, and we're very grateful for that, parents and some staff members as well. And the group helps us to inform sort of the special education team and also sort of the direction of where we'll be heading. They also will be important accountability, accountability partners in working forward as we're making recommendations and making progress, not only on our strategic plan, but any future revisions that come into play as we operationalize that. The plan, the CFAC has broad district parent representation and membership, and they really bring some bright priorities and perspectives. In addition, from CFAC, we're building subcommittees, and they already had a convening of a subcommittee on communications around the, the website and also just materials and resources we're putting out to parents and community with our team. And that was along with our chief of communications and community engagement and other team members. And, and Dr. Lee and Dr. Baker and our team met with them as well. From what I hear, it was very favorable in our monitors, or at least one was present for that. And so that's going to be a part of some of the things that will be happening with ongoing resources that were put into the plan. This just shows how things evolve, including in the original TEA order, but then we're, those things are, we're receiving feedback on them, we're improving upon them in partnership with our parents and community. And then the last part?
Yeah, and y'all, we've been busy. Wow. And I just want to express immense gratitude right now for Dr. Stetson's leadership and mentorship, Dr. Robinette, and you know, the entire special education team, they're, they're sitting back there, many of them.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you, all of you. We're going to wrap it up talking about our family empower hours, which concluded in May, and we provided training and information for families on IEPs, Chromebook accessibility, mental health supports, literacy and biliteracy strategies to support students at home. We also partnered with Vella, and we provided two three-part series in both Spanish and English. An additional focus this year was expansion of transition services for families and students. We provided a no-cost, supported decision-making legal clinic in partnership with the UT Law School. And we also partnered with ACC on student accessibility. So really excited about the work that happened this year regarding all of that learning for families and the work that will continue in 24-25.
As since this is part of the state of special education and the strategic plan, we know that the story of outcomes for our students are told much more deeply and richly than student performance measures on strictly state examinations. But we did want to provide an update relative to our district and state. We know that the multi-tiered systems of supports that we intend to strongly put in place are going to be of the backbone of special education support as well, because when we have rich environments and learning for students with tiered interventions from the start, that accessibility and those rungs for accommodations and scaffolds being put into place can be built for our students. We've used the term before that our students are general education students first, that cannot be emphasized enough, nor can it be a phrase that we embrace without really creating conditions for rich, differentiated, universally-designed environments for our learners. Our plan is reflective of that, we're excited about that for the future. And I just want to make an acknowledgement, because this plan is obviously got a bunch of steps and pieces that are in place, but it really is a part of the heartbeat that has been instrumental in the way in which this administration, our team, our community has embraced the conditions that we have been moving through and working towards in our district. And in our plan submission, I'm going to read something to you, there is a component that says the plan submission and next steps, and I think it's important to say it publicly. It says, importantly, the strategic plan in its current state, next, next steps are built upon critical learnings from an acknowledgement of years of identified past systemic non-compliance and failures of Austin ISD, of delivering on the promise of idea as identified in the TEA investigative report, the TA order, and even the Stetson audit. We do not take that lightly. And with that acknowledgement of past failings comes a bold commitment from this district, from our board, from our superintendent, and for every person here, to improve our future state of services for students and to most notably, any of our students receiving special education services in Austin ISD. Our next steps, our milestones, this is more than a plan to us, will require collective investment and mutual partnerships among and across all team and community members in our district and our community that will help us truly realize the vision for us to be Austin's home for inclusive learning with those high expectations for all children and high outcomes for every student. Thank you for listening to our report on the strategic plan. With that, I turn it over to our superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee, that was a really thorough presentation. I really appreciate that. Trustees, are there any questions? Comments? Okay.
I think, I'm not a trustee, but I have a comment.
Yeah, you may speak.
So I think it's really important that we talk about the fact that this is not kind of a restart of the initiative that we developed, you know, well over a year ago. You know, it was always part of the plan, you know, to kind of evolve and bring in resources to make sure we had a true understanding of where we needed to focus. And, you know, the TA agreed order kind of created some clarity around what we needed to do. And so as the audit has progressed and the findings of that audit, what we're doing essentially is, you know, kind of melding the two together, the existing initiative with what's come out of the audit, with strategic plan to build and expand what we already have. So everything that we've done thus far is still very relevant, and this is all like building upon that work. So I don't want anybody to leave this meeting thinking that all of a sudden we're going down this direction and all of a sudden we're changing course, like that's not the case. And so very excited about where we are, and the same intentionality that we had over the last 18 months will continue on for many, many, many more months to ensure that we get to where we need to be. So just wanted to make that point of clarification. Thanks.
And I just want to say thank you. I mean, I believe this, I feel this, right? Like it is, I haven't seen this often here, and I appreciate the comprehensive, kind of, it's huge what you've done. And, and I feel so optimistic about it, so thank you. But it's, it's way beyond compliance and it's, I feel that. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you.
Drink a coffee.
All right. So now we get to our budget. I know. I think, I just, I'll head. Let's just get through it. Okay, so, Mr. Segura, would you please introduce the next item?
Thank you, President Singh, Board of Trustees. I'd like to ask Ed Ramos, our Chief Financial Officer, to share the 24-25 proposed general fund, food service, and debt service budget presentation. We also have our Chief of Talent Strategy, Brandy Hossick, to provide support along the way. And so, Ed, there you go.
Good evening, Superintendent Segura, President Singh, members of the board. Tonight, we wanted to give a highlight of the 24-25 proposed budget, the budget that you will vote on June 20th. And so we just wanted to give a big picture of what the budget looks like and what you all will be voting on in a few weeks. So when we look at the budget with regards to the general operations of the district, we wanted to show you two scenarios. One is a scenario without a VADER. The second column, you'll see a scenario with a proposed VADER. So the biggest difference, of course, you'll see is in the revenue. The scenario without a VADER, $1.52 billion in revenue, local revenue. The second scenario with the VADER, $1.69 billion in revenue. You'll also see the biggest difference is in recapture. The scenario without the VADER is 691 million is what we are projecting to send in recapture back to the state. If we do move forward with a VADER, we are projecting to send 820 If we do move forward with a VADER, we are projecting to send $821 million back to the state of Texas. The two scenarios are looking at a $119 million deficit without any adjustments, without a VADER. The second scenario, $78 million deficit with a VADER. Once we make some adjustments, we look at vacancy savings, we look at adjustments that we can make throughout the year. The scenario without a VADER, we project to end the year with a $56 million deficit. If we do move forward with a VADER, we are projecting to end the 2425 school year with a $41 million deficit. That would put us at a 21.65% of unassigned fund balance. Food service, you're looking at a $47 million overall budget, and then debt service, $242 million overall budget for next year. The overall assumptions, we're looking at a flat enrollment, 73,100 students, average daily attendance, 64,100. That is in line with what we are currently seeing this current school year. Basic allotment, again, $61,060 per student. Flat funding, that funding has not increased since 2019. One of the things that you have heard recently in the news is that actually funding is, school districts are being funded at $12,000 per student. When you hear that number, just keep in mind that that number includes property tax compression. For us, that's not additional funding for us to run Austin ISD. Also, that number does include funding for TEA, that doesn't include additional funding that we can use as a district. And that $12,000 figure also includes funding for TRS expenditures, and so we do not benefit from that funding as well. So the true nature of our funding really comes down to the basic allotment. That really defines what we also pay as a district with regards to recapture. And so any increase to the basic allotment reduces our overall recapture payment. So that, in essence, truly defines our true funding at school districts, not only in Austin ISD, but across the state. Our overall property tax collections, we are again looking at a property value growth of 6%. Two years ago, we were growing pretty rapidly at 19%. We have adjusted our projections based on what we are currently seeing with our property values, that's 6%. Tax collection rate, 99%. The overall tax rate with a VADER, we're looking at 80.57 cents. So that would be a 9.1 cent increase, assuming that we do move forward with a VADER. The next slide you see, we've talked about looking at reductions that we have proposed as a district and move forward with for next year. So we did propose $29 million in overall reductions. You see those reductions by division, so all the divisions, as far as central office is concerned, you see before you the different divisions and the amount of funds that each of those divisions did cut within their areas. You also see the number of positions that each division also did cut within their areas for a total of 60 positions district-wide. And then we also categorize the $29 million in cuts by either staffing, overtime, special education contracts, reducing overall reliance on contracted services, travel, also revised staffing projections in the district, software costs, technology equipment, part-time, what we pay for part-time hourly expenditures, miscellaneous operating expenditures, supplies, and unallocated costs. So these are costs that we as a district have looked at and really reduced as a team. You will also find more details with regards to these categories in attachment to, in the board docs. And then when we talk about overall reductions, we also looked at our scorecard goals and our scorecard constraints. And so I don't know if Superintendent Segura, you wanted to go over how we looked at these areas?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ed. One of the things that we're endeavoring to do is to try to show fairly, you know, detailed quantitative data qualitatively. And so what we decided to do was to identify the big elements within the budget, considering, you know, where we have reductions and also where we might have potential investment. And how does that align using a measles chart with the goals as currently developed in draft form? And so the way to look at this slide is each circle that is filled has a low impact, if it's a cut, to the scorecard goals, or if it's an investment, supports it. And so an example of that would be VADER compensation market adjustments. You know, we know right now that if a VADER was to be approved and supported, that a significant portion of that investment would go to market adjustments. Those market adjustments would account for increasing compensation to staff across the district in various categories. And so when you think about where those investments are and where those compensation adjustments would be, those would support the scorecard goal across the board, right? When you think about, you know, educators that have, that are tenured, right? You would, you would, we as a team know that that investment would yield an improvement in third grade, literally, because we'd be able to retain staff and they wouldn't leave, right? So using that type of logic, applying it to each one of these. For talent strategy, you know, we made significant cuts within that division, but the, I think, thoughtfulness and approach around it, we can clearly and confidently say that it's not going to inhibit our ability to hire staff at schools that serve historically underserved student groups, right? Or that it would impact adversely the goals. And so each of these is us like really going through and thinking through, because what we're saying is the cuts that we made wouldn't reduce our ability to hire, right? Because of the positions that we took within talent and strategy. An example of that, another one would be operations. So we moved positions from 199 general operating budget to bond, because now we have the bond and the work there is associated with the bond. So that simple move is a reduction in our budget, but because it's merely a general ledger or adjustment, doesn't have an impact to any one of these goals, right? So it's one of the ways that you can clearly see, okay, a cut or an investment, does it adversely impact, does it not adversely impact, or is it in between? We want to acknowledge that there are some that we think, you know, could potentially have an impact or an adverse impact. When you think about the reductions in teaching, learning, and leading, right? We have nine TE reductions. We acknowledge that, you know, that is an area that could be impacted. Now we're going to do our best and we're going to mitigate that, and there's a lot of folks within a division, and so we're trying to adjust the workloads. But generally speaking, once you begin to encroach on that division, you know, the connection to impacting those goals is greater. And then also, from a technology software perspective, we recognize that there are many, many, many different types of softwares that we have acquired over the many, many years. And reducing our reliance on them may help us become more efficient, but we also know that, you know, they were acquired for some purpose. And there may be this specific software that this one campus prefers to use, and other campuses may prefer something different. And having all those different variations can be costly, especially to do something very, very similar. And so though we're reducing it, we acknowledge that there may be some localized adverse impact. Now, again, this is meant to be kind of informative, to help kind of explain how we took these adjustments and how we're mitigating them. But generally speaking, that is the purpose of this chart, right? It's not meant to be, Matthias, tell me the precise dollar amount associated with this, because that's not possible. There's another way to kind of show that type of impact. Sound unpause, I feel like trustee Coffin has a question.
I just want clarity, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but is the legend missing a word then? Is it supposed to say supports and/or no adverse impact?
Yeah, I just saw that, and I, limited adverse impact, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So next, the next slide is doing the exact same thing, but with constraints. Again, you know, very similar structure, just going through cut-by-cut investment as identified, where we believe that we introduce a risk of adversely impact our ability to meet the constraint. And as you can imagine, very similarly to the goals, it's, they're very much aligned, where the cuts themselves, trying to stay away from the classroom, trying to stay away from the things that impact outcomes, you would hope that this becomes more fully filled than not. I would say that as we progress and dig deeper into cuts, you would expect more and more half-filled, and then unfortunately, at some point in the very, very far future, if we ever get there, hopefully we don't, potentially full circles, right? Because we just acknowledge that there is going to be an impact. And so one of the things in the next slide that I think is worth sharing and kind of reinforcing is that we've heard over the last, you know, several months that there was an over-reliance on ESAR funding, and this is one of the things that has caused school districts to be in the current, you know, I guess, financial challenges that we have. And many, many, many of the school districts are having very similar challenges. And so we want to be very, very transparent around the ESAR dollars and how those investments were made. And so from the first dollar we ever received from ESAR, back in, I guess, you know, what was it, 2021, really, 2022? These are the total number of positions out of the almost 11,000 employees that were actually funded using ESAR. Of these positions, only three remain, meaning that we've been able to, through attrition and through kind of budgeting process, move away from them. So our reliance on ESAR funds is very, very, very minimal. So whenever you hear that out, kind of, you know, in the community or as a narrative, that's simply not true for Austin ISD, just to be clear, for Austin ISD. The other thing to point out is just student performance. There's been conversations out, you know, kind of, out and about about, is it a performance-driven issue, you know, with the constraints that the school districts have, are they really performing? So just want to be very, very clear, every time we show information, we want to show our student performance, our graduation rates, and just be very, very clear that that's where we are and it's how we've operated for a period of time. And then one of the things I think is also really important to talk about is acknowledging that AISD historically and will continue to be a very healthy kind of school system financially. And we look at this from a variety of perspectives, but one of the most, I would say, fundamental ways that you look at this is the way the market looks at AISD. How do markets evaluate the risk associated with AISD? And it's really, really compelling when you have a school district that is AAA bond-rated. There are not many in the state of Texas, I think no more than 10. And this is not AISD determining this, these are third-party entities. They evaluate everything under the purview and portfolio of Austin ISD before they make their determination, whether it's, you know, how we manage debt, whether it's our, you know, our tax base, you know, our historic kind of management of our budget, all those things come into play. So that's one critically important part. Like we have not been mismanaging at any point along the way. The other thing is the first rating, right? Which is, we talk about it, we report on it, it's part of the process with TEA. We have had a superior rating for several years, and this year is yet another year where we maintain a superior rating. So by all accounts and the account used by every other school district in the state of Texas, we are a superior-rated school district. Below, you'll also see a variety of other accolades that we received as part of our budget and management process. So just being very, very clear around the narrative that may percolate up around, you know, has AISD somehow mismanaged funds in the past to get to this point, that is simply not true. What essentially is occurring is our fixed costs continue to increase, right? We are in a very expensive location in the state of Texas, and everything that we do costs more today than it did six months ago, a year ago, 18 months ago, 24 months ago, and so on. So we're going to continue to share this. I think it's important that we share it every time we do a presentation, because it's not often talked about, but I do want to reinforce that as we move forward. So with that, Ed, I'll hand it back to you to carry us through the remainder of the presentation.
So the next two slides, you'll see two fiscal forecasts. One fiscal forecast looks at numbers without a VADER. The second fiscal forecast looks at what our numbers would look like if we move forward and our community does pass a VADER. It's important to look at the 2526 fiscal year, because with both, either scenario, both of those scenarios, we would fall below our local policy threshold. And so when you look at the 2526 fiscal forecast with no VADER, we would be at 16.6% of our local policy. You look at the next school year, 2425, we would be facing a $56 million deficit. Just to get to a balanced budget, we would have to cut $119 million to get to a balanced budget. If we look at a VADER next year, when you look at the 2526 school year, we'd be pretty close to our local policy, 19.4%. But you look at the 2425 school year, and you, and we would have to cut $78 million to get to a balanced budget. And so these are the challenges that we would be facing as a school district. Keep it in mind that in the 2526 school year, in January of 2025, the legislature meets. And so we would want to make some decisions before January of 2025, so that we would know what direction financially we would want to take as a school district and not rely on the legislature and the decisions that they make during that legislative session. And so when you look at the tough budget challenges that we have ahead, you look at the deficits that we face, we do have one-year budget strategies, and then we do have long-term budget strategies that we must consider. And so some of the one-year budget strategies that we would look at implementing starting next year, we would look at a vacancy freeze, which means we would not hire any vacancies that would open up between the month of July through November. We estimate that we would save $6.5 million by freezing all vacant positions during that timeframe.
Non-campus, just to be clear.
Yes.
Non-campus.
Non-campus-based, that's true. Yes, correct. So that would be non-campus-based positions. Thank you for that clarification. Yes. So that would be non-campus-based positions, basically central office, operational positions. Also, we do have a self-insurance fund that has a very healthy fund balance, and so we would hold back two months of contributions from that self-insurance fund. That would save us $7 million, so that we would benefit from that move. And then we would also look at our real estate holdings. We've had those conversations, and how can we monetize some of our real estate holdings, and what would that look like? So we are currently researching that and having those conversations as a leadership team. So those are one-year options. Then, we would also need to look at really realigning how we operate as a district, how we function as a district. And so we would need to begin these conversations starting this coming month, July through October timeframe. We would have to look at, again, that $78 million figure. If we look at cutting $78 million for the 2526 school year, that would be about 8% of our overall budget. Some of the big items that we may look at with regards to reductions, look at restructuring Austin ISD. How do we want to move forward as a district? Look at master schedules. Could we look at master schedules and achieve budget savings in looking at how we look at class schedules? Looking at that secondary planning period, class sizes, efficiency operational adjustments, continue to look at that. Softwares and contracts, those are going to continue to be looked at very carefully. And then we also are going to want to look at our attendance and our enrollment, come up with an initiative. We are already looking at several projects and programs. We're currently modeling one that KDISD has overseen and has been successful with. So we estimate that that would bring in about $2.5 million additional dollars if we are successful with that program. And then, of course, if we move forward with a VADER, that would bring in $41 million. So these would be long-term solutions to a large budget deficit that we have as a district. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything on that slide?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ed. I think it's really important that we talk about where we are, right? Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it's it's really important that we talk about where we are, right? I mean, we have just taken $30 million in cuts. There's still a ways to go. And I I have said this a couple of different times, that we're not going to be able to cut our way out of this. We have to rethink how we work. That is just the honest truth. And so what I don't want to do is to not go through that work prior to asking our voters if the board supports it for the passage of a VADER, right? We need to be able to communicate that we have done everything possible to stabilize the budget, get back to balanced budget, reduce our our exposure when the state legislature reconvenes in the spring of 2025. And that means that between the end of July through the information session in October, there is going to be kind of difficult work to be had, you know, focusing within AISD. And again, when we talk about restructuring, we're talking about, you know, central administration system itself. And it's a difficult conversation to have, you know, given where we are. But we have to go through that before we can honestly encroach on classrooms. And so I just want to be real honest with everybody that it's going to be a painful process. It's something that I think we have to do, and we need to do it before, really, we get too far into the fall semester and well before the vote takes place. So I just want to make sure that I say that. It's uncomfortable and, you know, it's unfortunate. But I I want a limited exposure period before we go into the next legislative session. I want to not be beholden to whatever comes out of that. I don't want to rely on it. We remain hopeful, but there's just no opportunity and no confidence that I think we'll get anything. So and we won't carry that conversation, I'm sure, into Q and A, but continue on, Ed. I know you're about to hand it off to Brandy.
And so if we do move forward with a VADER, that would include a compensation package. And so I'm going to hand it over to my teammate, Chief Josek.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to really slow down a little bit and cover exactly what a market analysis is and what has been agreed upon in consultation for should a VADER pass, how we would spend dollars in compensation. So in early spring of 2024, Mr. Ramos and I met with Tasby, and they began to analyze our pay structures. Every so often, this is going to need to happen. This happens roughly every three to five years. Obviously, the market moves. As the board adopts percentage increases year over year, it fluctuates, and it will continue to be a moving target. It is healthy to do that to a system, again, every three to five years. So the purpose of the of the compensation study is to analyze those competitive pay structures, to recommend pay adjustments, obviously provide us with a calculation of what that's going to cost us, and then document the findings from their analysis. And so you can see right here on the screen the market that we are being compared to. For most jobs, which is going to be essentially Central Texas, this is where we recruit. Most of our staff is from surrounding districts. Rarely do people move across the state for, for, you know, most positions. Sometimes there are positions that are hard to do a market comparison on. And when that's the case, for example, perhaps executive leadership, those change from district to district. They do tend to use districts that are of similar size. So most of these positions, however, are compared with market peers here. I do want to mention that the amazing compensation package that our board approved last year, it was fantastic. It simply took structures and moved them. When you do, for example, a $4 raise, everything just shifts with it. It does not iron out any sort of the the overlap that was already occurring within those those pay structures. So that's really what this is about. A market adjustment analyzes the structure itself, and it rela-- it puts the structures back in in proper alignment. And the goal is really to get 5% between midpoints, between pay grades. It lays that on top of it, and then you layer the employees back on that. And so when we talk about it, there are going to be absolutely certain pay groups that that are that are positively affected by by market adjustment. Not necessarily everyone within that pay group or that pay grade will have the same amount applied because it is it's putting everyone back on the proper structure. So on the next slide, you can see, just as kind of an overall analysis of what this would this would cost, just as as an aside, we did in consultation, agree to a $0.25 minimum adjustment to all classifieds. So our classified employees, if they were scheduled in the market adjustment to receive between $0 and $0.24, they would get the the $0.25 adjustment. We are, so we left some wiggle room there for for that cost analysis. You can see that our total number of employees by group, by pay grade. So for example, in this snapshot, we had almost 5,200 teachers and librarians. The adjustment would be just over $2 million. It is specifically going to address teachers in years seven through 20. We know that we've seen the the market analysis on that. We are, we actually have been competitive in the first five to six years of of teaching salary. We'd love to have more. We we drop off the map at year seven. And so that would be infusing dollars into that pay structure from seven to 20. For the administrative scale, you can see that that it's 669 employees, only 127 would see any sort of adjustment, and it is a minimal amount. I do want to point out here that this recommendation would would separate administrative pay scale from professional pay scale, and I cannot back that enough. It is really important that we do that. The board has been in situations before where we were unable to to raise professionals independently and not administrators. And so this would create that flexibility for the board to view. Again, information technology, you can see the number of employees, the the number of employees who would actually receive an adjustment and the average, the average adjustment that that would be. You can see that, for example, instructional support, this is our our teacher assistants, for example. Almost 1,400 teacher assistants, and almost every single one of them would be receiving some sort of an adjustment. And the adjustment itself, on average, is 8.95%. It's an incredible move. I want to point out here that our our instructional, and almost every single position on classified is already at or above market, well above market. So the question is, why would you want to go ahead and give another 9% if you're well above market? First of all, I'm happy to lead the market. I have no problem with that. But secondly, is that when you do a $4 raise, but you haven't fixed the structures within, you still have to apply money to fix the structure. There's incredible overlap there. And we'll also tell you that in future years, the classified scales are absolutely closing in on the professional scales, and we're going to need to to push on that end in future years. So you can see for yourself the rest of of the employees, the counts, the percentages that would receive an adjustment of those employee counts, and about the average. Just as a summation of that, $13.2 million of that package would go to classified employees, which is 76% of that total dollar spend versus 4.142 professionals. I do want to point out, I know that we had quite a few callers this evening from our SLPs. And I want to let you know that the way that it is laid out in this market adjustment, it actually does put them in the same pay grade as other related services. And so they would be able to see quite a bit of an increase because they are certainly below market. So that is a summation of of our market adjustments.
The next two slides look at our fund balance, again, looking at what our fund balance would look like without a VADER and then what it would look like with a VADER. The yellow lines are basically where we would be at without a VADER. And so again, looking at the 2526 school year, we would be below our fund balance policy with a VADER. Again, we would be at 19.4%. And then in the out years, we would be below our fund balance policy. And then, of course, with the help of Chief Gilarducci and our DCC E team members, we did a large amount of community engagement as part of this process. We did several community and committee meetings throughout the district. We did overall 26 meetings. Many of these were in-person and virtual. The highest-attended meeting had 63 participants. That was actually a virtual meeting. On average, in-person meetings, the attendance was about 13 people. Virtual meetings, about 24 individuals attended. But before you, you see the number of presentations depending on the type of presentations that we did. In Attachment 5 of the board docs, starting on page 154, you'll actually see the thoughts from thought exchange from these community meetings if you want to dive into how these meetings ultimately came out. And then when we start the community conversations with regards to our budget realignment and some of the tough decisions that we will have to make, this is kind of the preliminary calendar that we have laid out. It's going to kind of be in conjunction with the budget calendar. So you'll see the realignment calendar starting in June, July, going through October, and then again, all the way through January when the legislative session begins. The budget, again, that starts in August all the way through June. And then the 2526 budget development, the board starts seeing those conversations September through June. And of course, the 89th Texas Legislature begins to meet in January. So you kind of see the correlation between those conversations and kind of how that falls in line with what we will be doing as a district and some of the conversations that we will be having in conjunction with the the different areas that we have to make decisions on as a district. With that being said, we'll open it up to questions.
All right, trustees, questions?
Before we get going, I just want to point out that there are some attachments that offer additional detail. You know, and I think we alluded to it briefly, but the the cuts that are identified in the first part of the budget presentation, they're in a table in the attachment detailed, so you can go through and say, okay, what do each of these things add up? What are they comprised of? So we have that detail there as well. And then Chief Ramos just did an overview schedule. But in the attachment, as a commitment to come back to the board, you know, really at every opportunity, and then also kind of reinforcing what I just said, that we're going to get through a lot of this heavy work before we actually get to November. A lot of that, actually, most of it is laid out in the in a detailed schedule in the backup as well. So you can see like date by date, task by task. So I just wanted to kind of orient everybody to those two specific attachments.
Yeah, and that calendar's on Attachment 5, item 13.4.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Trustee Coffin.
All right. Thank you for the thorough presentation. I had a few questions, a couple of clarification, and then some more specific questions. But one that came up with you, Ms. Josek, was the the SLP compensation. You said sizable, but I'm wondering, is there a specific, like, amount or target that that would be?
I had a feeling that you may ask me that, Dr. Coffin. So again, without having actuals in front of me, really doing the best ballpark I can give you, but the range would shift. Current range for our SLPs for 187. This year, the range ranges from right at $60,000 a year to 81. And the new range proposed would would shove up to 68. And so it's a sizable, it's about a 13% mark on that improvement. And so really, what it, you know, as as we heard earlier, LSSPs, Diags, they had quite a significant shift. There was roughly about, I believe, 7% last year. And so really, it would be holding the LSSPs and Diags steady and bringing the rest of related services up and combining them to the same pay grade. It's roughly 13%. It doesn't mean that every single employee would see 13%. The pay structure itself is shifting 13%.
And is that something, Superintendent Segura, that you could comment on just in terms of the the initial strategy? It was a very strategic move to invest heavily in order to get the staff that we needed to to achieve the goals for our evaluations of our our students. But could you just comment on the parallels that we've been presented in terms of the role of the SOPs and their, the part that they play in that strategy? And what the kind of decision-making is around around compensating?
Sure. So, you know, back when I came on board in January of 2023, not to take everybody back to this history, but, you know, we were really, you know, struggling to kind of reinforce an initiative that began to show evidence that we were committed to addressing the evaluation backlog that had compiled, right, over over a couple of years. And before spring break, one of the things that I heard from the board and we had talked about is, you know, what are we going to do that is aggressive to attract back folks who had left AISD, right? We had a number of vacancies within, you know, our diagnosticians. And we had, in that group, I think at one point, we had like 73 positions, and only 29 were filled. And so we had to be aggressive at that point. And so I made the recommendation and decision ultimately to 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 kind of stimulate and invest there to get folks back into AISD. And then as the system evolved and we recognized, okay, well, now we've stabilized, but we have to, we're over-reliant on contracts. We recognize that there are a variety of different folks supporting the evaluation process. We needed to create more harmony so that we don't have the kind of opposite occur with the other groups that do help and support and lead a lot of this work with evaluation. So for us, it's really about kind of creating stability long-term so that we are responsive and not reactive. You heard about the ebbs and flows that we're going to expect to see over years, especially through years from now. So I think for us, it's it's a strategic investment. It's one that obviously is supported by the market. And, you know, we're happy to support it. But again, you know, it's going to require this additional, you know, VADER investment infusion of cash to actually get it done.
And I remember that discussion that around that a heavy investment in one category of employees is going to have an impact there, but the potential negative impact of other categories of employees comparing to that group and saying, why aren't we getting the same thing? And so I just want to, you know, I appreciate the communication that you will be providing. I'm sure you have been to our, you know, to the SLPs and others to really continue to honor their commitments and their and their contributions and to really recognize the pivotal role that they play in this work and how important they are. And to be very transparent about the decision factors that led to this decision and what's leading to this and the limitations of what the district can do and and the rationale, but none of which is meant to show any disrespect or lack of appreciation for what our SLPs do.
Yeah, no, I think that's exactly right, and I appreciate that. And, you know, when we first made the adjustment, it was LSSPs and diagnosticians before March. And then before the budget was approved, we did one thing, which is actually take them and the SLPs and put them in a different pay scale so that we can make adjustments just like this. It was actually, I think, quite appropriate at that time because it positioned us well to do this very thing right now. So we were able to do 7% for SLPs last time and last budget cycle. But now with them being separated and with the information we have, we can really support this. Honestly, if they were still embedded back the way they were, this would have been even more difficult. So I I do want to acknowledge that there were a couple of steps that we took to get here, and I'm glad that we're here. But again, it would require an investment.
Trustee Coffin, I also might add that it's, SLPs are being used certainly as an example in this case, but it would be the entirety of the related services. But it would combine related services, pay grade one and two, and so it's comprehensive.
Yeah, thank you. And I feel like we, a lot of the bigger picture issues around the the VADER and the all that, we've covered every meeting. What's new, I feel, this time is the more comprehensive look at the budget book there with campus by campus allocations and with program allocations. So I wanted to turn our attention there, and it's in the the big, thick, 200-page document, Proposed Budget. Specifically, I wanted to ask about, about the allotments from the state. So thinking about the bilingual, the CTE and the comp ed allotments, which come with a per pupil amount, but then have a mandatory spend amount in the case of like multilingual, 55%, that's kind of spelled out on page eight for CTE and bilingual and on the next page for comp ed. But here's what I'm looking at when I look at this. So I look at CTE and it says the allotment is $31 million and the requirement to spend from that is $17 million. And therefore, the budget that's proposed is $18 million. So we're required to spend 17, that's coded for CTE. And we're proposing to spend a million more than that, so at 18 million, which leaves, you know, 13 million, which was allocated to CTE, but doesn't have to be coded under CTE. What happens to that 13 million dollars? Like, where does that go? Because this doesn't show us like what is the investment in CTE. It says what is the amount of money that's going to be coded for CTE. But what, how can we kind of understand what is the investment in CTE? What is the investment in, in comp ed? What's the investment in bilingual education?
So the overall dollars, as far as what we earn from the state, that is part of our overall budget. The state then tells us from the overall funding that you earn, you're required to spend a certain amount. And so some of it is 100%, some of it's 55%. And so based on those percentages, we as a district then budget how we, wherever our values are and wherever we decide to invest depending on where we feel our needs are as a district. And so with regards to career and tech, looking at the positions and the programs that we have throughout the district, our investment in those programs and staffing, that comes out to 18.2 million district-wide. The requirement is 17 million, but what we do bring in is $31 million. And so the, the difference goes into the general fund that funds other areas. So that may be staffing or general supplies, things of that nature.
So what I see on this, I see, like, we see the campus-level budgets, but those only really show us what the non-staff allocations are. It's kind of a little bit, you know, I think for campuses, it's mostly, right, teachers and staff members who are assigned based on the position, right, not on the amount of money. So they get staff based on the formulas and then they get non-staff money. That's what's spelled out there is the non-staff money. We don't see the positions yet, right, because that's not been allocated?
That hasn't been finalized.
Okay. I don't see those departments, right? So I don't really see, like, how much are we investing in communications and family engagement? How much are we investing in the finance department, who does the work to make sure that we can pay everybody? How much are we investing in the bilingual department? I see an amount for special education, which is double what the state allotment is and almost four times what the required spend is, right? That tells us that we're spending a lot more on special ed. But it also still doesn't tell us like what are we investing in special ed? Because there's still just what's coded for that. So going back to kind of what I know best, which is the bilingual budget, there are positions within the bilingual department which cannot be coded, pick 25, which cannot be allocated, cannot be coded as being allocated because those are like administrative positions. So like a director position cannot be coded as 25. And yet we have a multilingual director, we have two multilingual executive directors currently that are and will be, I understand, will still have some directors next year. Those people are in multilingual education, supporting bilingual education, but they're not coded that. So it, I would think that the investment in bilingual education is actually greater than the 7 million or 8 million that's listed here because there are positions that are assigned, right? So similarly, I would expect the same for CTE or for comp ed, that there's, you know, that there's, there are probably people in CTE who are not, who are doing CTE work, but can't be coded CTE.
Correct.
Right? So is there a way, will we be able to see kind of what the department investments are? To see, so, and the programmatic investments?
So we are able to pool budgets by chief and then we are able to pool budgets by org. So that is data that we do have available to us and we can include that as a future attachment.
Okay. And I think specifically responding to constituent concerns when there was a proposed cut to staffing in bilingual department. And the outcry was you're cutting the investment in bilingual education. If we were to look at the budget based on the bilingual education allotment, it shows proposed for '23-'24 was 7.582 million and the proposed for '24-'25 is 7.57 million. I'm looking on page seven. So that would show that there is a almost identical amount from this year to what's proposed next year, $5,000 difference. But that doesn't tell the whole story. Because that only tells us what is being allocated to pick 25.
Pick 25, that's correct.
But if you were to cut an entire position out of the department, that would be a much larger cut. I mean, so I guess I just really would like to say, can we get numbers on what's the investment in our programs and our departments?
So I think that I, it can be done. I just worry about what that's going to require. Because at some point, there is a leader who is split. We run into this in every division, right? So in, you see it in operations, you see it in teaching, leading and learning. The supervisor of the directors has a responsibility over multilingual education. And so, you know, by, by just sheer fact of providing direction, they are also responsible and part of their salary. And so I think in some places, it's really clean, like we can do that. Like in multilingual education, we can probably clear that. In operations, that'd almost be impossible once you get past executive director. And so I just want to be very clear because some of those salaries are larger salaries. And, you know, once you get higher in the organization, there are multiple orgs. There's eight or nine executive directors supporting to one assistant superintendent. And, and so I just want to be very, very clear, like, for us to go and begin to make assumptions on the percent that this position has, it's going to get harder to do as you move up the org. But at the director level, I think we can take the department and then supplement that number with the, the staff that are directly tied to the department that are not coded. And then, you know, kind of back into the number that way. But it's going to take a little bit of work because it's just, it's not going to be as clean, I think, as just saying, okay, well, everybody here is going to be this org, this org, this org. Because once you get past director, it gets really gray very quickly. I don't know if that's helpful, but that's, that's something that I've experienced when I try to break this down that way.
Yeah. So I will, you know, I would simply just pose that as a general question. I'll let my colleagues on the board decide whether they want to, if they have other thoughts or ideas about the value of having some breakdown for certain number, for certain departments. I don't consider it a request, it's just a...
We can do definitely by department for sure. And then, you know, we can...
But I do, I just, I want to make sure that anyone who's in the public who's looking at this doesn't look at this and say, wait, what? You're, they're allotting us $13 million, but we're only spending $7 million? Because I suspect that we're spending a lot more than $7.5 million for bilingual education.
Yeah, and then, and then the point that you just made around special education, I mean, the opposite is there by huge percent, right?
And we're probably spending more than $165 million on special education, even though that's the amount listed here. But those are only the amounts that can be, right? That's only the amounts that are coded for special education. There's a lot of other people doing special education support and work. And there's supplies, materials being purchased that don't count for that, right? So I guess it's just, it's, I feel like there's a lack of clarity to the public about the investments that we're making in the programs people have expressed an interest in. People want to see special education being properly funded. People want to see bilingual education being supported. People want to see our kids getting CTE and they want fine arts in Austin. I just kind of wonder, how do we really gauge or communicate what are the investments? And are they going up or are they going down? So that people don't make false assumptions about programs being cut or have false promises that they feel like a program is being expanded. So again, not a request, similarly raising an issue. And if the other board members would like to, you know, jump on that and make a more specific request, that's great. I'm going to just thank you and turn off my mic.
Thank you, Trustee Kaufman. Any other questions from the side of the DIAS? Yes, Trustee Boswell.
I have a couple of questions. First, thank you for all of this and looking ahead and being really, I appreciate your transparency with our community. And I appreciate seeing a list of the kinds of hard choices that we're going to have to face. And I know we're not alone in the state, that people all over the state are facing that. So thank you for just being really open and straight about it, about where we are and what's ahead, the kinds of conversations we're going to have to have. I appreciate that. Want to go back to some assumptions about our ADA and our property tax growth. I know that's part of why we find ourselves in this situation, was just getting those numbers wrong. So I'd love to know what was done this year to, to adjust and what you're basing that on and why we think we'll get, you know, 87.6, I think, 88% ADA is what I think it is and why we think we're going to have 6% property tax growth.
So with regards to property value growth before the pandemic and even two years ago, property value was growing at 19%. Last year, we projected it to grow at least 14%. We're expecting 15. That didn't materialize. Right now, we're seeing, and the appraisal district is saying it's probably going to average about 6%. And so we've dropped that drastically. And so that's kind of what you're seeing now versus the, what we had projected last year, which was over 12% basically. With regards to attendance or the ADA, we've also adjusted those numbers, looking at 64,100. That's in, in line with what we're seeing right now currently. That's also catching up to the numbers based on the adjustments that have happened because of COVID. And so early on, you saw 67,000. Now, historically, those numbers are catching up. Now we can compare what's going on this year with what we're expecting to happen next year. And so looking at, if you look at a flat enrollment, then the 64,100 is what we're actually seeing right now. And so that's pretty in line with what we're expecting next year, if we assume a flat enrollment, a flat ADA. And that's again, looking at a 92% attendance rate.
So we're taking a fairly conservative look again?
That's correct.
Okay, at both of those?
At both of those, yes.
Okay, and our, our property tax value growth is based on what the appraisal district, the work they've done?
They've looked, and we look at the April estimates. And so they don't change too much from April to July. And so we're pretty confident that those are pretty accurate.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then I have a second question. If we look at slide 11 and possible strategies that have already been identified and we see a strategy that we think would save $6.5 million, we see a strategy that we think would save $7 million. And I'm curious about whether there has been thought about putting those in our budget and passing a $62 million deficit in our budget versus a $48.5 million deficit. Certainly feels different to me as a taxpayer and a trustee. And, and is that something we could consider putting into our budget before we vote? Just committing to do that now? Or some portion of that now?
I think I, I think we certainly could look at that. I do want to acknowledge that, you know, there are some savings that, that, you know, like for instance, in the vacancy savings, every year, the, the district, you know, by way of just managing the budget, accounts for $20 million in vacancy savings, right? And that's not from central, it's from just the fact that everybody's, we're not 100% hired up at July 1. And so I think that my preference would be to like notate them, count on them, but to actually consider them in the budget, I have a little, I'm a little anxious about it. I guess I'm willing to maybe have a conversation with Ed and see what that might look like. And if the board was wanting to go there, I just would want to, to see if, if the freeze period, like, you know, because from my perspective, I'd want to hold that as long as possible. So kind of taking into an account, an action that hasn't been completed yet is a little concerning. Now, the self-insurance, like those, those funds already exist, right? So they're there. So I think there's a conversation to be had. We can certainly explore it and see if that maybe addresses some of the concern. But I don't know if I would do it for all of them, if that makes any sense.
I personally, before I vote, would love to have that explored and would love to see if we can get some of that baked into our budget if we're, especially that self-insurance. I know we used that strength in our self-insurance to give people bonuses during COVID. It was a really good way to, to make a difference without feeling that ripple in a way that still protected our staff and their, their families who were insured through this program. I really, I think, this is our second year passing a massive deficit budget. The smaller we can make it and, and the more clear we are that not only are we talking about this, but we're committing to it, I, I think is really valuable. So I would appreciate whatever you can bring to us about that and would appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Any other trustees?
I just wanted to share, you know, my appreciation of what I heard you say, Superintendent, about, you know, we got to make some really tough decisions in the fall. As I look at the slide, if you can bring up the slide that shows the fund balance year to year, yeah. Like, so when I look at it with the Vader even, we're still only good for a year, you know, which is, and if you, can you put the previous slide up? It's unfortunately, you know, not that different. And so I think in either scenario, we're going to have to make, we're going to have to do things very, very differently. And I just, you know, I, I do think that we're going to have to start that work. So in either case, whether or not we, we pass a Vader.
Oh, and I think President Singh, that's why it's my commitment to be done, to get through it and present that in the October board meeting. So, I mean, this has to be done. Like, we cannot blend two budgeting processes. This needs to be separate and apart from the future budgeting process which will take place for '25-'26 after the Vader. Like, they need to be separate. I think in the past, we have blended two together and it ended up becoming a longer period of time, if that makes any sense. Like, we need to rethink how we operate within AISD separate and aside from what a future budgeting process is going to look like. If you blend the two together, it, I don't think we're going to get to where we want to be. Which is why I think getting it done before we start the budgeting process for the next fiscal year is critically important. And before you go to our voter for a vote. And before you go into the legislative session in spring of 2025. It needs to be done. It needs to be done. Now, we may identify, you know, 80% of that value and, you know, a restructure and kind of reconfiguration. And then the difference, you know, we make up another way. And maybe we create a little bit of exposure there. But generally speaking, the vast majority of it needs to be covered in the dress before really, you know, late October of 2024. And that's tough. You know, I, I think that's hard. But I think one of the things that Ed brought up was that that represents 8% of our total operating budget. And so I don't want, there is, there is a path there. And there is a path that I think initially limits our impacted classrooms. But again, the further you get, the harder it's going to be to protect. But I don't feel comfortable doing that until we've explored every opportunity to kind of rethink how we operate within central office.
Yeah.
So it needs to be, in my opinion, it needs to be separated, it needs to be early.
That...
And either way.
The graph that showed with the Vader and the projections there, does that include any assumptions regarding monetizing real estate?
No.
That's good.
Yeah, I, I think there's, you know, you have to think about it as, I think about it in terms of what strategy are you going to implement? And you have revenue streams that are long-term. You have one-time capital injections. You have, you know, revenue by way of a Vader. You have potential adjustments in how we operate. All of these things will do, will kind of mitigate financial risk. In some cases, it will shore fund balance. In some cases, it will reduce our fixed costs. In some cases, it will increase revenue to help offset fixed costs. So each of these things will, will have a different impact on that trend in those future bar charts. So, yeah, it does not include land. Does it include some other ideas that we have? We really wanted to put forward those things that we've discussed and also acknowledge there are some things regarding real estate that we kind of have to talk about separately. there are some things regarding real estate that we kind of have to talk about separately, because it is real estate. So that, that's why it's done in that way.
Thank you. All right. Oh, my goodness, it's eleven fifty-seven. So let's, thank you. I think those are all the questions, correct? Okay. Thank you, Ed and Ms. Hoesek. Appreciate it. So this ends the section on the information reports from the administration. At this time, we will now move to the preview of the agenda items that will be considered for a vote at the next regular board meeting, which will be June twentieth. So starting with item seven, any questions or comments, any questions on item seven, academics and curriculum?
So will we, Kim, will we be able to submit written questions about the student code of conduct?
Yes.
In time for revision before the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll do that.
Section eight, administration. Any questions there? All right. Section nine, business and finance, anything there? All right, number ten, facilities. Eleven, oh, did you have a?
Well, just that I wanted to, with regards to real estate transactions and such, I wanted to ask an exec.
Okay. Great, thank you. Talent strategy, section eleven, anything there? All right. How about policy? All right, and section thirteen, other. Okay, well, thank you all. This will end our regular agenda preview. We will now recess the open meeting at eleven fifty-nine PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, sections five five one point oh seven four, five five one point oh seven two, five five one point oh seven three, five five one point oh eight seven, five five one point oh seven six, five five one point oh eight two one, and five five one point oh seven one. When we are finished with exec, we'll briefly return, possibly to take action on transfer appeals, unless we decide to bump that to another meeting.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, possibly. The actions and adjournment will be recorded and, and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. So thank you for joining us. Have a good evening, drive safely. Thank you. We will now reconvene the open meeting at one thirty-five AM. And Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and second by Trustee Sabata to adjourn, all those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned at one thirty-five AM. Thank you.